It's 10:02 and I'm calling today's budget hearings to order. January 7th budget hearings to order. Let's start with the speakers. We have two speakers on today's agenda and both are on the sheriff's request.
The first speaker is Dominic Mezok. Go ahead, please, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Judge Igicagogo, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, start the clock. Okay, I know I have three minutes. Judge, everybody, two general comments before I get to my specifics. Harris County right now is in the mud, but I think like your favorite flower, Judge Igicagogo, the, what's your favorite flower? It will come out of the water, it will come out of the mud, and it will bloom, it will be a very beautiful bloom. But we're just, we're gonna have to be patient and follow the rules about COVID-19. Lotus plant, the lotus plant. We will be like the lotus plant, come out of the mud and we will be a very beautiful county again. Now getting back, oh, and another thing, Commissioner Garcia, I appreciate and thank you for trying to help Metro improve the 56 Montrose airline route in terms of the north end of that route in your precinct. I appreciate that. My thing about the sheriff's budget is if y'all are doing this, great. If not, I think you should consider it. The sheriff's department, the various, and the other law enforcement agencies in the county, and that will include the constables, the Houston Police Department, the multiple cities, the school districts, and metro. I think y'all should come up with a common base for things like police cars, uniforms, bullets, so on and so forth. So that once a year, all y'all can get together, all the sheriffs and all the police you can get together, and work with Harris County Department of Education, HGHC, and the county and the state purchasing pool. And I think with that, if you buy a lot of things at one time, y'all can get a better deal from automakers, galls, wherever you get firearms on, and so on. So that we can all, all these entities can get more bang for a buck. Also, too, this is an inter-agency thing within the county. A lot of people that are in our jail system are actually in there, they committed a crime, not because they're evil people, malicious people, but they are mentally ill. We're gonna have to come up with a just answer for the mentally ill. I think a lot of these people need to go to a special facility, a special type of nursing home. I don't want these people treated as in the movie, One Who Flew Over the Cuckoo's Nest, that tomorrow. But I think some of the things-
Thank you. Thank you so much. No, I'm afraid I have to stop you. We stop all the speakers at time, but thank you.
Oh, no, ma'am. No, ma'am. Go ahead, go ahead. You understand what I'm saying. Just spend the money wisely.
Thank you so much.
The next speaker is Jason Oliver. Go ahead, please, sir.
Good morning. Hi, I'm Jason Oliver, and I wanted to speak to some of the sheriff patrol and administration items. So I really think it's important for us to be mindful of the additional duties that we're placing on the sheriff's department. We're already taking on the responsibility of addressing many issues like the previous speaker had mentioned, of mental health and homelessness, things that we should be investing in social services to handle, and that they're already kind of struggling. These social services are struggling to handle with the limited funds that they have accessible now. Best practice is not to implement these kind of co-responder programs like we see with the CIRT. It's to send actual clinicians to do this work. And if they need to call in deputies and officers, then they can do that. But we don't need to be sending them together from the outset. Looking at problem-oriented policing, it makes it seem like that's not a core function of the department as a whole, right? If that's not a core function, then that won't just be addressed by giving them more money. We have clear research on how to increase community safety, and where those investments should be made is we have limited public dollars. Community policing, or relational policing, or now problem-oriented policing, might address public relations issues, but it won't make our communities safer according to the available research that we have. We just don't have extra money for public relations. Coming to our jails, as we know, these are public health hazards, not just during a pandemic, but there are public health issues, like even outside of a pandemic. Our investments must go first and foremost to fund initiatives to reduce contact with the police and between the community and jails, particularly now, but afterward as well. So as we're thinking about, you know, hiring more deputies, I really think that we should look closely at what that money is going toward. Because, to be clear, I don't want the people who currently work as deputies or within the sheriff's department to be unemployed. I want full employment, but I think there are other opportunities for us to spend this money more wisely. The problem is we invest more in locking people up than we do in programs to stimulate the necessary parts of our economy, right? I'm seeing great things, great ideas for investments in the Harris County library system, like that's huge. Youth jobs, housing, education, all these are vital to ensuring our communal safety. There isn't a city or county in this country that has invested in youth jobs and they complained about the effects on the economy or on public safety. So these are areas where we need to be investing. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Judge, those were all the speakers for today.
Thanks, Lucinda. Let's put the budget hearings for the day, beginning with fire marshal.
I'll unmute Lori Christensen. You're unmuted.
Good morning. Can you hear me, Lucinda?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I know we had a PowerPoint. Is that something we could put up? Good morning, Commissioners, Court, Commissioners, Judge. I want to thank you and my staff. We want to thank you for the opportunity to present our budget this year for fiscal year '22. Also would like to thank Dave Berry and the budget team for their assistance as we move through this process. I will say it's been very easy, and we appreciate the fact that every time we've made a call or an email, that has been responded to very quickly. So again, I want to thank you for that. Next slide, Lucinda. Thank you. Just a quick overview. I know that we have, you know, we have some new elected officials. We also have some new county officials that may be interested in knowing a little bit about us. So we just kind of wanted to give a quick overview and just discuss that the fact that the mission of our office is to safeguard the lives and property of the residents in Harris County. We are a specialized law enforcement agency, but we provide so much more to the fire service, hazardous materials, training, all of those things. And we believe that all 1,777 square miles is something that we are responsible for under the direction of Commissioners Court. Next slide, please. These are some of the goals that we have, and these are just a few. I know that y'all have seen our budget document that's available online. But I think it's important that we talk a little bit about some of those things that we believe that service, service is number one. That's what we're here to do to our community. We definitely know that leveraging technology in this past year has been a tremendous heart of success for all of us, and we are very grateful for the opportunities we've had to do that. We also know that relationships, and no success can be had without relationships. And we know we have built relationships in the past, and this year has proven that those relationships have been critical to our community. And we're also excited to say we've built new relationships based on the new way that we've operated. The enhanced response capabilities in support of the county's goals, that's what we want to make sure we always focus on. We do understand that we are the third largest county. We understand that we're the largest county fire marshal's office in the state of Texas, and that we have a responsibility to ensure we're meeting the intent and goals of our commissioners and our residents. Next slide, please. Again, I just, I wanted to make sure we had this in there because we talk about being that this is online and being that we do have new officials, we want to make sure that they understand that we understand our primary authority. We operate under Local Government Code 352, and we've broken that down to explain that. As well, we operate under Local Government Code 233, and we've broken that down as to how fire code operates and how we work with the other stakeholders in the county for all requirements to operate in the county for a business. Next slide. In addition, you know, I want to make sure everybody understands where does the hazardous materials response team come from? That comes from Local Government Code 353-003. In addition, we work with our partners through county regulations and MOUs. These are just a few of those that we have. We work with our sheriff, our constables, our DA, or county attorney, and any of those other entities that we need to help, we do that. We also work very closely with our partners, City of Houston Fire Department. Recently, we had taken over the inspection of the county facilities. And that relationship that I talked about earlier was critical and crucial to continuing the safety as we have actually, as you well know, used NRG complex for more engagement with the public. Next slide, please. This connectivity matrix, this is something that we use internally with our office. We want our employees to understand that our actions affect so many within the county. Basically, what I like to say is we are the center of information exchange to our stakeholders. And as you can see, we are the core there, and everything we do affects other parts of the county. And so that's, we put that together so that our employees understand that and that we also understand the information we receive back, that that is a big part of our operation. Next slide. Just a little bit, I want to talk about fiscal year '21 services. We were able to maintain the delivery of our core services. Interestingly enough, as y'all well know, since we have shut down various things due to the COVID pandemic, we actually saw that essential services continued, and we actually saw that we had some increase in some of our service needs. Not just going out and verifying that there were safe activities going on in the county, but construction. Construction continued. That was an essential service. We actually saw an increase in construction and permits. And maybe that was because the opportunities were there, because the businesses were not necessarily operating, and that was allowing them to plan for the future. In addition, the pre-planning services, as we all know, there were some incidents in 2018 with some fires. And one of the things that came out of that was court asked us, hey, we want to know more about what's going on with hazardous materials. We began doing a lot of research throughout the country to say, okay, what are best practices? What are those things being done? We could not find anybody that was, or any fire service, or any emergency responder that was doing pre-planning for hazardous materials. And what we decided was, well, we're gonna create that. So we actually have a pre-planning system in place now for hazardous materials. What that means is this, as we have grown in the county, we know that communities have grown around facilities. Prior to 2005, Harris County had no fire code. And this is really important to understand that there were no codes to regulate. So there's a lot of businesses we may not know about. This pre-planning is meant to assist those responders, whether it be law enforcement, fire service, EMS, and the community, to know about what is going on within their community. In addition, the Tier Two Response Information Dashboard. We worked closely with our county attorney, budget management, pollution control, to put together a dashboard so that when something does happen, we can all communicate more efficiently, and we can get that information to each other so that we can protect the community. The COVID-19 complaint screening program, we worked with those. Obviously, touch-free services, that's been extremely important for us, and we plan on continuing that because what we have found is the community seems to like the fact that we are now available 24/7 online, and we're doing that to reach all parts of Harris County. Next slide, please. Objectives and outcomes. These are just a few. Obviously, you have more in the budget documents, but I just wanted to highlight a few of those things that we believe is important per each division. We have the training and outreach services, the weekly fire life safety education outreach engagements, prevention responses to requested inspection services so we can keep businesses operating. And then our services support. We have to ensure that we're spending the county monies wisely in the way we are asked to spend those, and we're being transparent in that. So we work very hard to make sure we do not exceed 84% average of agency call centers. Okay? Next slide. Statistics. Just want to give you a quick breakdown, and you know, I don't want to go into too much detail. You can see this here. I talked a little bit about the fact that prevention, we did see an increase. We've broken that down so that you can see a little bit how that was. Investigations. By statute, Harris County Fire Marshal's Office is the investigative authority in all of unincorporated Harris County. So our on-scene investigations, as you can see, not surprisingly went up. We had more people at home, we had more people not out at their workplaces, and that's something that we started seeing go up. So I wanted to make sure you saw that. Follow-up. That's an important thing because right now with the increase in on-scene investigations, we're not having the opportunity to follow up as much as we would. And let's remember, not every fire is arson, and I know a lot of times that gets confusing. But a fire can be an accident, but that follow-up is critical so that that particular homeowner or that business owner can close, we can get that closed out for them so they can get their funds to get back moving forward. You'll see emergency operations. We've stayed steady with those. We expect to see an increase as we move forward in our second station that's opening up this first quarter. And then operational support, not surprisingly, due to the in-person class delivery, we saw a downturn in classes and public outreach events. Yet, we saw a significant increase in our social media aspect, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. Next slide. Gap analysis. Talk a little bit about that. I know that's something that we're going into our third year, and this is going to be closing those things out. I gave you a little bit of the highlights there, and you know, we're going to be asking for it to complete this out. This will be our last year to complete out these positions. We have established that, thank you again, Commissioners Court, y'all approved that in December. We have the second station that will be opening up this first quarter on the west side, and we've got additional support incident response operations planned. Next slide. Just real quickly, this is a gap analysis scorecard. I know many of you are used to seeing this. This only represents if our office was primary, this is based on the gap analysis. We maintain this so that we can ensure we're meeting the intent of court and what was passed and how we spend our funds. Next slide. CIP status. Just want to tell you a little bit about this. This basically is associated with the gap analysis. As you can see, these are the line drawings for the two foam trucks. Due to COVID, there has been some delay based on the, you know, the build-out time, but we do expect to see that in the third quarter. But I do want to make sure we're clear, with the existing equipment we have, we will go ahead and be operating that second station in the first quarter. Next slide. Okay, these are our requests, and I know that Mr. Berry said yesterday, one of the things that we wanted to make very clear, what is it we're requesting? Again, court approved the position transfers from engineering before. These are for the positions that we took over to take care of fire protection systems and fire and life safety in county facilities, and that seems to be going extremely well. We've had very good feedback from our stakeholders. The baseline for the gap positions that we're asking for, which is a third-year closeout, as you can see, is for the hazmat positions. We have asked for three additional fire arson investigators, as you saw earlier, that we've seen an increase in fire calls, and we want to close those cases out. So we've asked for three positions. We've detailed the justification below. So total request, as you can see, is listed there. Next slide. And to close out, again, I just want to thank you, Commissioners Court. This is a new way of doing business on Zoom, but I will tell you, we have actually really enjoyed this. All of our staff is watching, and we're being very transparent with them so that they understand the process, they understand the questions y'all ask, and that we can ensure that we are serving at the will of the public and Commissioners Court. Thank you, and we will take any questions.
Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you, Judge. Marshal, thank you so much for your work.
Just so you know, there's an echo.
Yeah.
I've muted Lori Christensen, and then I'll unmute her when she needs to speak again. That might help. You're good. No, sir.
All right, perfect. Lori, thank you very much for your work and that of your staff. And got a couple of quick questions for you. Number one, your staff and mine have been working on an initiative that we started soon after the ITC fire. And I want to make sure that you have been able to see the, for lack of better words, the portal that we have worked to put together. Have you seen that?
Commissioner Garcia, this is Assistant Chief Rodney Reed. Yes, sir, we have been working with your office and seeing that portal and believe that that information that y'all have so eloquently and easily put together is greatly going to assist our first responder community in seeing that real-time data. So it's amazing work, sir, and appreciate that ability to work with your team on that.
Good deal. And so too, to that point, I just want to make sure that you're thinking through on your budget on how that will be folded in at some point. So I don't know if you've thought about that as of yet, but the other items in your budget, how much of this is driven by the Penta analysis, gap analysis, that the judge directed?
Yes, Commissioner Garcia, that would just be the 583, and that is to close out. This is that third year. Yes, sir. And then, of course, you saw the CIP that is already underway. Yes, sir, for the apparatus.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Ramsey.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you're good.
Chief, thank you for your work. This weekend, we had the fire out on Satsuma in Precinct 3. I think that, again, is an example of the issue. 75% of Precinct 3 area is unincorporated. We've got industries out there doing things that many of us need to know more about. It affects neighborhoods, it affects our emergency response. Thank you for what you did there. In Spring Valley, when we had the big chemical fire and spill back in 2017, and we had a bunch of chemicals end up in the creek, we had no data on the chemicals that were being stored there. Is there anything, any initiative that we're doing to better track the businesses that are located in neighborhoods in the unincorporated area, Harris County particularly? Or is there anything we're doing specifically to improve that?
Commissioner Ramsey, this is Assistant Chief Bob Royal, Emergency Operations Division. And yes, sir, we are using that GIS dashboard that Chief Christians spoke to to try to identify those locations. There's a lot of them that are flying under the radar, and as we encounter those, we're taking action not only to learn more about them, but corrective actions as well. And we, unfortunately, you know, there's no zoning in Harris County, unincorporated Harris County. So we are, the hazmat team is out there, and a lot of times they're doing cold calls and happening up, doing pre-plans on those as we encounter them.
This is an important issue for me, so anything we can do to help you identify those folks that are operating businesses that put our citizens at risk, I'd like to help you with that. I've got some experience with TCEQ and others. So maybe we need to meet and have that conversation to see what else we can do to identify these folks.
Yes, sir. Let's make sure that we do that. Back in 2017, just so you'll know, that was in the City of Houston Fire Department responded to that, but the Harris County hazmat team responded at their request for assistance. And we fought that terrible fire, and we were in charge of the environmental protection side of it. We did everything we could to corral that runoff. I thought it was a pretty successful operation. Unfortunately, that's one of those occupancies that they weren't aware of.
Well, of course, we had no data, chemical data sheets on that. I was mayor of Spring Valley at the time, and everything washed down and settled in Spring Valley. I was able to find and track down the EPA team. So that happened on Thursday. By Sunday, we had 90 people in Spring Branch Creek with sponges getting that stuff up. And so that was an example, I think, of quickly connecting with EPA. I'll tell you, the first phone call I made was to Steve Raddick in the county. And we would not have been able to respond as quickly without the county facilitating that. So that's, we want to continue to do that. Anything I could do to help, let me know.
Commissioner, absolutely. And our folks were down there knee-deep in that muck, trying to throw booms and control that to keep it from going any further toward the south. And like I said, it was pretty successful, but man, it was a mess.
Okay, thank you.
And Commissioner Ramsey, just so you know, I am working with your office, and we will be setting up a meeting, and we look forward to telling you more about capabilities we have in Precinct 3.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Ramsey.
Yeah, quick question, Judge. Chief, you're doing a great job, you and your team, and I'm glad that they're watching. So I take from what you say that in Commissioner Ramsey's area while he was mayor on the City of Houston, if you zone, your colleagues have more power in the zone areas than unincorporated because we don't have the ability to put those restrictions in place, right?
Yes, sir, that is correct. And, you know, we have, I mentioned earlier, and you and I have talked about it, we have a good relationship with Chief Pinya and the City of Houston Fire Department. And that's, some of the things that we're trying to work with them on is what do they know about their facilities? And then how can we make sure each of us know what's going on within our jurisdictions?
Well, if we, in an unincorporated area, then there are very few rules unless we got authority from the state. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is absolutely correct.
So I'm just asking you, even if you don't know the answer, and I just want to suggest to you and Commissioner Ramsey and all of the Commissioner and Judge Commissioner Garcia, should we make an attempt for some bracketed power in the unincorporated area with regard to the issues that you are in charge of related to emergencies? Bracket it, Harris County. It'd be kind of hard to do it statewide, but since we have more people in unincorporated than in any of the cities in the county. If you work something up to send to, enter to try to find somebody, you know, good bipartisan effort, Commissioner Ramsey?
I think if there was ever a bipartisan issue that we could get some support for, it'd be this. I don't know anybody that doesn't understand the problem, and we've had enough, we've had enough bad things happen in recent years, and it's just like flooding. If we don't act now, they're going to forget about the fire in Deer Park. They're going to forget about this thing on Satsuma last weekend. So I think we do try, make the attempt. I think we need a good sponsor of that. I'd lean on your counsel on who might be a good person to run with that.
So I'm thinking, I'm not sure what it is, but I get from the conversation when this came up with Commissioner Garcia's challenge, judges, we talked about it, I just can't remember when we discussed it. I know if we went up on a blanket basis, trying to give 254 counties that power, it would fail. We are unique in this regard. So I'm thinking, Lori, if you all figure out the what, maybe with Katie Short's operation in the judge's office, or these two commissioners that have far more unincorporated areas than I do, and then we can figure out, so first figure out the what, what is the policy thing we'd ask for? And my suggestion will be narrowly tailor it, even if we just ask for a pilot for two or four years. Because obviously, there'll be pushback from people who prefer it stay the way it is. And I just- And I just don't recall, Judge, Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Ramsey, I can't recall very much coming up when I was there.
Here's what I know about handling chemicals that would be of concern. You have to get permits. There has to be chemical data sheets. That's run through TCEQ. So I know there's somebody sending pieces of paper to somebody else on this issue. We just got to get in that loop so the fire marshal can know where they are.
So Lori, I'll leave that to you, and you just work up whatever the policy issue is. It'll be a different kind of session, obviously, since they'll have their own challenges. But if we found something bracketed with bipartisan support, it might have a shot. At least it's worth making the case.
Yes, sir, Commissioner, and thank you, Court. I will, we have written this down, and we'll be getting with Ender Reed on this today. Thank you.
Chief Christensen, and it's great to hear from Chief Royal and Chief Reed. You guys know we're always admiring of your work. Thank you for everything that you're doing, carrying out the Penta gap analysis. On this point, I echo what my colleague said, and I'm just remembering when ITC happened, that there wasn't the opportunity to really take legislative action. And so I know that Ender has been working on that agenda when, as it pertains to lessons drawn from Penta and ITC. But just under, you know, a third, fourth here to what my colleagues are saying. Chief, thank you for the metrics you guys are using and the progress that you guys have always been very, you know, accurate and proactive with the way you carry out and you plan. So it's the same this year. The only piece I would mention, and same goes for Dr. Babin at Pollution Control, and my staff I know is following up with both of you all, is the gap analysis identified the challenge of information. You know, the fact that there's no zoning, it really showed the impacts when there was that explosion earlier in 2020, she feels like ages ago now. And people didn't even know that they lived down the street from this industrial facility that exploded and sometimes let their roofs to cave in and their windows to blow up. And of course, that was inside the city, but it's indicative of something that happens in unincorporated areas and other areas in the county where people just don't know that they're at this kind of risk. So one of the areas where I don't, as far as I know, there hasn't been quite a lot of progress is how do we inform the community proactively as opposed to just this is the air quality reading now that there is a fire or there is an explosion? So I will continue to circle back on that this year. But if you guys have a chance to think about that also before the budget ends, just to see if there's anything you guys need right now on that area. I know Penta identified that as an issue, but I don't remember them recommending any specific solutions. So I think that's why it hasn't really... Yeah, Commissioner Ramsey.
I think this is also, of course, we don't have zoning in the City of Houston. So in many ways, they're the same, they're in the same boat we are. They've got all these things in the county, and there's no way to, there's no way to regulate. Or if, as you correctly identify, we just need to know where they are and what they are so that we can take the proper, inform the folks in the neighborhood and stay close to them. The other thing is there's industrial councils out there that are very active. And the industries that want to do it right, they would quickly turn in those people that don't want to do it right. So they know the bad players out there. And I bet that if we got the people, there's many of them, you know, Commissioner Garcia, out there on the east side, Chad Burke and some of these other guys, they know, they know the players and could probably help us identify those people that are not playing by the rules.
Yep. Absolutely correct.
Thank you, Chief. And oh, Commissioner Kegel sends his best as well. He wasn't available this morning.
Thank you so much. And we've written down these notes. We will definitely, Judge Doggo, will definitely be working on this communication piece as we discuss the great work by Budget Management and County Attorney's Office, pollution control on the GIS modules. We will work to see if there's a way we could make that front facing so that we could communicate better. And I really appreciate all the information that y'all have provided us, and we will definitely be following up on that. So again, thank you, Court, for this opportunity. And as always, we are available for additional questions when needed.
And Chief, just briefly, I do remember, as you mentioned this, the report said there's sort of a security angle where we don't want everybody to know what specifically there is because it would be a danger to just security. But there's got to be some sort of middle ground. So I trust you guys are looking at that.
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, so today, as you guys know, is quite long. So we have, next have the constables, one through eight, sheriff, county clerk, elections administrator, district clerk, auditor purchasing, county attorney, IGA, budget management treasurer, and tax assessor. So just so my colleagues are aware of the length of the list, and I'll try and be brief as well. So we'll move on to the constables. Go ahead, Lucinda.
Unmuting Constable Rosen. Go ahead, sir.
Commissioners, Judge, Happy New Year to you. Constable Alan Rosen here. With all eight constables sharing forty-five minutes, I will try and be brief. A few minutes is not enough time to summarize everything the men and women of this office do for our community and our county. As a grassroots agency, our core functions focus on public safety, creating a safe environment for all. The Precinct One Constables Office is a high-functioning, responsive law enforcement agency that provides many services to the county. We work hard to make sure our employees meet the core responsibilities we perform every day. Through effective management strategies, we are able to, we are able to continue meeting the needs of the community by stretching our staff beyond their forty-hour work week to successfully complete important initiatives that are meaningful to the citizens of Precinct One in Harris County. I'm going to notate a few things that are worth noting that happened last year. In 2020 alone, we handled three hundred and seven thousand calls for service. Our average response time over the last year for priority one calls is six minutes and nineteen seconds. We value your guidance this unprecedented year. So much time and effort was spent on issues stemming from the pandemic to public safety. You have provided funding for several important county initiatives this year and have entrusted us with the responsibility of implementing them. Some of the initiatives include distribution of PPE to every person and every employee without a mask in the downtown courthouse complex, ensuring social distancing at the downtown courthouse complex, security for NRG, the hospital tent, the tent hospital, overflow hospital, jury assembly infrastructure in NRG going on right now as we speak. I want to thank you for that. These initiatives were requested by the county judge and approved by Commissioners Court. Another very noteworthy thing that took place this year is leading up to the general election of November of 2020, at the request of the county attorney, we formed what became known as the Harris County Election Security Task Force. This was a pilot program designed to ensure the integrity and security of every vote in Harris County. This was no small task, given there were a record number of voters during this last election cycle. More than 1.7 million votes were cast in Harris County. The task force was a collaboration of the Precinct One Constables Office, the Harris County Clerk's Office, the Harris County Attorney's Office, the Harris County District Attorney's Office, and all of our local law enforcement partners. Noteworthy is we did 6,311 polling location checks during the term of that election. We did 323 proactive bomb sweeping of those polling locations. For your information, seventy-seven total calls for service came into the Task Force Command Center that were acted upon. There was that record turnout. The task force received approximately twenty actionable allegations of wrongdoing that needed to be elevated to the level of a formal investigation. Despite claims, our thorough investigation found no proof of any election tampering, ballot harvesting, voter suppression, intimidation, or any other type of foul play that might have influenced the legitimate cast or count of a ballot. Many voters expressed a sense of safety at the polling locations. I say this because we are a unique agency because we do not limit ourselves to making communities we serve only through public safety and crime prevention. That's the minimum standard. We go above and beyond that. As the pandemic began to grow, I grew thankful to our community organizations who partnered with us and donated thousands of masks to us, along with hand sanitizer, face shields, and food and other items. To date, we've given away thirteen thousand four hundred and seventy-five masks to the general public. Concurrently, we realize the reality of job losses. I have long said that executing evictions is the least favorite part of my job as constable. No one wants to remove someone from their home, particularly during the middle of a pandemic. We established a GoFundMe account through the Precinct One Foundation, which to date has raised $250,000. We knew these funds were a small drop in the bucket compared to the millions of dollars offered in aid by the county and the city and other entities, but wanted to ensure that we could positively impact the largest number of people possible with the funds we had available. So we created an evictions assistance program focused on educating tenants and landlords about the CDC guidelines. Working with South Texas College of Law Houston and Lone Star Legal Aid, we were able to provide legal assistance to over 500 families in person. That number grows every day as this is an ongoing project. We actually took the aid to the people that needed it most, hosting drive-through and pop-up clinics repeatedly from October through December. We have established an evictions assistance hotline managed by South Texas College of Law Houston to now offer free continued legal support to renters who are going through the eviction process. All constables and law enforcement agencies across Harris County have been tasked with handling COVID non-compliance calls since the county judge issued her orders earlier this year. The magnitude of this effort cannot be understated. At Precinct One alone, we handled 7,206 COVID nine compliance calls and distributed 50,000 pieces of PPE in the courthouse complex. We continue to educate the public about the importance of social distancing, occupancy limitations, and proper use of PPE. Our deputies have been instructed to educate business owners and the public in an effort to gain voluntary compliance. Through all this, we stayed within our budget. I hope the members of this court will consider granting a pay increase for all Harris County law enforcement. We ask for this as we continue to do more with less. We believe this increase is not only warranted but overdue as our men and women continue to put their lives on the line every single day. As we look to 2021, our goals will be continue to raise the bar and operate at a very high level by increasing our training and use of force, implicit bias, verbal judo, and additional sensitivity training. We continue to work, we will continue to work with JAD collaboratively on projects given to them by this court. I am so deeply proud of the work we do at Precinct One. We strive only to increase the quality of life for all county residents. I want to thank Commissioners Court for my past budget, and I think I've managed it very well, and I look forward to managing my future budget in the same fashion that I've done this. So thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Judge. Thank our budget director, Mr. Barry, and I'm open to any questions that anybody has.
Thank you, Constable. Go ahead, Commissioner Ramsey.
Constable Tom Ramsey here. Thank you for what you do, particularly in recent weeks, just being that face, that visible presence in the neighborhood has brought a lot of assurance during this period. Thank you. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Judge, this is Kegel here.
Go ahead, Commissioner Kegel, good morning.
Good morning. My apologies, Constable Rosen, I missed much of your comments because I was on a Council Urban but budget hearing for those guys as well. But I'm back. I want to thank you for the good work that you've been doing in the midst of all of this. Appreciate all that you've been doing. Also appreciate how you always have been helping us find other funds to help our enforcement along the way. And I wanted to express to you our appreciation for all your work there, especially in these sensitive times. Thank you, Constable.
Thank you, Commissioner. Judge?
Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you. Constable Rosen, good to hear your presentation and glad you're out of the woods with COVID-19. And thank you for your staff. And I just, I want to commend your folks that we see throughout the administrative building for their good work. I do want to visit with you offline about an incident we had yesterday. I think you're probably aware of that. But I just want to, again, just thank you for the work that your staff has done in terms of whether it's the elections or whether it was NRG during the initial surge hospital and things of that nature. Thank you for all the work you guys are doing.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate it very much, sir.
Constable, thank you so much for your work. And it's, as you've run through everything we've faced over the last year, you guys really have been front and center, your office and the constable offices. And I appreciate that, and I know the community appreciates that.
I just want all, I want everybody to know, we're always there for anybody in county government, anything anybody needs. Just pick up the phone and call us. We're highly responsive to everybody's needs.
Thank you. And my note alongside some of the conversations we've had, I think there's been a lot of progress now that we have, they're very focused on this, JAD, PFM, to the extent that they're helping with this as well. You guys can help us identify what kinds of issues, especially with limited funding, what kinds of issues we can focus on as the years come forward in terms, to the extent that you all help us collect outcomes metrics. So not so much how many citations were issued, but how many folks were successfully diverted and what ended up happening with those folks? That, you know, outcomes as opposed to outputs. So I would encourage you to make use of those teams, budget management, JAD, if you haven't already, on that area so you can help us as well keep track of where we're being successful or not being successful and allocate funds accordingly.
Yes, ma'am. I sure will. And we have been working, we had a nice meeting, and things are progressing and we're working very collaboratively to improve everything. That's the most important part of my job is to improve the services we provide. In any way I can help the county brand, I'm in.
Thank you, thank you. And that's notice for all the constables as well. So thank you, thank you so much, Constable, for your work and your dedication.
Thank you.
Constable Garcia, welcome.
Good morning. Hello, Judge. Thank you so much. Good morning to you and to the members of the court, first and foremost. I want to let you know that I feel honored and humbled to be here with you. And thank you all for allowing me a few minutes of your time. As the newly elected Constable of Precinct Two, I look forward to working with each of you and your staff. During the transition, we didn't have such a smooth transition, but every Harris County employee has been super, super amazing to us. And I want you to know that our county is in great hands. They were all amazing, so thank you. I have lived in Precinct Two for over twenty-three years, and firsthand, I have seen the neglect of our precinct. Progressively over the years, it has gotten worse. And I know that with your help, we can change that. Our precinct has historically been underfunded, underserved, and underprotected. Our goal is to provide every Precinct Two resident with a better quality of life than what they are accustomed to. Many residents in our precinct have not been afforded the same police services that have been enjoyed by residents in other precincts. What I envision is an open, honest, transparent, and most importantly, compassionate constable's office. I, in alignment with your vision, would like to provide equitable police services to every resident in our precinct. I, in alignment with your vision, would like to provide equitable police services to every resident in our precinct. And in order to achieve this goal, we desperately need your help. The requests that I have made for this year's budget are not items that we want, but rather items that we, that our precinct needs. Through an initial assessment of the department needs, we have discovered that many areas of the department are inadequate and in need of additional resources. We have identified five areas that will assist us in addressing the concerns of our residents and improve the quality of our service. Number one, by reorganizing and restructuring, this has caused us to exceed our yearly budget by four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. However, these, these changes were necessary, so we will be requesting your court to, to provide us with these resources so that we can maintain our current operation. What we would like to do is we would like to form a homeless outreach team to assist with the growing homeless encampments that have been popping up all across our precinct, and with the most being along the forty-five corridor and the corridor which leads straight to Hobby Airport. The objective is to find individual solutions to the problems associated with homelessness and mental illness. As you all know, when people come visit from out of town, uh, they, they come to Hobby Airport, they leave Hobby Airport, and along the corridor, they see the homeless encampments, they see the prostitution associated with the homeless encampments, and they see the drugs. I don't want people, when they come from out of town, the first thing they see is, are these issues, and then when they leave our city, the last thing they see are these same issues. So I'm asking your help to, to help us form a, a three-man homeless outreach team. Number three, I have requested two additional dispatchers who will assist with around-the-clock coverage. We currently employ six dispatchers, and we cannot adequately, adequately cover incoming calls and radio, radio communications, which creates an officer safety concern and results in delayed response times to our residents. We're in such dire straits that our, our dispatchers currently have to take their radios with them while they use their restroom. Number four, we have identified a need for ten additional fleet vehicles, which will assist our deputies with performing their duties in a safe and reliable manner. Our current fleet consists of forty-two vehicles. Twenty-two of those vehicles are shared amongst three patrol shifts. Shared vehicles are often utilized beyond an eight-hour shift, which may cause secondary shift personnel to wait until the, uh, patrolman gets back so we can take over the use of that vehicle. Five, in the last few years, crime has gradually increased, uh, but most drastically in the past year. The challenge is to obtain funding for more positions to help our precinct be proactive rather than reactive. The funding is severely needed in order to place additional resources in our communities, which will enable us to become, again, a proactive, uh, police patrol and keep our residents safe. We intend to increase police patrol functions, target the illegal prostitution, the illegal gaming, illicit businesses, thefts, burglaries, criminal mischiefs, criminal trespassing, assaults, public nuisance, and all violent crimes. In closing, I grew up in a poor, underserved, underprotected neighborhood. I know what it's like to be underserved and underprotected. I've seen in our precinct, that's how it's been over the past few years. With your help, we can provide our citizens with the same equitable police services that, that are enjoyed by the other precincts. Uh, again, we're not asking for anything we want. Everything we're asking for is what we need. Um, thank you so much. I appreciate you, your time, your service to our communities. Please use me and my position to, for the betterment of our communities. I'm here for you and for our citizens and residents. So thank you again so much.
Thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner Garcia, and then Commissioner Ellis. Commissioner Garcia, you're on mute.
There we go. Uh, Constable, thank you so much, and congratulations, uh, on your election. And, um, I was, uh, just looking at the information, and I'll be happy to work with you because I, I, uh, see that we didn't get an official budget request, uh, not from you, uh, but, um, uh, in the transition. So I, I think we need to make sure to pay attention to uh, the request that you're making, uh, to ensure that your office, uh, remains whole. I know the challenge, uh, that you're facing, I, I dealt with some of this, uh, when I, uh, assumed the sheriff's office and, uh, and had a difficult transition as well. But, uh, I'll be, uh, working with you in the Budget Office to help you move forward. I do want to, uh, applaud you for thinking about the homelessness uh, that is very prevalent, uh, throughout, not just Precinct Two of the Constable's Office, but Precinct Two as a whole. And so I just want to applaud you for paying attention to that and, uh, and looking to, uh, develop a, uh, a strategy. I would ask you to make sure that you're visiting with Sheriff Gonzalez, uh, as that program relates, uh, because the judge and Commissioners Court and I have worked very, very aggressively to ensure that, uh, the silos between the City of Houston and Harris County in particular, uh, were abolished. And so I want to make sure that, uh, if initiatives like the one you're proposing, uh, does, uh, uh, go online, that there is not a silo between your office and the sheriff's office, but rather a task force concept that everybody's on the same sheet of music, and we can ensure that proper data is being shared, that uh, incidents are being tracked, and, uh, that there's, uh, a holistic approach to that issue. The citizens are, are in desperate need of, uh, of a unified and synchronized approach. And, uh, so I applaud you for doing that, but I just want to make sure that, uh, you and the sheriff visit so that we can make sure that everything is well, um, coordinated and, and synchronized.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner.
Good deal. Thank you. And, and give that other Adrian Garcia, uh, my, my best.
I sure will. Thank you.
Commissioner Ellis.
Judge, just, just briefly, uh, congratulations, Constable Garcia. We proudly look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
I appreciate your comment about equity. I don't really have a question for you, but I just want to say to the, uh, Budget Office, to Mr. Berry, I, I do think when you look at the differences in budgets between the various Constable Offices, there may be some rationale for the variation in budgets. But the Budget Office ought to go through that because just as, I'm glad they added a, uh, a, a section here to talk about what are you doing with your budget to accomplish greater equity, but is what has been the impact on equity? Well, we, we got to look at in terms of equity as well, and it's always a challenging thing, but knowing that there are serious financial restraints more coming down the road, uh, as a result of the new legislation. I think Mr. Berry talked about that a little bit, you may have been listening when, when we first came out to start these discussions, but it's going to hit us down the road even more. But we do have to figure out how to take the limited resources we have and is equitable um, with, with all areas of the county. So I appreciate your comment. I want to challenge the Budget Office to, to look at that, uh, as they come up with the final recommendations for us.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Constable, thank you for hitting the ground running, and, and we all appreciate it here.
Thank you all so much. Thank you, Judge.
Constable, this is Kegel. Congratulations.
Thank you so, thank you so much. Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, I know you're a former Doby student. My daughter is still there. My two boys graduated, so go Horns.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Constable Egleton.
Judge, Chief Kirk Bonzel. You're unmuted, Chief.
Thank, thank you very much. Good morning. Uh, Judge and Commissioners, thank you for, uh, giving us this time this morning. The Constable and his staff want to thank all, all of you for your leadership and support during this pandemic that we've all been through. We also wanted to thank Kevin Seed for the help he gave us preparing the budget that we submitted. Um, as you know, twenty twenty was a challenging year that included protests on top of the pandemic that placed a strain on all of our organizations. We were able to step up and still work towards the mission of reducing crime and the fear of crime. With everything that we've been through as an agency in the past twelve months, this Constable's Office has maintained as a recognized agency with the Texas Police Chiefs Association, meaning that we adhere to best practices in law enforcement. With your continued support, we will utilize, utilize our resources to serve the citizens of Harris County, striving to improve law enforcement services we provide in accordance with the goals set out by the Commissioners Court. Uh, we were asked, we are asking for the approval of adding two additional positions for the combating environmental crimes in the precinct. Illegal dumping has been a huge problem in the precinct for many years. Uh, the complaint volume has increased by more than thirty percent over the previous year. Uh, the one-time cost of about three hundred and twenty-five, three hundred and twenty-six thousand, uh, for the position and equipment with an annual cost of about two hundred and ten, uh, thousand dollars. Um, on a side note regarding environment, members of this organization, um, deputies and, and some of the civilian staff have spent their own money purchasing game cameras to put up to try to combat uh, illegal, uh, dumping. They've, um, made arrangements and, and organized groups to clear up, uh, trash and tires and things out of the neighborhood, working with the Commissioners Office to get rid of these things. Um, our deputies have, have stepped up, putting in many, many more hours than, than is required, um, to, to try to accomplish that mission. Uh, with that, I wanted to thank you and, uh, let you know we appreciate that, uh, what you're doing and, um, the support that you've given to all of the Constable's Offices. And again, thank you, and, um, I appreciate everything considering with our requests. That's all I have.
Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you. Hey, Chief, thank you for your presentation, and, um, there's a, there's a lot of conversation regarding the environmental, uh, crimes issue. I know that, uh, I've been in conversations with, um, Dr. Babin about this, and, uh, we're doing a lot. Have you had any conversations with the vision you guys have, uh, with Dr. Babin? As to, and I know that the DA's office is also, uh, making, uh, a pitch. I think, uh, the DA has indicated that they're getting a lot of, uh, cases, and they just need more resources to more effectively, uh, prosecute the cases that they're getting. But have you guys visited with Dr. Babin to ensure that whatever strategy you're, uh, looking at is, uh, synchronized with where her office is going?
Uh, we have visited with Dr. Babin on, on quite a few things, specifically not the, uh, environmental crimes, um, we're willing to. I, I believe he, he only covers the Baytown area of the, the precinct. Uh, and we have spent quite a bit of time we're working with and, um, talking with the District Attorney's Office Environmental Crime, uh, Unit as well.
Yeah. And then, um, lastly, um, the, um, the one thing I, uh, similar to what I mentioned to, uh, Constable Garcia, is that I would ask you guys to think about a, um, a coordinated homelessness initiative that, uh, that, uh, could be, uh, incorporated on a broader, on a broader scale. So I just I want to ask you all to, uh, as, as the budgets are being looked at and studied by the Budget Office, uh, to look at a, a similar, uh, type of, uh, uh, program that Constable Garcia has proposed, and, uh, and given that, uh, to us for our consideration as well.
Yes, sir. We have, with the Sheriff's Department and met with them, and we have quite a few deputies assigned to, um, some of the homeless outreach as well.
Okay, okay, good, good.
Yeah, we are, we are trying to do that.
Okay, good, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you, can you send me over something to look at as to what you've got dedicated to that particular program? That's of a particular interest to me.
Yes, sir. I will.
Thank you. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you so much. Any other questions for Precinct Three? All right, let's move on to Precinct Four, Constable, Constable Herman.
I'm muting, Constable Herman.
All right, can you hear me okay, Lucinda?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, Happy New Year and good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Uh, I appreciate, uh, the opportunity to get to speak to you, to share, uh, many of the exciting things that are happening at your Constable's Office here in North Harris County. Uh, we made it a point this year to take our budget process, uh, very seriously, and would like to thank the, uh, uh, staff of David Berry and his team, and also, uh, PFM for their help and guidance through this new budget, uh, process. Uh, one of the most important things we did here at Precinct Four was to redefine some of our goals. Uh, we wanted to ensure that our goals were in the best interest of, uh, the public and that they reflect and complement the goals of Harris County and our Commissioners Court. Uh, just to name a few of our goals, uh, you know, the enforcement of state laws, uh, prevention of crime, reducing fear in our communities, uh, increasing accountability, maintaining organizational excellence, uh, improving justice of the peace court systems, uh, increased mobility, and of course, the, uh, arrest of violent offenders for prosecution. Uh, our goals are designed to promote safe and thriving communities of all backgrounds for both contracted and non-contracted stakeholders. For example, uh, we assisted our partner, uh, Ed Gonzalez at the Harris County Sheriff's Office in twenty twenty by responding to write at eighty-three thousand calls for police service, uh, in district areas outside of our contracts. In addition, last year, we added nine new contract positions. Uh, these goals are designed also to ensure we provide the most professional, effective service to our justice courts. Uh, they are designed to foster community trust by being transparent and accountable, uh, to the public that we serve. Uh, we know that by reducing fear is not only an effort to reduce the fear of crime, but also to reduce the fear of police, which, you know, unfortunately, some of our citizens still have. Uh, our efforts are aimed at focusing on violent and dangerous criminals while also embracing reasonable diversionary opportunities. We just, we strive, uh, to identify and, uh, you know, reduce disparities in our communities, and it is our mission to improve the quality of life for all of our citizens by working with area law enforcement, Commissioners Court, and our community and contract holders. Uh, we anticipate our projected, uh, expenses for the upcoming fiscal year to be a, a slight increase from last year. Uh, this increase, uh, is going to be due to, uh, an increase in insurance per employee, which I think is going to be roughly six hundred dollars. In addition, we're, we're adding a few, uh, law enforcement contracts on March the first. Uh, we do not intend to make any additional requests, uh, uh, and it should be noted that approximately ninety-five percent of our, uh, working budget are for salaries and base benefits. Uh, as in years past, we have, uh, been good stewards of taxpayer monies, and will again, will also this year be relying on some of our rollover funds to maintain efficiencies. Uh, at this time, we believe we can maintain our operations and excellent service with the projected expenses, uh, that we have identified. Uh, the Precinct Four Constable's Office is one of the closest forums of law enforcement in our community, and, uh, it'll be no different in, you know, coming up in this year. We have a, uh, partnered with multiple community and religious leaders, uh, to provide crime prevention, safety presentations to members in our community. We've attended hundreds of meetings, uh, and answered questions, built rapport, and, you know, we continue to bridge that gap between our community and law enforcement. We partnered with elected officials and nonprofits to ensure struggling families in our precinct did not go without during the holidays. And I, I believe that every Commissioner, uh, uh, you know, participated in our, uh, past Operation Turkey Dinner, and we appreciate the, the engagement. Uh, and we also continued, uh, our partnership with all stakeholders, uh, in our areas to improve the services we provide. The Precinct Four Constable's Office has a long history of being a good team player, uh, and that will be no different in twenty twenty-one. Last year, we partnered with our ISDs to provide safe security, uh, in our schools, which we've have, uh, five major school districts here in Precinct Four. Uh, in addition, we, along with, uh, area law enforcement, assisted in election safety and COVID-related initiatives. Uh, I will not go into the numbers. I think that Constable I will not go into the numbers. I think that Constable Rosen hit on that pretty well. But, but we've done hundreds of different contacts in both of those areas. We partnered with the Houston Police Department, the Harris County Sheriff's Office, and other regional partners to apprehend violent criminals who violated their terms of parole. We continue to collaborate with the Harris County Toll Road Authority and other consularies to ensure the safety and efficiency of the Harris County toll roads. We've partnered with our Harris County Park System to ensure safety to all that visit our beautiful county park system. This upcoming year and for many years ahead, the Precinct Four Constable's Office will continue to provide excellent law enforcement services to the courts and the public, and will continue to be a great friend and partner to our Commissioners Court and all Harris County departments. Again, I want to thank you for allowing us to participate in this process, and I'll be happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Commissioner Ramsey.
Constable Herman, good morning. Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate the detail. I particularly appreciate the fact that you didn't ask for any more money. And during this season of our budgeting process, that's helpful. Thank you for what you do out there. It's visible and it's not going unnoticed. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, very much.
Judge.
Go ahead, Commissioner Garcia.
Yeah, I was also going to chime in on that same point. It's always budget, the budgeting process is always the perceived opportunity to say, I need more. But I just want to appreciate your help with an example for holding the line. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. I do want to add, I mean, it's, I'm not asking for positions because I have right at 15 positions open currently. And, you know, policing today is not what it was 30, 20 years ago. You know, these, these individuals that come to work, they stay there, they migrate more. And, you know, I was talking to the sheriff the other day. He has openings, I believe probably most of the constable agencies have openings. And so we won't be asking for anything as long as we've got openings. And, you know, we're looking forward to, again, the new year.
Well, just keep, keep, you know, look, I should have started with Constable Rosen on this point, but you guys are, just like our healthcare workers, all are out there in the front line. And during this pandemic, it's been painful to hear guys who have had long, great careers just to be overwhelmed by a virus, an invisible virus. So y'all, y'all, you know, keep doing a good job, but, you know, please take care.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia.
Constable, you're doing a fabulous job out there. I can't go anywhere in the precinct without folks who are, who are expressing their appreciation and responsiveness to the needs of the community, and so I very much appreciate that. And I'm, I'm going to join in with my two colleagues in saying that in a time when we have a whole lot more requests for money than money that we've got in the bank, I want to thank you for just holding the line. Really appreciate that attitude and that approach of holding the line during the tough times. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. I just want to say, you know, I can't go to Kroger's without being accosted by folks thanking us for the great work we do, but they're, they're really not thanking me, and I know that. They're thanking the deputies that we have that are on the street doing a great job. And I'm not just talking about my agency. I'm talking about folks at Ed Gonzalez's office and all the other constable agencies. We're going through trying times, but again, we're holding the line. And it is such an honor, I've said this every year. You know, I have all four Commissioners that come into my precinct, and it is such an honor to work with each of your teams on a daily basis. When there's problems, we are responsive. We, we're here for you, and please continue to utilize us. But, but thank you all, and have a happy new year.
Thank you so much, Constable, for, for all of your work. We all appreciate you and look forward to being, being able to see you in person again.
Thank you, Judge.
Constable Heap.
Constable Heap, you're unmuted.
Thank you. Good morning, Judge, and good morning, Commissioners. As the other Constables have stated, I also appreciate the opportunity to be able to give you kind of a snapshot of what's happening in the precinct and to present a budget presentation to you. I'd also real quickly like to thank David Berry and Kevin Seat for helping us because, you know, they've really helped us navigate through this new format of this year's budget cycle. The Budget Management Department did a great job, gave us some guidelines and sample agenda. But because of time, what I'm going to try to do here is to kind of combine some of the areas that I feel you want to know about. And of course, you have all of the information in your extensive packet that was submitted. So we kind of broke it down into seven areas to simplify it. And I'm going to try to talk about some of the goals briefly and some strategic objectives. You know, one of our main goals was to ensure, as mentioned before, ensure a safe community for our residents to live, to learn, work. And we do that by reducing crime. A lot of that, or most of it, is going to fall upon the other responsibility of our Patrol Division, of both the contracted patrol services as well as proactive, or proactive, non-contracted patrol services. Our patrol include our Internet Crimes Against Children Victim Services, animal crimes, canines, motors, environmental crimes, animal cruelty, and things like that. You know, in my opinion, one of the ways, the primary ways to reduce crime is through more visibility and a quicker response time. With over 320,000 calls for service last year, 105,000 of those were outside of our contracted areas. And we did this all while still being able to maintain a response time that was under four minutes. Now, I, you know, I had mentioned before, and I will concur, that I am very concerned about the increase in the violent crimes, not only in Harris County, but in the city of Houston, which of course is, includes Harris County. Well, I know that coming up here recent, or very shortly, in a couple of weeks, actually, Commissioner Ramsey is going to be hosting a Crime and Safety Town Hall meeting. And I think that this is a great format and a great beginning to be able to start to dialogue with the community about some of the challenges that we have. Pastor Willie Davis is going to be there, and Andy Con, Crime Stop, Rich Councilman Edward Pollard, myself, some other law enforcement are also going to be there. So I think that this is a very good step to be able to open that dialogue up with the community about some of the challenges that we're facing and how we can help with those challenges. Sadly, though, I have to report that our Internet Crimes Against Children cases are up. About over 340 cases worked just strictly within Precinct Five itself. I have to say the same thing about our animal crimes, over 300 cases strictly increasing five. But there's always a silver lining, and that is that we've just obtained two new 100% contracts with the Houston Humane Society to be able to help combat, not only in Precinct Five, but across all of Harris County, animal crimes as far as abuse, neglect, abandonment. So one of the other goals that we have is to foster and sustain an organizational excellence. And that, of course, is going to fall largely upon myself, but also upon the training and the recruiting departments within our department. I believe that we obtain this organizational excellence through an increased data-driven, evidence-based practices. So I think good examples are ways that we, you know, we have salary studies that we have followed the guidelines and follow the example of the county on budget adjustments so that we can keep competitive in the workplace. In our recruiting division, of course, our goal is always to retain and to hire a very highly qualified and diverse workforce. Last year, well, only 200 applicants that applied, and of those, we hired 78% were from under, underreflected racial groups. So our training division, best trained officers are always going to be able to serve the residents of Harris County. Of course, the COVID effect has really hit us as far as our training because we've been limited to gathering people together. But since I took office, we have increased training by 179%. And I'm looking forward to increasing it back up to 50% additionally next year. And that will still bring us up a little bit short of what we were in previous years. But hopefully, as we can lift some of the restrictions and we can all start putting the, the virus behind us, hopefully, that we'll be able to get back to an increase even greater than that within our training. We also created what we call ERC, our Employee Representative Council. And this increases the representation and communication between our command staff and our employees. And this has done a great job to increase morale within the department and to be sure that we and the command staff understand the challenges that they're facing out on the street. We'd also like to provide diligent, efficient, and compassionate service to all parties within our civil process. I think sometimes we overlook the importance of our civil process because it includes both the RIDS protective orders, subpoenas, as well as our bailiffs for 5-1 and 5-2, which are very, very busy courts. 74% of our civil papers are successfully executed last year. We'd like to set a metrics for 2021 to get that up to about 80%. And we're going to do that by adjusting our personnel and also readjusting and aligning some of our districts. But as Constable Rosen said, probably the most difficult court mandate for me also is the evictions. They are way down because of COVID, but I'm really fearful of what's coming down the line. In other words, when the state moratorium is lifted, I really fear that we're going to be overwhelmed, not only in the service aspect of the constables, but also being able to direct people to, you know, social service groups and stuff to get us the support that they need. So we're going to be working and really relying on the county, or at least I will a lot, to help us with some guidance as far as that goes. To serve warrants safely, timely, and respectfully. Our criminal warrants also include our child support through the Attorney General's Office. COVID has had a big effect on the service of warrants. Last year, we're down, we're down to about 7,000 warrants served. But there's always this lining that is always bright in there, and that means that 7% of our warrants, only 7%, were cleared by arrest actions, which means that we have learned, because of the COVID situation, we have learned a better way to address some of these issues. Multiple calling, letters, social medias. And what we would like to do is to see that even get down below 7% and get that down to around 5%. Probably one of the most important things that I think we've done a great job and we're going to continue to strive for is to connect our crime victims to these support services. We increased last year by 15% the number of crime victims that we served, and I'd like to see that go up even higher. We served over 1,100 victims last year, as well as food drives, clothing for domestic abuse victims and stuff. We have two grant positions now in our victim assistance. We also opened an office on the west side of town so that victims wouldn't have to navigate the challenges of downtown. We found very quickly that people who are in abusive relationships or people who are in victims of crime don't want to go downtown where they're uncertain about, you know, how to, how to navigate the parking and who to go meet with. So we also met with the Mexican consulate general to help in a transition to their new consulate, which is going to fall within Precinct Five. And also, we have named a liaison to help with those that they represent. So we're very excited about that relationship. Falling right in line with that is really to build a community and build a community trust in our law enforcement. And once again, I think that falls highly on the administration by providing regular and transparent reporting of departmental data, which we are doing and will continue to do and even increase to Commissioners Court. But we also started something that's been very successful called CHOPA, which is a Constable Chaplain Pastoral Alliance. We have taken religious leaders and asked like Bishop, Bishop Ken Murray and Pastor Ed Young and Greg Mott to be able to come in and help us to be able to build bridges within their congregations to the law enforcement community. And that's really exciting. It really seems to be taking root, and we've assigned an officer to deal directly and be part of that CHOPA to let us know what we can do. Community relations, of course, falls in that also. Before COVID, we had over 120 programs, classes, and events, usually averaging around 40, 45,000 participants each year. And I just can't, I under, overestimate the importance of the community relations because it's really what builds the, the bridges between us and the community. So our last goal and probably the most important, I believe, is to provide the equitable access and distribution of law enforcement services. Patrol Division, of course, that's going to fall mainly under the Patrol Division. And so if we can increase our patrol in underserved areas, but not only by responding to calls, but just through visibility, what I have found and what we, we're being reported back to us through our community, the DA's office, is that, you know, it's great that we have that quick response time, but when they can build those relationships with the law enforcement before they need the help, they're much more apt to call us when they do need help. So we would like to see those calls, if it's over 105,000 in those non-contracted areas, we'd like to see that increased by about 15% for the upcoming year. So at a glance, this is kind of what was going on in Precinct Five. We did not ask for an increase in our budget, and we thank the court for allocating the budget that they did. But as mentioned by Constable Herman, I would like to note that probably 95, 94, 95% of our budget is also labor costs. I know that this is typical across law enforcement. Non-labor costs are about 7%. We have about 3% of the other, we have, so about 104%. We do rely on our rollover to be able to make up that difference, to be able to keep our services at the level that they are for residents of Harris County. If I can answer any questions, I would, I would love the opportunity to do so.
Constable Heap, Tom Ramsey here. Thank you for your efforts. Thank you for holding the line on the budget this year. My, a simple question, what, what is the amount of the rollover from last year to this year?
Our rollover currently, though, when I checked last with Chief Branson, who does our budget, my current rollover is anticipated to be about $8 million.
Well done. Thank you for, for that, that effort.
Commissioner, I know that that is, is a, I'm, I'm very aware and cognizant that that is a extensive rollover. I don't, I don't think it's prudent on my part to spend taxpayers' money frivolously. And like I said, we do depend on, on some of the rollover. Well, I do anticipate having some of these funds being utilized, being that these positions we just have. Matter of fact, we'll have, we're hiring, let me look here, 15 additional people will be within a couple of weeks. So at that point, we'll have about 14 openings. But we do anticipate with some of the unilateral transfer has settled down as far as with the Sheriff's Department and the Houston Police Department, that those positions will be filled very quickly.
Constable, what I like about that fact is many times people will spend money unnecessarily not to have a rollover, thinking that that somehow is better. For you to be disciplined to control those cost expenses and clearly communicate what that is, that's helpful to us, I think, to know what that is. And certainly this year, if we've ever needed rollover money, it was, it was this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Constable.
Constable, this is K. Judge, if I may, thank you so much, Judge. Constable, I'm going to get out of the comments of Commissioner Ramsey. We appreciate your stewardship out there. Appreciate the good job you're doing with our communities out there. You, Tom, you were my constable where my house was in my first few years, and you did a good, good job out there. I may have a colleague who wished you hadn't have done such a good job, but you did a good job, and I got through something, and we're here today. So thank you very, very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other comments from my colleagues? Constable, thank you for your work. I, I know it's been just a tough, tough year for everybody, and I appreciate the, the metrics you guys are using. I know for you and the previous office, those were the particularly that I and our team saw just very, very helpful outcomes-focused numbers. And I just want to use this opportunity to mention to Jim and to Dave with, with Jad and Bajid and the constables, as I mentioned during Constable Rosen's remarks. I think it would be helpful, if at all possible, I know you all work together very, very closely. And I can't tell you how helpful it would be to have some sort of consistency across law enforcement agencies, as I mentioned, same to the sheriff as far as what you all measure, so that we can have a shared understanding of the needs and the areas. and the areas for us to explore further, identify best practices. And, and I think there are certain offices that are using those kinds of outcomes-focused metrics. So I would just ask that you all make use of the, the budget department and JAD, if to the extent that they can be helpful in, in, in working on some metrics that we can all use. And, and you, you have some great, great ones as a starting point.
All right. Thank you, Judge. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Constable Trevino, is that right, Lucinda?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you.
Constable, you're unmuted.
Okay. Thank you. Good morning, Honorable Judge and Honorable Commissioners. I hope you had a very Merry Christmas and I wish you a very Happy New Year. My name is Sylvia Trevino and I am the Harris County Constable of Precinct Six. I have just completed my first four years in office and I am so looking forward to the next four years. When I was first elected in two thousand and sixteen, I was so honored to be the first Latina to be elected constable in Harris County. But I am even more proud and honored to be the first grandma to be elected constable in Harris County. I am a third-generation Houstonian, born and raised in precinct six. I was born in the fifth ward, just off of Liberty Road and Ralston Streets, and I was raised in North Side off of Collinsworth and Robertson Street. I remember when our first Latino became constable in precinct six in nineteen seventy-three. The late Constable Raoul Martinez, a retired Houston police officer. And oh, how excited our community was to have a Hispanic in office. However, around that time, I also remember how people were leaving precinct six and businesses were leaving because of the high crime and gang problems. The historical fifth ward was at one time nicknamed the Bloody Fifth. Our historical barrios were known for its gangs. We have come a long way since then. But now precinct six is one of the fastest-growing communities in Harris County. New developments throughout the precinct are going up, new residents are moving in, and new businesses are opening. Our precinct six community is thriving. But now we are beginning to see an increase of calls for service, more calls of domestic violence. We are receiving complaints of illegal dumping, abandoned vehicles, theft of property, and public nuisances that are heard in our community. We are hearing concerns of police reform, use of force, better training, de-escalation training, the release of body cams, and better policy and procedures. I don't want us to take a step backwards and I don't want to see the increase of crime creep up on us. Our community deserves better. And this is why our budget request we submitted to you is very critical. I would also like to add that this is my first time in the four years that I have been in office to request additional personnel during our budget hearings. Precinct six has made you with what it has by continuously having our management wear numerous different hats, along with shifting and taking deputies off patrol to fill in the needs of our department and our community. Given the needed resources, we will be able to oversee and address all the legitimate concerns raised in the death of George Floyd, who died in the hands of police. We will be able to increase public awareness and education on personal safety and crime prevention. We will be able to provide assistance and resources to our citizens and victims of crimes. We will be able to provide the security in our county buildings for our residents, our visitors, and our county employees. We will be able to follow up, investigate, and clear cases originated by our department. We will be able to investigate the illegal dumping of trash, tires, abandoned vehicles, and graffiti. And we will be able to provide more appropriate training in de-escalation, crisis intervention, civilian interaction training, and use of force. These needed resources will allow us to keep our patrol officers in their respective positions on patrol to do the job they were hired to do, and that is to patrol, to respond to calls for service, increase police visibility, public safety, and improve response times. In closing, let me express my gratitude to all of you for your support, your hard work, and all your sacrifices to continue to make Harris County and all of us shine throughout our country. We are truly proud of you. This pandemic has really put a strain on not only the world, but here in Harris County as well. It has been painful, difficult, and tragic. But I do know that we are resilient and that together we will overcome. You have some exceedingly difficult decisions ahead of you in trying to meet the needs of all our Harris County departments. But I thank you for listening and I thank you for your consideration in helping precinct six continue to grow and be more productive. God bless you, our country, and I thank you.
Thank you, Constable Trevino. Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you, Judge. Constable, thank you so much and congratulations, I guess, on being the abuelita amongst the court.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm very proud of that.
Good, good. In terms of your budget, I, I see that you are asking for a captain's position because you're needing some expanded control there?
Yes, sir. And we are looking to expand our training and that is to respond to the needs of our community. We want to be able to train our deputies here in-house. We want to be able to use that captain to, to work with local, state, and government officials. And we need a position like a captain to be able to research the use of force, tasers, all the concerns that have been brought up during the death of George Floyd.
Gotcha. And in terms of your, your environmental unit, you're asking for two slots on that. The, I, I know that Constable Rosen has, has had a pretty successful program. Have you, have y'all discussed about how to make sure to, I guess, coordinate those, those resources, assuming you go online?
No, we, we have not had the opportunity to come together on that particular matter, sir. I, I would definitely, my door is open to meet with Alan Rosen and see how we can work together to address those issues of environmental.
And I know you're getting, I, I assume you are, that you're getting a lot of complaints, not only about the illegal dumping, but about, about homelessness.
Oh, my goodness. Yes, sir.
Okay.
That was one of, that was, that's where our community outreach also came in, our community service, our public relations are addressing our homeless issues. You know, under the freeways, we have several housings for privileged as well, precinct six.
So I would, I would ask you, I'm not sure how all this is going to shake out. We still have to hear from Mr. Berry on resources and all that. But I would, I would ask you to, like Constable Garcia, think about a, a homeless unit. Because that's probably amongst all the other calls I get, homelessness.
Yes.
The encampments and the freeways are a major issue. And we've done a lot to bring the city into a coordinated platform with the county. And so I would ask you to consider putting together a budget request on homelessness and, and also visit, as I suggested with Constable Garcia, to visit with Sheriff Gonzalez to make sure that the program, assuming it, it gets built, is coordinated with the resources and the efforts that he, that he has so that we're, we're coordinated countywide.
I think that's an excellent idea and we will definitely reach out to all our Harris County law enforcement agencies.
Good deal. Thank you.
I would like to, I would like to add one thing. I know that y'all are looking at our rollover monies right now and we operate on a ten-point-five million dollar budget at the present time. But I just want you to know that of that ten-point-five operational monies, we only have like three or four hundred thousand dollars left for that, for operational, for, to operate our department. We, we operate solely on our rollover monies.
Thank you, Constable. Commissioner Ellis, did you have a comment before?
No, thank you. Constable, good to, good to hear your voice, but Commissioner Garcia raised the issue, so I was thinking about it.
Commissioner Ramsey.
Thank you, sir. Likewise. Thank you.
Unmute, Commissioner Ramsey.
Constable, thank you for your leadership on these issues. I, I would echo Commissioner Garcia's encouragement to you. I mean, if there's some resources we can share between constables, that would be great. Let me also say that Star Hope Mission is not, I think it's real close to, if not in, your precinct and, and certainly they have homeless resources as well that maybe we can, can leverage and help with.
Thank you. We sure will. We'd reach out to them. Thank you, sir.
Constable, thank you for your work and perseverance through all of this.
Thank you. Likewise. We're very proud of y'all.
Just to echo what Commissioner Garcia said, you know, it's a tight year. I don't know if you heard our, our opening discussion yesterday. I, I'll assume not, but it's, it's very, very, very tight. And so I would encourage you to work as closely as possible with the budget department on identifying the, the qualitative and quantitative ways to reflect why this is urgent. And, and in that way, try and figure out what can be shared across departments, across existing processes. I think to, you will find the most success in your requests to the extent that you work closely with the budget department in, in, in really ironing out what it is that you need and why, because the availability of funds is extremely limited. So we will evaluate this closely, certainly my team is, and it's, it's just a very tight year.
Absolutely. I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Constable Walker.
You're unmuted, Constable.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead, please.
Yes, I'm on mute. Good morning. I wanted you all to know the goals and objectives of precinct seven. We are committed to providing the highest quality of service to the citizens of precinct seven. I, I know you have a copy of my mission and, and goals and I won't read that. I will just say that we have been very successful in working with the community. We constantly get letters and people come by and bring us all kinds of things to let us know. They really appreciate all the, the functions and all the law enforcement service that we provide to them. And what I am trying to get over the last couple of commissioners' meeting, I, I informed the commissioner that our vehicles were all real old vehicles. Not one, every vehicle we had here at precinct seven was over a hundred and fifty thousand miles. And over the last two commissioners' courts, I, you all have provided me with additional funds to receive vehicles. And now we're at the point where we have a lot of functional vehicles, but we've never replaced any of our civil vehicles. And now they are beginning to be extremely old. So I am asking from the court for twelve vehicles and two positions. The reason for the positions that I'm asking for is, of course, a couple of years ago, I had a night shift with no deputies on the night shift. And over the last couple of years, you all were able to give me funds to deal my night shift. And this year, I'm asking for two position to, the officers that I have, I have two officers on, on the night shift, on each night shift. And I'm asking for two more so there will, when, when one officer is off and one might be on vacation or one might call in, I'll have one to, to be there to patrol the neighborhoods. And that's the reason I'm asking for two additional officers. And of course, I'm trying to make sure my vehicles are sufficient for the officers. And we, we, we've been able to almost get there, but we're not quite there. So I'm asking for five vehicles for the patrol division and five vehicles for the civil division and two vehicles for, for, for supervisors that I promoted to make sure that we can properly secure our neighborhoods and make it safe for the communities.
Constable, this is Rod Nellis. Thank you for your work. When was the last time you got some money for vehicles, Constable?
I think last budget, last budget year, you did give me some money for vehicles. And we bought some new vehicles and we were able to get rid of, because the biggest, all the vehicles that we had, you couldn't repair them, you couldn't do anything. So we were able to turn in those old vehicles, but now we still have a few real old ones left. And that's why we're asking for these and hopefully in the next commissioner year, we won't need anymore. We'll, we will help replace most of those old vehicles because we never replaced any in the civil division.
Right. Thank you. Thank you for your work.
Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you. Constable Walker, good to hear your voice. Hope you're doing well. And remind us how many miles on average those vehicles have that, that you're asking to be replaced?
I can't tell you the exact amount, but I know it's over a hundred and fifty thousand miles. They are real, real old vehicles, really old. And you know, if, if I can get, if I can't get the amount I'm asking for anything to help, then I'll wait till the next term and ask for some more.
Gotcha. But those a hundred and fifty thousand is, especially for patrol vehicles that get a lot of wear and tear on a daily basis. That's, that, that could be dangerous for your staff. So anyway, just thank you for your work and, and good to hear your voice. And still remember those good old pal days.
Yeah, I do. And I, and I want you to remember that the civil vehicles were never replaced. The vehicles that you all had given me in the past went to patrol because my entire fleet was way over a hundred and fifty thousand miles.
Gotcha.
I can't tell you the exact numbers, but it was way over.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Constable, this is Tom Ramsey. Thank you for your leadership. Just a thought I had, it might be helpful if you went through a lease to get some immediate relief until we can get you some new vehicles in there. So that might be worth pursuing, at least on an interim basis.
Well, I just want you to know, all of my supervisors have leased vehicles. We had to do that because their vehicles was extremely old. And so what I did, I made sure I leased all the supervisors' vehicles. But it's, it's kind of hard to lease vehicles for your patrol officer because you cannot put the equipment in them.
Understood. Yes, that's, that's right. Thank you. I appreciate you.
You're quite welcome.
Constable, thank you. And I just have a question for Dave on the budget office on, on this point of the vehicles. I thought for some reason last year that I do recall there being issues with these, with these, with these vehicles that really needed replacing. And I thought that we had addressed it, whether through CIP or, or, or at least culled through the needs and figured out what kind of schedule they needed to get on. Is that not something that's happened and is that something we can pursue going forward? I don't know if this request is something that, that could be put on CIP or it, it just seems like something that should have, should have been dealt with sort of on a, just as we try and keep up the buildings, we try and keep up the vehicles.
Good morning, Judge. This is, this is David Berry. Judge, we have funded some vehicles through commercial paper. And, and typically the way it works is that actually through Fleet Services, the vehicles are purchased and then departments pay the cost back over a five and then departments pay the cost back over a five-year period. As we're seeing new requests, this is one of those items we can evaluate using another funding source other than just general funds, for example, Commercial Paper. I think that is the short-term fix, is are there other funding sources? Longer term, and my team and I were just talking about this this morning, we do need a more comprehensive vehicle financing plan where we're using the right combination of PEGO and debt financing and potentially leases. And that is not something we have. So that is an initiative we should complete as quickly as we can.
Yeah, it just seems like the constables should be focused on keeping the community safe. And this kind of thing is is very, you know, something you guys could just keep track of on an operational across-the-board level. So I'm glad you guys are working on that. And Constable Walker, thank you for your work. I would just say, Sammy, just please work closely with the Budget Office, given our very, very limited funds, as I mentioned to Constable Trevino. We're just going to have to look at this very closely, so to the extent you can work with them on, you know, the metrics and the outcomes-based metrics, that would help. Let's hear from Commissioner Cable, then Commissioner Garcia, and then Commissioner Ellis.
Your Honor, one of the the metrics that we discussed briefly last year and that we were in the process of looking at for all of our law enforcement entities is something that we have started in some of our precincts. I think we've started with control with our vehicles is what's called the Flat Line Approach, which is where instead of taking vehicles on an individual bases, you look at your fleet as a unit. And that every year, you look at your fleet and you retire the vehicles that are too tired and replace those and so that your budget has some stability in it and you're maintaining the health of a fleet as opposed to maintaining the health of individual vehicles. And so we have some questions, for example, when when Constable May got rid of her old vehicles, she should have gotten back into her budget what the old ones went out for at auction. It's one of the advantages of having a good flat line approach or a fleet maintenance approach, which is the trend in other places. It's something that we, it's not our idea, it's something we borrowed from elsewhere. But by doing that, you can maintain a healthier fleet. And then when you sell your higher mileage vehicles off, you get more money back from those, which goes back into that fleet budget for maintaining the flat line. And so I don't know where Dave is on looking at the Flat Line Approach for all of our law enforcement vehicles, but I think that that's something that we do need to continue to put on there, because that is a very good practice that we started to adopt in some of our areas. I know that we started to adopt that in Precinct Four. I think Precinct Two may be doing the Flat Line right now as well, to where they're looking at their their fleet management, where it's a fleet as a whole as opposed to individual vehicles and equipment that's in it. And some of the other folks are starting to do that as well. I think it's a better practice. It saves us money long-term, because you don't have as much money going into down vehicles. You don't have as much money going into repairs and you're maximizing the overall health of the fleet. And so I just want to want to pitch that in, that we need to look at that and look at that across all of the constables with regard to all of their fleets and the sheriff's office as well and also the fire marshal, so that we don't end up having what happened with Constable May. We shared a series of vehicles that ended up being way past where they needed to be, and then we had to get a whole bunch all at once. We need to be rotating them through so that we don't have, I think what was referred to as spikes and dips, that you have a flat line in your budget as opposed to spikes and dips based upon critical mass. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you, Judge. And this is this is the vehicle conversation just resurrects work that that we were challenged with as well at the City of Houston when I was on council, because there's not just the wear and tear that patrol vehicles in particular tend to generate, but also they tend to be involved in crashes more often than other vehicles. And so you could have a brand-new car that gets taken out of circulation by being involved in a high-speed chase, as an example, and crashing, then being taken out of circulation. And I'm trying to remember what we constructed in terms of how we buy vehicles. And I'm trying to remember what we did at the City of Houston, that we were leasing, I think we were buying vehicles. And then when they were wrecked, it was a chunk of money that we lost, because those, you know, in many cases, those vehicles are totaled. And so I think we went to a lease program, a lease strategy, so that if we did crash a vehicle, then it wasn't as simple as just outfitting another one to to replace that one. And so, Mr. Berry, there is some from that time that I can connect you with to see if any if there's any data to or conversation go by from those times to see if it really bared any inability to recharge our dollars and better manage. I think it helped us a great deal. I just don't remember if it ended up being a cure-all for this complicated problem. But I'll just stake a pin in this point, that having been someone who did drive a patrol car that floorboards were rotted out and rattled louder than our sirens could be heard, I want to make sure that we're prioritizing and making a a committed effort to getting deputies out of those antiquated vehicles that are dangerous. I remember having to, not having to, but volunteering to drive Officer Mack to to his living quarters, because he was a patrol officer in the sixties or seventies, I think, that had a had a tie rod go out from under him and turned him into a functioning paraplegic. And we just honored him by taking care of him on a weekly basis. But we don't need to have our guys, they're already doing a dangerous job. And whether the sheriff's office or constables, we need to get them out of those dangerous vehicles.
And Commissioner Garcia, this is David Berry speaking. The city, we looked at it briefly, does actually have a CIP program for vehicles. And and the effort is to smooth out these costs and have regular planned investment. I think that's something that makes all the sense in the world. And as an initiative coming out of this budget cycle, we'd be happy to work with Fleet Services on getting together the right both scheduled replacements and financing plan. Because I share your frustration. What we see in these budget submissions is we're playing whack-a-mole. And that's that's not a good way to do budgeting. So happy to happy to dig in on that.
Good deal. Thank you.
Commissioner Ellis.
Thank you, Judge. Mr. Berry, would you just look at whether or not the transportation punch from the toll road would be a potential source of revenue to do them across the board, even if it's a one-time deal, at least look and see if that's talk with legal as well, Mr. Iyer. And that's at least another funding option.
We'll investigate. I don't know the answer off the top of my head.
Constable, thank you for your work and thank you so much for your comments this morning and afternoon.
The leasing cars is kind of impossible for us to lease patrol cars, because you don't have all the equipment in it. It's you can lease cars for some of your top administrators, but as far as patrol officers, you, these officers have so much equipment in these cars, there's hardly room for them. And they're not in leased cars, so you have to have a police car for officers.
Thank you, Constable. And I think is that something that Dave, you can work with a constable and other constables on? This is something you got to at least get on the on the way to making it in the board.
Happy to do that. And we do have some, through CP and Fleet Services, we have some ways today to smooth out that expense for departments. But we need to do it on a systematic basis, not just a one-off thing. So instructions received. We know where to go. We'll get to Fleet Services and get moving on.
We've been we've been in session for two hours, so let's take a 10-minute break until 12:15, and then we'll continue with Constable Sandlin. Okay, it is 12:18. We're back in session. So we were waiting to hear from Constable Sandlin. Go ahead, Constable.
I'm unmuted, Constable.
Good afternoon, Judge, Commissioners, Budget Office. I'd like to also say thank you to David Berry, Kevin Seat, and also PFM for their guidance with our budget this year. Lucinda, could you bring up our slideshow? Okay, and if you could go to slide number two, please. Okay, included in our budget packet is an outline of the primary services we provide. These include the services of civil process, criminal warrants, general patrol functions, call response, DWI interdiction, also providing extra patrols and vacation watches, to include neighborhood patrols and checks and follow-up investigations on persons and property crimes. We also process the evidence from these crimes. We do community outreach also through social media. We do continuing education and general department operations. With a staff of seventy-two sworn personnel and eighteen civilians, we strive to meet the needs of the citizens within the hundred and fifty-four square miles of Precinct Eight with a population of nearly three hundred thousand people. If we could go to slide three, please. We work to achieve and maintain a high level of success in providing these services, which is evident by the performance metrics listed in our packet. As a leader of our agency, every service provided by Precinct Eight is important to me, and I want to ensure that we are making a positive difference in everything we do. The year 2020 was obviously not the norm for anyone. Due to the pandemic, we saw demand for some of the services we provide decrease while others increase. We also found ourselves performing new services in response to the pandemic, such as providing security at testing and food distribution sites, hosting or participating in distributing PPE supplies to the community and holding blood drives, to name a few. Those demands are still ongoing. With that in mind, you'll note that some of the statistics listed on page three of the presentation include 2019 numbers for comparison. We fully expect numbers to return to pre-pandemic levels once COVID is finally behind us. We could go to slide four. With the vast majority of the services we provide being driven by demand from the community, it is vitally important that we foster and maintain positive relationships with those we serve. While there's always room for improvement, I'm proud of the fact that we receive an overwhelming support and praise from the community we serve. With the request that we include our goals and objectives as part of the budget process this year, we try to incorporate clear and relevant benchmarks across all divisions for the services we provide. You will notice a common theme of striving to provide diligent, compassionate, and meaningful service to the community throughout the range of stated goals and objectives listed by our agency. Essentially, our objectives were compiled with a focus on achieving positive results through the use of effective and proven methods while also incorporating some new methods as well. My hope is that reaching our stated goals and objectives, we will continue to be an effective law enforcement agency that maintains public trust. Gauging performance and the effectiveness of the services Precinct Eight provides has always been one of my top priorities as constable. So when we were asked to list performance metrics as part of this year's budget packet, you'll see that most of the ones listed were already in use. In fact, we were able to provide all of the metrics and values that PFM suggested during the review of our submission. I too agree that it is vitally important that we gauge our effectiveness by setting targets and striving to achieve them. For the two new performance metrics that we added at the suggestion of PFM, we already implemented these methods and are currently collecting this information as well. Again, due to COVID, some of the values listed for 2020 are not the norm, and 2019 data was also included for comparison. We could go to slide five, please. On slide five of our presentation, you will see a chart of outlining budget shortfalls for the last three fiscal years. As relatively a small agency, we provide a vast array of services with a staff of ninety people. Therefore, it's important that we strive to remain fully staffed at all times in order to effectively meet the demand for our services. When openings occur through the attrition, we aim to fill them as quickly as possible. For the last two fiscal years, we had to request for an advance from our rollover fund at the start of the budget cycle to ensure there were adequate funding in our regular budget for salaries and benefits as well as operating costs. While I understand that the budget management does not recommend allocations based on the number of positions we have, I asked the court to consider the fact that with all or most of our positions full, we will continue to have a shortfall if an adjustment is not made. I'm not asking for any new positions at this time. I'm just simply asking that we be adequately funded to maintain what we currently have. We could go to slide six, please. Finally, I ask that the last two slides of our presentation be dedicated to highlighting the overwhelming support we received from the community, especially during 2020, during this pandemic. Literally, there is rarely a day that goes by that we do not have citizens coming into our office contacting us to just simply offer their thanks for what we do. It is truly humbling. The photos you see on slide seven are just a fraction of those we have that capture this. From parades through our parking lot to prayer circles, to feeding our staff, to thank you cards and notes that citizens of Precinct Eight make at a point to show their support and appreciation for our staff. To me, that is the best measure of effectiveness. I'm proud to serve them, and I'm proud to have a hard-working staff who risk their lives every day for the service to our community. Be glad to take any questions.
Judge.
Yes, Commissioner Garcia, go ahead.
Thank you, Judge. Constable, it was heartbreaking to visit with you the other day and continue to be in our thoughts and prayers.
Thank you.
And your family. But thank you and your guys for all your work. And thank you for the support that you've been providing on getting the uncovering the testing sites, our food distributions and the like. So thank you for all you're doing. And similarly, Constable, I wanted to also ask you, because I know that you're getting it in your in your area as well. I'm not sure just how how significant you're getting it, but I think you're getting it just about as much as anybody else, with maybe the exception of the inner-city offices, but homelessness. Is your is your office, is your phone ringing quite a bit with encampments and panhandling and things like that in your area?
Yes, sir. Mainly in the Clear Lake area. And I know your office is probably aware that we had a very large encampment behind the the old Home Depot over the Gulf Freeway. But just right here at El Camino and Bay Area, I mean, we get disturbance calls at those locations. The panhandlers are literally fighting over who's going to work what corner, because some of them pay better than others. We're assaults occurring underneath the bridges, so we're handling that with patrol right now. And I'll just be real honest, I didn't ask for any positions, because I know right now funds are very limited. But I mean, in the future, if we could get some positions, if it's not this year, you know, that's fine. I understand where we're at as far as funding. But to answer your question, our Patrol Division is pretty much handling those types of calls. And we go under, we check in on them. We know almost every one of them by name. And we we go under, we check in on them. We know almost every one of them by name. And and at some point, and we've worked with the Sheriff's Department also as far as we found some that truly wanted to get help. And we reached out to Sheriff Gonzalez's team outreach and we've got some of these folks relocated.
Good, good. So I I would just ask you to, as I've asked a couple of the other offices to. I think about constructing a program, get that over to me and. As and and you've you've heard the judge, you know, funds are very, very limited. But with everything else that we've done, especially in the area homelessness. It may be good to, you know, further build on our ability to to make an impact on in that area. So. No promises, but get that over to me and and let me let me work with it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Constable, this is this is Tom Ramsey. Appreciate appreciate what you do. I get good reports on you from friends in the Seabrook, Clear Lake, Lake City area. Thank you for. For maintaining the presence you do. Call on my office anytime if you need any help.
Thank you, sir, and I'm looking forward to meeting you also. Did I come through?
Yes, Constable, I'm waiting to see if my colleagues have any other comments. But I I just want to thank you. You your department sent just such a thoughtful list of performance metrics. I appreciate the work you and your team do. Appreciate your presentation and. Yeah, just just thank you so much.
The the main thing is I just asked that in the last three weeks.
Constable.
Go ahead, Constable.
I would just ask that the last three years, we've had to go into rollover just to meet budget at the start. And and I was willing to do that, but I will tell you my my rollover is is quite low. And I I just can't continue to do that and and be able to pay salaries and benefits and that.
Yeah, and we should not be paying for these these recurring expenses out of the rollover. So that's something that I I. Expect Dave Barry's team is is going to be working with you and and the other department departments on. Just to make sure that we're in 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 a better position also when it comes to the rollover.
Okay, thank you very much, Judge.
That concludes the.
Constable, listen.
Oh, good.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to tell the Constable your service and for you and your family there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Constable. So unless I missed anybody, Lucinda, it's time for for us to hear from the sheriff.
The Sheriff's Civil Service.
Go ahead.
Sunny Memes, I'm going to unmute you. You're unmuted, sir.
Okay.
I'm also going to unmute Chair Melanie Miles. You're unmuted.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Judge Hidalgo and Commissioners. This is Melanie Miles. I chair the Sheriff's Civil Service Commission. Thank you for this opportunity to present on behalf of my fellow commissioners and the staff of the Sheriff's Civil Service Office. The purpose of the Civil Service Commission is twofold. One is to conduct and hear the appeals of. The Sheriff's Office classified employees. With this purpose, it is to promote the professionalism in law enforcement and to assure all employees in the classified service of the Harris County Sheriff's Office receive fair. And impartial treatment at all times and that they adhere to the rules of conduct of the department. The classified service employees are currently defined as the rank of captain and below. The second. Purpose of the Civil Service Commission is to conduct the administration of promotional exams. For five ranks of the Sheriff's Office and to do all of these things with transparency and impartiality. The Civil Service Commission is made up of seven commissioners along with the exceptional staff of Sunny Memes. The director who's on the line now and the assistant director Jerry Miller. I think it's important to note that the seven commissioners truly do represent the diversity of this county. In twenty twenty, for the first time, three women presided on a panel, on an appeal panel, and all three were women of color. The appeal hearings are held twice a month. However, in twenty twenty, we were not able to conduct hearings for the four. Months of March through June due to COVID. Nonetheless, a total of twelve appeals were heard and thirteen were withdrawn at the last minute just prior to the hearings. For twenty twenty one, we already have thirty one appeals on the docket. I believe the sheriff, his internal affairs, along with the employees, union representatives will all say that the Sheriff's Office Civil Service Commission is fair. Transparent and 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 impartial body. With the assistance of the Budget Management Department and the consultant, we are presenting the same budget as last year. You have our commitment to work within the budget as we have in the past. If I can take another point of personal privilege, I would like to point out that the consultant commended the Sheriff's Civil Service Commission on its website. That it being exceptional and the level of transparency should serve as a model to others. I want to thank you for your time and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Check and see if my colleagues have any questions. Thank you so much, Judge, for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to unmute Sheriff Ed Gonzalez. You're unmuted, sir.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Judge Hidalgo, Commissioners. Also want to give a special shout out to Commissioner Ellis on his reelection and also to. Commissioner Ramsey on his election. Look forward to working with you, Commissioner Ramsey, and serving the needs of your precinct as well. So welcome aboard. We're responsible for protecting more than two million people spread among one thousand seven hundred and eighty eight square miles in unincorporated Harris County. We thank you, Commissioners Court, for the support you showed us with the current budget. But so much has changed since the last time, this time last year. The pandemic challenged our Sheriff's Office family in ways no one could have imagined then. We have buried three teammates who died after contracting the virus. Six people housed in our jail have died from COVID nineteen as well. While we mourn these deaths, I am proud that our team pulled together to stave off a potentially catastrophic outbreak in the county jail. This was despite a rise in the jail population and a surge in COVID nineteen cases and hospitalizations in the community. In fact, the death rate within our jail is actually lower than the overall COVID nineteen death rate in the Harris County community. We owe an unpayable debt to the five thousand men and women on our team who courageously reported for duty every day. Knowing full well the threat to themselves and their families. I'm here today to seek a stronger investment in our team, knowing full well that the pandemic has inflicted real economic damage to our community's financial health. I often say that law enforcement finds itself on the front lines of three major societal issues that must be addressed on a more holistic level. Poverty, mental illness and drug addiction. The pandemic has exacerbated all three of these societal issues. I'd like to take a moment to tell you about the proactive steps we've taken to address some of them. Our jail is at capacity with nearly nine thousand inmates. We haven't hit that mark since March of twenty twenty. The rising jail population is because of two primary factors. One, our courts never got back up to full operations after Hurricane Harvey damaged the criminal justice system. And two. The ongoing pandemic that effectively ended hearings and trials, causing people in our jail to wait longer for their cases to be heard. Today, the average length of stay for someone sent to our jail is two hundred and fifteen days or more than seven months. Those are real cost. In past years, we had the option of paying outsourced people to out of county jails when we hit our capacity. That's not the case now as many of those facilities have gotten out of business during the pandemic. I'm proud that last year we became the first local law enforcement agency to launch a site and release program that has decreased the number. Of some people jailed for low level nonviolent crimes while still holding them accountable. Late last year, HPD agreed to adopt site and release as well, which is a big help because nearly sixty percent of the people in our jail. Were arrested on HPD charges. Let me give you some numbers that illustrate how the slowdown in the court system has impacted the jail population. In twenty twenty, the number of people booked into the jail totaled eighty one thousand seven hundred and thirty one. That is a huge twenty three percent reduction from twenty nineteen when a hundred and six thousand two hundred and five three. Correction, a hundred and six thousand two hundred and fifty three people were booked into the jail. However, even though we reduced annual bookings into the jail by almost twenty five thousand, our overall population today is over nine thousand. At the end of twenty nineteen, when we booked many more people into the jail, the population was actually lower by about three hundred people. This tells you that the problem isn't arrest. We're doing our part on that front. The problem is the logjam in on our court dockets. For years, our jail has functioned as the state's largest mental health hospital. More than two thirds of people housed in our jail suffer from some form of mental health problem. Half of these people, more than three thousand two hundred, are currently taking a psychotropic medication. Again, more hard cost. I'm also excited to announce today that I have appointed our agency's first ever Chief of Detentions. A civilian post tasked with overseeing our entire jail population. And operation. Shannon Herclotts is a longtime respected top official at the Texas Commission on Jail Standards, where he helped oversee. Compliance with state regulations at jails across Texas, including ours for two decades. Other steps we've taken to address mental illness, poverty and drug addiction in our community include the launching of Project Guardian to improve our interactions and calls for service involving persons on the autism spectrum. This program gives our deputies advanced information so they're prepared before they arrive at a call. We expanded our telehealth program that provides patrol deputies within hand access to a behavioral health clinician via an iPad. In addition to the forty hour mental health training course at our academy, we implemented a proven de-escalation training and scenario based program. For patrol deputies and detention officers. We established the agency's first ever Behavioral Health Division, led by highly qualified mental health professionals. That offers a wide range of consultation and counseling services to our employees and their immediate families. Before now, our agency never had in-house mental health providers serving our deputies, detention officers and all other employees. Across the nation, law enforcement agencies have reported a rise in violence during the pandemic. We were not immune to this trend. In twenty twenty, we saw unincorporated Harris County's murder rate climb twenty seven percent from the prior year. What's especially concerning is that our increase is actually lower than the average murder rate increase seen in other big metro areas. In Harris County, domestic violence was the primary driver behind our murder rate increase. The number of residents killed by a family member in twenty twenty was thirty six, which is more than twice the number killed by a relative in twenty nineteen in our county. I'm proud that our investigators have cleared more than eighty percent of twenty twenty murder cases. That's a clearance rate that is well above the national average. Still, I think we'd all prefer to prevent these murders from happening in the first place. That is why we launched a Behavioral Threat Management Unit to tackle a key component of domestic violence, stalking. The goal of the unit is to prevent volatile situations from escalating into harm or violence. We have taken other proactive research based steps to address the rise in violence. In response to an increase in street racing and road rage incidents, we've established a traffic crimes unit centered on every illegal aspect. Of the local racing culture, street takeovers and stunt driving. We've seen that while the pandemic may have reduced congestion congestion on our roads, reckless driving actually increased. In twenty nineteen, we worked hard to help Harris County shed its status as the deadliest place in America for drivers. Our proactive enforcement work work helped temporarily reduce the overall number of fatal crashes in twenty nineteen to its lowest level in years. But we saw that number surge again in twenty twenty to one hundred and forty eight, the highest number of fatal crashes we've seen in the past five years. We created proactive crime reduction units in all five patrol districts tasked with proactively addressing public safety issues unique to each community they serve. We've developed a flood rescue unit to respond to rescue calls during flooding and severe weather events and devoted more resources to swift water training. And high water equipment. The unit has more than seventy trained members. I'm here today seeking additional investment in our Sheriff's Office team. We must increase pay for all Harris County law enforcement. We must begin closing the gap between our employees and their counterparts in other similarly sized agencies. This investment is essential if we are to recruit, properly train and retain a team of peacekeepers equipped equipped to meet the expectations. Of the residents we serve. Demographers predict that very soon there will be more Harris County residents living outside the city of Houston proper than living within the city limits. However, the Sheriff's Office staffing staffing has remained relatively flat. Resources resources are stretched thin. I'm asking you for more deputies and detention officers so that we can keep our community safe. I understand a reluctance to spend more on detention officers at a time when we all believe there are too many people in the jail. However, the reality is that our population is high and there is no reason to think it's going to shrink anytime soon. We are struggling to meet state mandated staffing ratios in the jail. And turnover among our jail staff is high because of the stress that comes with mandatory overtime that keeps our people away from their families. More than any of us would tolerate in our own lives. We look forward to the collaborative relationship that we have with all eight elected constables. We work very closely. But we understand that there's additional ways that we could continue to serve all residents of Harris County and we're committed to doing that and they do all they all do phenomenal work. Thank you for your support of our team during during these trying times. We're very grateful. And I'm prepared to answer your questions. And you also have in your package some more detailed information on specific items. Related to some of the increase that we're we're requesting.
Thank you, Sheriff, Commissioner.
Thank you, Judge. Sheriff, happy new year to you and your family and. Thank you and your and your team for all that you guys do on a day to day basis. Additionally, let me also just continue to offer prayers and condolences to your Sheriff's Office. Family for the losses that you have incurred through this pandemic, both COVID related and not. And and yeah, so again, just thank you for 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 all of your incredible work. And I and I, first of all, let me applaud you on the appointment of Shannon. I'm familiar with him and I think this will go a long ways. I think Shannon will also recognize the fact that. It's always easier to inspect than it is to operate. So I think he's a little light on on top because I think he's gonna lose a little little bit of hair running the largest sheriff's county jail in Texas. But I think it's a smart hire. And and I applaud you for being able to snag him. To to your request. I I will tell you that I will continue to be an advocate. For the largest unnamed city in Texas, and that is. Unincorporated Harris County. And if you were to be a city in Texas, you would be just right behind and we'll see what the census says, but. You just might be right in front of the city of Houston. And so obviously, the challenges that you deal with are not the challenges of the sheriffs of of years back. You're you're not just you're you're livestock isn't the busiest unit that it used to be. Back in the old days. You're dealing with human trafficking. You're dealing with, as you alluded to, drunk driving fatalities and crashes. You're dealing with gangs. You're dealing with violence, domestic violence in particular. You are you are a chief of police. But you're elected to do that job, not appointed. And so I recognize the challenges and and obviously applaud you for what you're doing and how you're doing it with what you have to do with. To that end, I want to just confirm some of the data that I've got. It it says here that you've got currently a hundred and fifty four vacancies under your patrol administration. And a hundred vacancies. And a hundred vacancies in detentions. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, good. How, you know, you know, I've spoken about your your hiring recruiting process. And and actually, correct this for me. How many academy classes are are you running now? Is it two or is it five? And I I believe I made the motion at the last budget. To provide you with five academy classes. What what ended up happening?
The the investment for those five classes would have been much more than what our budget would have been able to sustain. So we've been able to roll out two two full classes per year. And then in addition to some lateral classes as well, just to supplement, you know, our workforce. You know, I mean, we we struggle nationally with recruiting as everybody else does. It's no longer a profession unfortunately that a lot of young people want to sign up for. They do look at more things like like immediate startup pay rather than longevity and other. Things that come in the in the backend with retire with pension systems and all of that. So we would like to have more academy classes. Sometimes we're landlocked with our facility, as you know. Even with the limited number of classrooms and the staff that we have out there, so there's only a limited bandwidth, but we would like to. Be able to grow that number so that, you know, as you might recall as well. Many, many years ago, there were two mass hiring periods that the sheriff's office had. Well, those are coming of of age. Those are coming now to the point where they're they've they've reached the the retirement age where they're gonna be looking to move on elsewhere and we support, you know. Them doing that, but but we need to continue to bring people in through the front end.
So so practically speaking. How many classes can you, five may have been aspirational. But realistically, how many classes can you run? Fill and and process in a fiscal year?
I I think again, if we if we could, if we could really dig deep, I think we could do maths four. Ideally, more comfortably about three and especially right now with COVID, obviously, we have some limitations in terms of the. The the number of people in the classes. I've increased that since I first came in. To make sure that we're trying to grow the the numbers more. You know, one of the challenges that sometimes happens is that sometimes our pool, it comes from within, it comes from our detention officers. That's why you do see sometimes higher numbers. And I do want to point out to the vacancies that you mentioned, those those are PCNs that we have on the books. But it's not necessarily that we are are sitting on them and not filling them, it's simply we don't have the funding behind those PCNs that are available.
So the hundred and fifty four in patrol are not funded PCNs?
Yeah, they're not funded. If so, so that's kind of what we're asking additionally for new positions, just positions that are allocated already.
Okay.
That just need funding for. And as you know, in your previous role as sheriff, you know, and if you look through, I mean, every budget that I've had, I've come in within budget. So I've managed a good, I've been a good steward of our resources. Going back to my days on city council. But, you know, I also have to keep an eye towards the vision and I mean towards the future. And, you know, I'm a hands-on sheriff, I'm always out there talking to residents. And I know what stars always public safety. And I think you you can see from some of the work that we've done that we're one of the most forward-thinking, leading law enforcement agents in the country. That was one of my goals in my first four years, but people also want to see boots on the ground. They want to see. Deputies out there being proactive, reducing those violent crimes. And I tell you that our violent crimes unit and others are very, very busy. And we're gonna continue to be aggressive. We ramped up a lot because it has to be a multi-pronged approach. I believe on the intervention, the prevention, some of those soft skills that we're, we have one of the leading homeless outreach teams and mental health unit under my tenure here. We've increased it all across the county. Every commissioner's district has. You know, a a mental health unit and a homeless outreach team. I know Commissioner Garcia, you work very closely with our team and you see how phenomenal they are with, you know, and how proactive they are. But we also need to have deputies out there making sure they're also clearing cases, not just generating reports. But those places need follow-up and so we need to make sure they're also dealing that now we have emerging issues such as boarding homes. A group homes that, you know, I worked on when I was on city council and helped draft and create the first ever group homes ordinance there. But now we're having to launch a team because we've seen some horrific cases that are now coming into Harris County because there's been very little oversight. So now we're having to take that on as well and those are.
You got urban challenges.
Yes, and with the sprawl that we have in Harris County, we can't continue to lead the nation in. In the number of impaired drivers out on the roadways and a major fatal crashes as well.
So so Sheriff, on the on the hundred and fifty four unfunded vacancies that you've got. How how many classes, I mean, how many? New hires do you feel comfortable that you can produce? In a year, whether lateral or or new new recruits?
I I think we could probably comfortably bring in, well, each class, we, you know, our goal would be about seventy. Individuals per class. Of course, there is some that that will end up coming out because they, you know, for.
On average, on average, how many?
On average, about sixty per class. So new classes, we're bringing in about, you know, a hundred and twenty per year. And then through laterals that we have, you know, they they could average anywhere from, let's say, thirty per class on those. They come through a modified program. So let's say we get those, we could have a little bit more frequently because they're shorter. We could maybe do about four a year. So we have to buy another hundred and twenty, so right around the 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 three hundred range. And part of what takes a while too, as you know, is is getting them up to to par to be able to serve in a in a police capacity, you know. When we're bringing them on board, we're we're basically. Paying that salary for six months before they're ever actually deployed out in the in the field. So sometimes you are just gonna have a rolling number of vacancies simply because. You know, you're dealing with attrition and other other dynamics.
Good deal. And I I wanna, I wanna work with you to see if if we can't work out a. A. A good, now I'll work with Mr. Barry on this. A good way to get your classes funded, your lateral and your and your four academy classes. I I thought I thought it was very important for you to point out that you've got vacancies, but they're not funded. And so you always have to come back to us before you can get queued up to. Hiring, you might have laterals that you can bring over nearly immediately.
Yeah.
If if you had the funding for it. And then lastly, I think it's important for us to remember that. You don't get a whole lot of discretion whether you want to fund or not detention positions. Those are state jail commission required. And and so those are very critical. Lastly, the status of Harris Health taking over your medical operations. Where are we with that?
Yeah, well, as a follow-up to the Commissioner's Court meeting, the the last one that was held. We've began having conversations. I know there's some meetings scheduled and we've got our our medical team. You know, starting to move forward with that. Like I had said before, we were already well underway on that. It was just more a function of. Harris Health, the board and others making those decisions to actually take it over. And 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 voting with their governing body, but other than that, we're still moving forward and and we would like to have it done sooner rather than later ideally.
Gotcha. Thank you, Sheriff. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ramsey.
Sheriff Tom Ramsey here. Appreciate your leadership during these tough times. I know that we've got, at least in the city of Houston, homicides are up forty one percent. It's not clear exactly what the number is in the unincorporate area. I'm assuming it would mirror that. How are your resources for dealing with that significant increase in crime during the pandemic?
Thank you, Commissioners. And as I said earlier, congratulations to you and I look forward to working with you and and serving the needs of your constituents. Yes, we we did see an uptick. You know, with our murder rate not as significant in HPDs and our numbers are definitely not as high as theirs. And, you know, one of the things that we do is is that we take some proactive measures, not only in our homicide team. You know, we're very fortunate as said to have such a high clearance rate. That takes hard work and commitment on their part, but also to make sure that we're taking proactive measures. So we do respond to those scenes where maybe the person didn't die, but it was still. Some type of shooting incident or stabbing so that we could make sure that we're. Working to prevent that future murder from happening down the road and really removing some of the prolific shooters that are out in our community. Our warrants team, for example, I I don't have the number handy, but they took off a lot of individuals that from the streets that were wanted. On active murder warrants throughout Harris County. They they really focused on that as well because our goal is always to focus on violent crime. We also launched those crime reduction units that I mentioned. There's one out in the areas that you serve as well that are more proactive to try to remove some of those illegal guns from the streets. Look, again, we could be as preventive as we want and we're definitely one of those agencies that takes a preventive approach to a lot of. Activities out there like homelessness and mental health and things like that. But at the end of the day, we still have to be firm on crime. It's our North Star and we gotta make sure that we're actively dealing with a lot of bad actors. That still exist in a growing county and big county like we have and that takes resources. We can't just have them responding from call to call. So but those are investments that we did from redeploying internal resources. But if we take from one area of the agency, then then we're 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 then slipping in another area as well. And so, you know, it's just a matter of just trying to do with what we have. Like I said before, I've met every budget that we have, but at the same time. If I don't shoot straight with you and tell you some of the challenges, then then it's not on your radar. So I need to tell you what I'm seeing in terms of the horizon.
How many investigator positions do you have open?
We included in part of our request several of the investigator positions. Let me see here. Or my finance.
That'd be fine. You could just shoot that.
Yeah, we'll get that information to you.
Is the person you hired, you referenced in the jail, is that is is his title jail administrator?
It's a jail administrator, yes, because it's such a large system. You know, we 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 elevated the title, if you will, because we really are the size of some. Prison systems, if you will, because of our population. So we wanted to be an elevated title to recognize that he's more than just a jail administrator. It really is one of the largest systems in the country. So it is a jail administrator.
Well, Sheriff, anything we can do to help you, whether it's Harris Health coming over, getting involved as we're working on. Anything we can help you to get some help in that that jail. So that we can focus again our our resources out in the neighborhoods we want to do.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. We we appreciate that and. For investigation, okay. Yeah, for our investigative positions, we have four current open investigative positions.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do any of my colleagues have additional comments? Sheriff, just a thank you and and a congratulations to to your new jail administrator. I think it's it's brilliant and it's commendable. A lot of, a lot of folks have not done that. Commissioner Ellis, go ahead.
Judge, I just wanted to thank the sheriff for working with me and my staff, all of our staffs on so many of the reform issues. That each of us presented after George Floyd's death and I I sincerely appreciate it. Sheriff, we're making progress and I think the real key is you. On pulling everybody together, keeping everybody calm to get those things done. And I appreciate your work on working with Dave Barry and Harris Health, hopefully. So we can figure out how to improve healthcare, build on what you've done in terms of healthcare in the jail. Just wanted to thank you.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations on your reelection, by the way.
Thank you so much and congratulations to you, Commissioner, and for all your advocacy for law enforcement and and. And sound reforms that that makes sense and appreciate that and we're gonna continue to work hard. We understand that we serve a broad constituency of many individuals. And 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 some obviously need help and we need to make sure that we're. Working proactively to get them into the proper alternatives to incarceration when it's appropriate. And we're gonna continue to do that as we have, as you know, and your team knows and, you know, grateful for your support. And thank you, Judge Idago, as well for your support and and your kind words a few minutes ago.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
You always make the point. It's a public safety and reform and we can do both.
Yes.
Thank you, Judge.
Absolutely. And and look, the the requests, I mean, as you know, the. It I it's all but impossible that we could possibly grant all of that.
Yes.
And maybe even a lot of it, but I I I'll I'll just mention, you know, to the extent that you have. Those, I know you guys have worked on the metrics for the current processes which are incredibly helpful. And going forward for the programs, you propose to the extent that you have those. The evidence of of how it's worked elsewhere, of the the metrics, that the goals that you're hoping to track and and need to. And work on that with the budget department, the easier it'll be certainly for me to support. But I I can't pretend like this is going to be a year where we can provide a substantial increase. Because I just don't see it in the numbers, Sheriff. But we'll.
Yeah, and Judge, I can respect that. I've been on on that side of 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 governing before with the city of Houston. All I can do from this side is to. Kind of amplify the needs and some of the things that that we foresee. You know, we'd love to be, one of my goals is to become a more data-driven agency. Commissioner Garcia could tell you that historically the sheriff's office hasn't had that. We've we've made tremendous progress in four years. I think we submitted a total of almost two hundred different metrics. To your budget team even now, and that's not even tapping into the vast array of of data that's within our system in terms of the jail. Just the jail, we had sixty. In law enforcement side, we had over a hundred, medical had others. So that that takes a bandwidth to also be able to to measure that in terms of having the the. Analytics personnel and and things built into it to be able to deliver some of those numbers in real time and measure it and. Things like that. So a lot of it depends to be able to manage expectations, to be able to give you the deliverables that that you need with an agency, you know. This size and and so that requires personnel sometimes. And so I know it's a challenge on both sides, both what our needs are and where the county can and 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 needs to go financially. So I know it's a, it's a tough process, but you know, I mean, we're all in this together at the end of the day and we'll continue to serve the members of. Of the Harris County community as best we can.
Thank you, Sheriff. We've really just been through the wringer this year to all of us, but also you and I together. So I.
Yes.
I so appreciate your your and your team's work. Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you, Judge.
Sheriff, one more question. In terms of your classes, will you, would you be running those? Spaced out from each other or could you run? Two of your cadet classes and two of your lateral classes at the same time? How would, how would your scheduling for the classes occur in a year?
The the lateral classes, we could overlap pretty easily. So, you know, we'll be having some of that. We it it's it's more a common. Practice to do that. Due to the limited staffing on the training side. You know, we're doing a lot of new training and 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 things, so it's hard to put two classes simultaneously because. We're still fairly limited with our space out at our academy. We've outgrown that a long time ago. We're also doing a lot of other specialized training like de-escalation and other things. So we probably still have to, what I would envision is we could probably do, if we did three, which would be great, we could do one in the spring. Our next one's gonna start in March, for example. It lasts six months. We we typically do another one in the fall after that one's kind of, but we could maybe do one in the middle in between. But again, we would still need the staff to be able to teach those classes that are required by TECO. And so that's a little bit of the challenge.
Got you. If you could break down your cadet, your cadet and your lateral class schedule for the year. So I know what I I can try to work with the budget officer.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Judge.
Next is the county clerk.
I'm unmuting Tanisha Hadsburg. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. Can you all hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Great. Good afternoon and happy new, happy new year, members of Commissioner's Court. First, I'd like to commend the hard work of the two thousand and twenty court members and your leadership. During one of the most challenging years we've witnessed in Harris County and our nation. Also, I want to congratulate and welcome the newest member of court, Commissioner Ramsey. Also, I want to congratulate and welcome the newest member of court, Commissioner Ramsey. Welcome, sir. Thank you for the opportunity to submit a comprehensive budget request and a plan to best serve Harris County constituents this upcoming fiscal year. For many years, I've worked with Commissioners Court members and their staff in several different capacities. As a member of the leadership team of the Harris County Clerk's Office, serving four county clerks over the course of fifteen years, I have respectfully come before Commissioners Court to present, answer questions, and provide logistical services. Today, with great pleasure and excitement, I'm honored to come before you as the newly elected Harris County Clerk to convey that under my tenure, the County Clerk's Office will continue to provide this court with this court all the support it needs to ensure that every single document presented by Commissioner due these proceedings is accurately recorded and filed in accordance with all compliance standards. Today, alongside of me, I have County Clerk leadership to assist with inquiries regarding our budget proposal. Mr. Michael Winch, Deputy of Administration, Danny Summeraw, Administrator of Finance and Courts, and Hector De Leon, Senior Advisor to the Clerk for Governmental Affairs. Many changes have taken place in Harris County over the course of the last year. The most significant change for the County Clerk's Office is that the conduct talk conduct of elections is no longer under its under its purview. And the County Clerk is no longer the chief election official of Harris County. The operation of elections is near and dear to me and so many others of our great county. In 2020, Harris County set itself apart by providing an example of how elections should be conducted. As a member of the Harris County Election Commission, I look forward to serving on this body to ensure the county's elections under a new structure will continue to live up to the standard of success achieved during the conduct of the 2020 election regarding voter accessibility, accuracy, and security. I'm grateful to have been able to be at the forefront of elections, voter education, and community outreach for many years, but I embrace moving forward. The function of the County Clerk's Office is more than elections. The County Clerk's Office's steel has the role of recording all the major events of your life. While the written role of the County Clerk is to record and maintain records of Commissioners Court, probate courts, county civil courts at law, vital documents such as property records, marriage licenses, assumed name certificates, birth records, death records, and notice of government meetings, this office is so much more than just recorders. Every single Harris County resident will have come through our office for some type of service in their lifetime. So I'm ready to work with you to ensure that public, our constituents are provided the best service possible with the highest level of customer service and integrity. While working with my former colleague, Chris Hollins, he tasked me with leading, managing, and creating a plan based on the importance of administrative duties of the Clerk's Office. In an effort to improve upon the services we provide, the Harris County Clerk's Office created the CCO CARES Plan. Client-focused, accessible, responsive, efficient, and safe. Over the past couple of months, County Clerk employees from every department brainstormed, planned, and implemented administrative enhancements and improvements through this CARES initiative teams. These teams work diligently to help make the office operate more efficiently. The CARES Plan has helped to identify ways to better serve the legal and business business community and overall constituents of Harris County, including support services to County Clerk staff. Our office will make our website more intuitive, accessible, and easy to use, implement an e-commerce system that will allow for online purchases of certified records, simplify forms, and provide instruction sheets to promote filing accuracy, introduce client service training for CCO colleagues, continue to reopen Caroline and branch offices and expand in-person client service, create online contact directory and information page on our website, modernize our phone and operating system to accurately direct calls and address client needs, edit all of our form letters to be more relevant and helpful to our clients, upgrade technology to enhance the in-person virtual client experience, ensure consistent feedback, training, and opportunities for the mel- development for all of our colleagues, enhance case case management systems for courts, increase our paperless operations for efficiency and sustainability, put KPIs in place to measure our success and service delivery to our clients, enable working from home for as many CCO colleagues as possible due to COVID restrictions and concerns. Equip our offices with PPE to provide low contact interactions with our colleagues and our clients, closely evaluate and monitor in-person services as we continue to phase them in. The latest update of the plan to date, as part of the reopening phase and plan, the annexes have increased the amount of daily appointments in both the per personal records and real property departments are provided services by appointment. E-commerce system phase in was successful and is running smoothly. The CARES team is exploring other offerings that may be provided to customers beyond purchasing certified records. The CARES team has an increased focus on enhancing the customer service experience for all of our patrons and exploring adding a call center staff to highly cross-trained clerks that would be able to assist customers with multiple service needs. Minor upgrades have taken place with our case management system and will be integrating additional enhancement that will provide our service delivery to the justice and legal community. Our human resources department is working diligently on their CARES initiatives that will help to enhance customer service, promote employment development, and improve recruitment and retention efforts. The County Clerk's budget proposal and request is based upon the top priorities of the CCO CARES Plan. While we understand this budget cycle presents many challenges in terms of funding, important programs for all the needs of the county, we strategically identified our top priority needs for our office. We will certainly evaluate and look at utilizing any funds that could be considered rollover funds to be made available in that place. Those needs provided our budget request and proposal have been needs that existed prior to the pandemic and has made the existing staffing, programming, and service needs more evident. In the past, CCO budget request items were not approved or made a priority and oftentimes were pressed to the back burner due to priorities of elections requests while under the County Clerk umbrella. Those type priorities requests consist of enhancing the functionality and expand the use of of our Odyssey Court Management System and our website as it pertains to the civil, probate, and mental health courts, improve community awareness of the services provided by the County Clerk, provide the public with more efficient methods of filing documents and providing copies of public documents, attain adequate workspace for employees and customers, ensure staffing levels meet department needs to reduce customer wait times for in-person transactions, and expand online services. Reduce the wait time and improve the accuracy of information provided on customers who call our office. Recruit and retain talent, reduce and address recording discrepancies. As an office that serves all four million-plus constituents, our learning term plan will be to serve as many residents as safe and secure as possible on a daily basis. At this time, I will close my presentation and welcome any comments or inquiries based on the proposed budget. Thank you in advance for your consideration.
Thank you so much, Clerk Hudson. Let me, yes, go ahead, Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you. Uh thank you, Judge. Uh Corey Cuthbert, congratulations to you as well. Sheriff was giving uh congratulations to uh uh some of us here on court, but you deserve your own congratulations as well on your election and looking forward to to working with you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for what uh you have laid out and um um and you know, you're you're familiar with the operations there, so you're going to be able to um step in and uh just kind of not have a whole lot of training on the job, so to speak, uh to deal with. And and your request, um the that I you've got um twenty-two positions for voter registration outreach? Is that correct?
No, sir. It shouldn't be for voter registration outreach. That would that might be under the Elections Administrator. Um mine.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah, you're right. I was looking under the wall. Ah, here it is.
Yes, sir. You're right after.
You you got twenty-three uh positions that you're you're requesting, correct?
Yes, sir.
Got you. Okay. Alrighty. And um yeah, and a lot of yours is is similar to the sheriff's jail operation. You're some of this, you got to get done. Marriage licenses, um uh assumed name certificates. These are things that have to be processed. How how much of this do you think you'll be able to move online to automate? Have you given that uh some thought?
Yes, sir. Um actually, we have given that a lot of thought in evaluating, you know, what services can be done. I think a good majority of the work we do with the courts virtually, um we will be able to uh do more certified documents. So we do have a matrix of numbers that our team is really putting together and and putting in a concise manner. Uh depending on what we get approved for in the budget, we can look at um you know, some of the processes hopefully being moved completely to virtual. We're also looking at uh this legislative session to see what can support some of the services by law to be virtual. You know, one of my biggest um go-tos and something I would really like to see happen is that we're able to do marriage licenses virtual. Uh but the law doesn't provide that here, and as soon as uh March hit with the pandemic last year, that was one of the biggest concerns, you know, despite a global pandemic, people still wanted to get married. And we had to figure out, there was a huge pause in time of being able to issue those marriage license. So we started looking at other places like Oregon and other states that actually were able to do marriage license virtually. So I'm really going to be advocating, uh you know, if we get the documentation in by mail as we do for probate records and many other offices, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't be able to do that and just do a virtual marriage licenses as the judges do their proceedings virtual.
Good deal. Thank you, Ms. Hudson. Congratulations again.
Thank you. I look forward to working with you, Commissioner.
Judge.
Go ahead, Commissioner Ellis.
Yeah, uh Ms. Hudson, congratulations to you and hey, thank you for what you did. Uh although elections won't be in the office now, but your years of working uh on the elections was just so important and and thank you and for uh the orderly transition uh that you have helped them to work through in this process. Look, I want to commit to you. I want to work with you on uh whatever ideas you have in terms of best practices around the the state and make it easier to do more stuff online. Your office was kind enough when I called for a good friend who was getting married and and having trouble working it out uh at his age. And I think we learned a lot of stuff during this pandemic about what we can do virtually uh online because we suddenly had to do it out of out of necessity as opposed to the way we're doing it. So you know, they won't be in uh it'll be it'll be in and out real quick in Austin, and you know your way around as well, and folks know you. But I think you get a lot of bipartisan support. Uh you know, on that issue of marriage licenses, you know, I I helped that one person. You were kind enough. I called uh your right hand, and he worked it out real quick uh for this person. And then about ten other people called. So you gave us a direct line, but we do want to help more folks to 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 get married and hopefully stay married, of course, but clearly I don't have to go to a lot of hoops to get a marriage license. So thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. And my hope is in the month of February, we can really highlight how many people still got married during a global pandemic and the representation of those marriages and provide some statistical data. So I look forward to sharing that with this court and uh and and really doing a storyline around, you know, love still exists and it's in the air. So thank you for your comments and willingness to work uh with us as we figure out, you know, new ways and innovative ways to continue doing what we do, but doing it virtually and safely.
Thank you.
Do folks have any other comments for the clerk? Clerk, thank you so much for your work and congratulations again on your election and 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 just thank you for everything you're doing. As you know, you know, budget is tight. We're gonna focus on 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 trying to quell through this with Budget Management Department. Um and I I would mention the same note on, given that you have several requests to just continue working through Dave Barry to try and identify the metrics and 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 the evidence for the need so we can balance across all the different requests and the reality that we have much fewer funds this year to allocate.
Understood. Thank you so much, Judge. I look forward to uh just kind of lining that out and doing the best that we can. We are understanding of this situation.
Thank you, and and just congratulations and thank you for for how you're being proactive with everything. I can't thank you enough.
Thank you.
We'll hear from the Elections Administrator next.
I'm unmuting Espa Longoria. Go ahead, please.
Good afternoon, Listen. Do you have my presentation pulled up?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Uh good afternoon, Commissioners and Judge. Um thank you for uh just listening us out today. I know you have some tough decisions to make, but um you know, to start off, you know that uh here in elections, uh we created an entirely new department. Um and we really made historic uh national news uh with hosting in the November election with almost one point five, one point six five million voters. Uh and as we're moving forward in 2021 with this new office, we have an opportunity to encourage involvement and truly excitement in the democratic process again uh while making sure every eligible person who can vote is registered to vote. Um however, in order to continue to serve voters of this county, we need to make investments on our in our election infrastructure. These investments will be um pretty big uh and in the form of personnel, new technologies, and of course, new machines, among other things. And we'll also need to administer at least two elections this year that we know of and always anticipating special elections that pop up and expand expand our voter registration efforts. Um and I look forward to working with all of you to ensure that Harris County continues to be an example to the nation of what it looks like to execute successful and accessible elections. Um and I would say frankly, um in light of what happened yesterday and the violence in DC, um we are taking that to heart and that our democracy stands on the pillar of peaceful transitions of power which are directly correlated to how we host elections here locally. Um and I take that to heart um as our mission continues forward. Next slide. So again, as we transition uh those roles and responsibilities around elections uh and voter registration into one department, we have been working with the CCO and Tax Office and Budget Management to ensure that there's no gaps in services, particularly when it came to closing out the November elections, December elections, and registering voters and everything we need to do to close out the year. Um however, I um I just need to put it out there that uh through what we've been able to do in November, December, uh even working through those elections, we've uncovered uncovered some very serious issues and gaps in our department. Um just some top-line examples of uh anemic and under-resourced voter registration outreach programs that really depended more on volunteers than staff, uh a system of working around problems rather than solving them, um which led to out-of-date software, machines, and internal processes that do not reflect the caliber of dedication and services that I think you as Commissioners and a judge expect. Um and disparities in how employees were treated uh really based on punishment and favoritism instead of um merit, which have led to a very apparent racial disparity in paying other opportunities. Um what that leaves us is that uh we found those potholes, and we're very much in office under construction. Um we are working ahead now to the May elections uh while we try and and do that strategic planning. So right now, for example, my my staff is meeting to start that strategic planning, to work to those safe initiatives, which we'll be transferring uh to vote initiatives, which I'll be sharing here. Um but I just want to be very blunt. Um I know some, there's some heartburn as to the creation of this office. I know we're moving forward uh and you you appointed me not to tell you what all the problems are, but to fix them. And I'm here to be a reformer when it comes to voter registration and election processes. Um and quite frankly, we're going to have to spend money to make up for the poor decisions of the past. Uh I don't say that lightly. I say that to say that if we don't speak these problems to existence, then we won't be able to fix them. So uh we'll be moving with that in mind, right? Um this is a time for change, historic change, to keep the momentum we saw in the last six months and to keep pushing forward. Um next slide. So with that, I want to present to you vote. Um I know under uh interim clerk cons, you saw the safe initiatives, and this will be uh transitioning to vote, same concepts, but expanding now that we've got the voter registration functions. And and really, top of the line, the next couple of slides will be outlining our really the where we tend to go with this. Um the budget documents we submitted were were, you know, one week after I got sworn in, and this office was created, really. So uh those were placeholders, and what you're going to see in this presentation is uh more fleshed out on the skeleton of what we're. is more fleshed out on the skeleton of what we're working with. And like I said, my staff is in those meetings as we speak on putting line items and metrics to those budgets. So next slide, please. We'll go right into it with the V, which is voting and registration. You see here, again, this is not an exhaustive list, but the goal is to continue the Harris County Safe Initiatives to secure accessible, fair and efficient elections. And then the Office of Elections Administration will expand that framework to include voter registration with a focus on increasing access to registration. Throughout the year, we will identify process improvements and performance measures for all aspects of voter registration and voting. You can see again, this list is not exhaustive. We'll be reaching out to you as Commissioners to make sure that what we're doing is exactly what you think we should be doing. And per Commissioner Ellis, I believe your motion earlier on in the year, making sure we're having public meetings as well, right? This is not just us sitting in an office coming up with great ideas. We've got to make sure this is what voters want and expect of elections and registration. Next. A key part of that is outreach and education. With new machines coming on, new software, new office, new way of doing things, we want to make sure that we continue the education and outreach so that people feel prepared for the upcoming elections, but also feel prepared with all of the new technology and initiatives we're bringing on. And we're also expanding, right? You know, before where it was very much the minimum requirements of how can we reach out to folks who, you know, speak perhaps different languages or vote in those languages, it's asking ourselves about faith communities, military outreach, ADA improvements. And how do we do that, quite frankly, proactively instead of reactively? How are we helping voters know there's an election and they're hearing it from us first, not after eight campaign mailers have already dropped? And so I'm pretty excited about this initiative and I think this really gets at the heart of what you all have expected from an elections, elections office and what we can offer. Next. Technology, you can call it technology and modernization. This is about, like we said, you already know, we've gotten new machines coming and you should be seeing more about that in the coming weeks. Can't talk about that too much publicly because of the purchasing aspects and contract negotiations. A big one that I want to flag is that with those new machines, we need new software. This is an emergency item. The last time we updated the software we use for voter rolls and voter registration was in the early 2000s. So we're, we're about 20 years behind in the rest of the country and most of the rest of the state in what we're doing and how we're tracking that information. So this has to happen in tandem with new machines for us to just really have an election system that works. And on top of that, technology modernization really means data too. You shouldn't have to keep putting in requests with special magic words to get what you need from our office. We want to put maps, we want to put data, we want to put it all online so that the public and you all can hold us accountable and what we're doing when it comes to elections and voting. Next. And the big E, equity. It's easy both to put this out and separate it, but this is a theme that runs throughout everything we will be doing with these vote initiatives and as we reform these processes in the future. Like I said earlier, we can't fix what we are too scared or embarrassed to talk about. And so what I want to do is speak those things into existence right now. We know externally voter registration lags in communities that are not the dominant population. Voting, right, locations lag when we don't have historic infrastructure development, right, in those areas. Even how we select election workers, you know, I was proud in the last six months that we led efforts to have mosques for the first time as voting areas, right? A gay bar for the first time as an area that people felt safe and feel they were represented in how we selected that. But that does not excuse us either from internally. We did a very, and I mean, a very rough assessment. And internally, white women are the highest paid employees here in our office, two times more than black women who tend to be temporary employees. That's not acceptable for my standard of equity, nor is it, I think, where the office wants to go. Sorry, where the county wants to go. So we are asking for a study to help us get deeper on that, to help us ask the things that we can do structurally to make sure that Harris County is on the forefront, not of technology and voting and all those fun things, but on equity as well and how we conduct ourselves. Next slide. So these are the things you saw in the budget documents. This is kind of off the cuff when we were preparing, preparing those first things as we were running the December election. Part of that is the disparity study. You know, it's, it's on there's 100K, it's probably between 50 and 100K from what we hear about purchasing, right? You've already cleared us to have a vendor who can help with transition and assessment, which is great once we can get that ball rolling. But like I said, my team has to plan now. We can't wait for other folks to come in and help us. And then expanding that voter registration access right now with outreach and education as we have a new year, right, of people applying for mail ballots and getting registered to vote. Next. And I think this is really getting at more of the crux of what I want to turn into y'all and what I think you expect is the goals, not only of the cost of a May and November election. So this is based on, you know, kind of historically and without the innovations we've done largely in the past, to things like that election database management, that software that is an emergency item that we'll be asking for. Additional permanent staff. We didn't get staff like a finance or budget manager, which we're piecing together now, right, to put that together for you. We got, we got what we got, we're making it work, but it's, it's a skeleton crew right now. Vote by mail and voter registration, right? That piece is of being more proactive in how we're sharing with folks, how to apply annually to vote by mail, how to get registered to vote. Or if they're in danger of getting kicked off the voter registration rolls, how can we catch them before they fall through the cracks if we know who those people are? And future space needs is also an emergency item. I know FPM is working with us, but we've got the May elections coming up that we cannot host in the Preston and ETC offices. We've lost annex spaces, which I understand, but we've got to make up for that space for the May elections and then account for all of the new machines and equipment we have, especially in a pandemic. So I will leave it off there. I'm sure you have many questions and I am ready to answer them.
Ms. Ellis, go ahead.
Judge, thank you. And Administrator Longoria, is that how we say it?
Yes. That sounds good.
EA Longoria, Elections Administrator. Look, congratulations to you and a judge, you and the board that you chaired on the selection that you made. You made reference to what's going on in our nation's capital. And, you know, when I had this black screen, it was up a few times. It's cause I finally went to bed at 3:00 AM talking to a lot of our congressional delegation, even a couple of my, my friends from other states on the other side of the aisle. And then every time I'd wake up, I'd check the paper to see what was happening. Washington Post, give it to you real quick. But I was real impressed watching those speeches and in particular by Senator Romney and also the speech that was given by Dick Durbin. And I thought of Texas when he made reference to Senator Cruz wanting a commission. And he made reference to that little commission that led to the Tilden Hayes compromise. And he ended it by making a point that that not only ended reconstruction, re-enslaved African Americans again, but led directly to many of the voter suppression issues that still exist today. And that's one reason why I was willing to take the heat and I appreciate the Commissioners Court agreeing to combine these two functions, elections and registration. Because they were divided as part of that effort, which started with ending reconstruction. And Ms. Longoria, whether they are Rs or Ds or independents or if they wear MAGA hats or no hats, I want everybody to be able to participate in this democracy. And, you know, I don't want to speechify on it now, but I know all of us, regardless of what your philosophical leanings are, had to be disgusted by what happened. And I flipped over and I saw where we may go through a 24th, 25th amendment issue or another impeachment proceeding, probably for good cause, in my opinion. But look, I'm going to be committed, I want the Budget Office to know it, to invest in registering people aggressively. The laws in Texas are at least as restrictive as the ones in a number of other southern states. I know that because I sat in the legislature and had to fight on the losing side on many of those laws and then even went to federal court a couple of times, testifying against the state of Texas on it. But we got to get beyond that. We got to invest in it. And I hope we'll also look at using other resources. If that stuff that we send out makes sure it's legal under state laws that exist. You know, we ought to ask the utility companies or when we sent out a bill for taxes or fines, we ought to, it doesn't cost that much more to put a voter registration announcement in there as long as it's legal. So I want to challenge it. I want to ask along the way, be prudent with what we do. You know, we did spend a lot of money by making it easy for people to vote at every location. You know, I was reluctant to move as fast as we did, but, you know, it worked out. Had some glitches to first go around, but it, it worked out. And I want to assure you that I'm going to push for that and make sure the metrics are there based on outcomes. So if we spend money to register more people to vote, somehow you're going to come back and quantify that more people got registered. So I don't want to just spend the money. And I would encourage you to use trusted messages out of my budget that I have influence over to the extent it's legal. I'm going to put stuff out and hope the folks trust me. But I hope you use the judge in particular because one big area where they're not registered would be with people in your age group, Ms. Longoria, and your age group. The ones in my age group, you know, kind of one foot out of here. You know, our numbers are pretty good. You got me? We want to make it easier, I make it easier to get people back on the rolls if they haven't paid some fee or fine, but everything Travis County does and more. So I think I said when I was asking for support to create the office, I wanted us to mimic everything they do in Travis County. Well, I don't want us to mimic it. I want us to, it's a more challenging demographic. You have such an educated community in Austin, but hey, I know from where I started, you know, my daddy with that sixth grade education always voted. And in every race, even when I would discourage him because he didn't know who he was voting for. I'll tell you another day that story, but look, I'm there, I'm committed to it. I know it's a challenge figuring out what the baseline is that you have to get under state law because we, not blaming it on the departments that had it before, we just didn't keep the metrics. You know, we just didn't keep numbers in Harris County. But I want you to do it, do a good job and I for one will be saying we ought to hold you accountable. So make us, make me proud for the heat I took to create this office.
I understand. No, and I'm proud to have been tasked with this mission. And like I said, you know, no, this May election is not going to be a November presidential in a pandemic, right? Where we're pushing through and trying to do innovative things to keep people safe. I'm very clear on that, right? Not every election is going to be just, you know, blank check and go at it. You know, one of the examples I want to point to is that even in July, I redesigned the vote by mail letters and envelopes at a cost of zero extra cost, right, per envelope to give them green and purple and blue bars to even help people in how they fill it out and which one they fill it out and figure out the instructions. So you're right, you know, not any, every innovation costs money. It's about thinking creatively and that's what I'm tasking my staff to do. And like you said, using those outside resources as well.
And I want to stress that, as you know, I mean, you totally out of partisan politics now. It is bipartisan. And look, you know, I, I, at the time that when I put that motor voter amendment in the law, Jean Green had a bill. He, he got the bill, couldn't get out of committee, couldn't get it on the Senate floor. I added it to a sunset bill for the Highway Commission. And I thought at the time it would help my side more. Be honest with you, I think I can claim credit now for having registered more Republicans than anybody in the history of Texas with that motor voter law. Although people fought it thinking it was going to help my side. That's how most people, I think, you know, that's how most people get registered. And then with all these fines and fees, of course, my, my crowd gets knocked off. But you know what? I'm proud to have registered those folks. And, and I'm, you just get it done because I'll be watching.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Garcia.
Thank you, Judge. Administrator Longoria, I think Commissioner Ellis said it well. And I will just tell you that, you know, part of my focus, and he touched on it as well, was that the voter registration and in particularly in the communities like the Latino community where English may not be the first language will be, you know, very, very critical. We've got a lot of, it's always, it's always heartwarming to go, for example, to the M.O. Campbell Center where there was a swearing in of new Americans. And, and those Americans remind me of my parents when they participated in their naturalization process. And the League of Women Voters is usually at these locations. And, but it would be, you know, good to make sure that there is a very strategic approach to participate in every one of those naturalization ceremonies. And because those folks, they want to support our democracy. They have seen something else that as Commissioner Ellis alluded to, looks more like yesterday than it does in times before. So there's a lot of opportunity, but obviously I'm tired of the Latino community being referred to as a sleeping giant. We're not sleeping. We just, you know, we work hard, we take care of our family and we just don't participate because maybe the welcoming mat isn't rolled out effectively to our community to participate in the political process. But I'm hopeful and focused on your office being successful in that regard. And, but obviously, we're not going to leave anybody else off. It's democracy, no matter who it is, it's democracy. And so I want to make sure we protect it. I want to make sure that we, that we encourage it. I want to make sure that we promote it. And I want to make sure that 18-year-olds, 17 and 10 months know that it's their democracy as well. And, and then I look forward to figuring out how we do the online voter registration moving forward. So congratulations. And, and I guess one thing for us to keep in mind that your brand-new operation, we committed to the ideal of the Election Administrator Office. So this is not you asking for, you know, being a bureaucrat and asking for to fill vacancies. You are an ideal that we need to further give life to. So I'm, I am supportive of the request that you've made and looking forward to working with you. Thank you.
Administrator, thank you and your team for your work. I would just ask, something I really appreciated when, when you and Clerk Collins were working together, then Clerk Collins were working together was when he was presenting, you know, never-before-done is, is a number of locations and 24-hour voting. And we wanted to make sure there was going to be enough mail ballots and enough in-person support to where there would be no lines, et cetera. And you guys presented very thorough projections and those projections justified the request. And for that reason, I felt comfortable in supporting the, and felt comfortable that that was going to meet the need. So for my part, I would like to see more of that in your request. You know, when you say registering more people, why, what are you basing your assumptions on to decide that this is what's going to help you register more people? How many more people? And just so that I know we're doing everything we can. And, and same with, with your other activities. So the budget is tight. I echo Commissioner Garcia's and Commissioner Ellis's words of support. But I certainly just want to make sure that, that we're investing an adequate amount and that what, that the investment is going to pay dividends. I always refer back to the, the focus that always was on, on just training voter registrars, but not tracking whether the voter registrars are actually registering people. So I just want to make sure that you've got projections and goals and a link between the requests you're proposing and how those, how specifically you expect those goals to be achieved.
Absolutely. I couldn't agree more. This is severely lacking in those metrics and in that data. And I think as Commissioner Ellis alluded to, I, I thought more metrics were being tracked. And so part of December was closing out those elections, figuring out how we're doing that and having my staff meet right now to say, okay, how are we going to measure that data? How are we looking at other cities, right, and other states and how they do it? Because you're exactly right, you know, money doesn't mean anything if we don't know what it's going to, how we're going to use it, because you have to judge. Because you have to justify that and I understand it. Um, so yes, absolutely. Setting those goals towards voter registration and those outcomes instead of just ideals.
And tying them to the request and and I asked Dave Barry to also to just please lean on hi- his team on as we. The the he comes back uh with the final budget proposal and works through our offices. Um, that's something just given how tight things are as well. And and the number of requests that we have, the to the extent that you're able to do that, it would certainly help me. Um, but I I commend your your um, your proactive posture. And I'm I'm so excited to to see. Ever the team moving forward and and building on the work that has been done. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Let's hear now from the district clerk. You're unmuted, Ms. Purchase.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Judge Chidago and county commissioners. I thank you for the opportunity to discuss my department's operations and budget needs for the new fiscal year as well as our accomplishments and goals. First of all, I'd like to give you a short introduction to the work of the district clerk's office. While most people know us as the county agency that sends out jury summons and coordinates the jury selection process. The scope of our work is much wider. The district clerk's office performs the duties assigned by the Texas Constitution as registrar, recorder, and custodian. Of all court documents that are a part of any legal cause of action in the Harris County District Courts and in the county criminal courts at law. This means my office accepts all new and subsequent filings for the courts. Additionally, we provide authorities with court orders to execute. We are tasked with collecting court costs, fines, and fees as outlined in the statutes. And we secure all trial evidence. We preserve and maintain historical documents and records, and we even process passport applications. Our information technology department is central to the development, implementation, and maintenance of different systems and programs that support the Harris County judicial system. As you can see, the responsibilities of my office are multiple and varied. We've accomplished a lot in the first two years of my administration, and I would like to tell you about some of the accomplishments from two thousand and twenty. The first one I want to highlight is that we successfully moved jury operations to the N R G complex to implement Harris County Health and C D C guidelines about COVID nineteen. This was a big undertaking that involved multiple sections from the district clerk's office, the judges, and other county agencies that assisted us in the process. After Tuesday's approval by this court to renew the agreement with N R G through October of this year. I am confident we will be able to continue managing jury operations at that venue in a successful and safe manner. Due to the pandemic, we expected even lower than normal jury appearance rates. This made the implementation of the first phase of our e-juror system essential to the success of getting the jurors we needed to appear. While this partial implementation was approved only for the duration of the pandemic for emergency operations. It was implemented seamlessly and well received by the public. By pre-registering summoned jurors, we can more accurately predict how many will show up. We can email reminders of service the we- the week prior to appearance. And the day before, we both email and text a reminder. This has increased appearance rates from the twenty two percent summoned pre-pandemic. To nearly ninety percent of those that are pre-registered and are assigned. We can also cancel their summons as late as the night prior if their case uh settles. Another accomplishment has been our role in the implementation of the O'Donnell Consent Decree. The process involves significant manpower hours. And the realignment of priorities to provide data on personal bonds, probable cause forms, and other case document information. Our criminal court clerks modified procedures to enter newly required data elements and also documented new processes required. We also incorporated additional data elements on our public website. And we met regularly with the Justice Administration Department staff and other stakeholders throughout all of the last year to make certain all the deadlines were met. This co- collaboration will continue in two thousand and twenty one. In regards to the implementation of Governor Abbott's executive order on the reporting of convictions to the Texas Criminal Justice Information System, or C J S. My department is going to extra mile by reporting conviction twenty five days earlier than required. Providing the information to law enforcement more timely helps improve public safety. By preventing convicted offenders from acquiring a weapon, among other safeguards. Several of our accomplishments also have to do with new electronic debt programs developed by our I T department. In cooperation with the district attorney, we rolled out an innovative solution for the electronic filing and processing of charging documents and pleads. We launched a new system that makes document sharing with the sheriff's office faster and more efficient. This initiative called e-delivery means that our clerks no longer have to spend a significant part of their shift. Transporting printed bond documents within the downtown courthouse complex. There's still more documents to convert, and we hope to have that completed this year. We also developed an online tool that allows attorneys to schedule their own hearings twenty four seven in select pilot courts. And we'll extend that to more courts in two thousand and twenty one. Previously, hearings could only be scheduled by calling and speaking to our clerk of the court. We debuted an online option for the payment of criminal fines and court costs. The system is available to all customers with active payment plans and allows for payments twenty four seven using a credit card. The ability to make these ordered payments timely and by using a credit card has been very well received and widely used. In November of two thousand and twenty, we surpassed four million dollars in the collection of backlog and current civil court fines and fees. Previously, these fees were being assessed and recorded, but the parties responsible for making payments were not being notified. To remedy this, in January two thousand and nineteen, we tasked our accounting section to begin billing these fines and fees on a monthly basis and collecting them. I'm very proud of the work they have done. We do have a few requests for our new budget. Our number one ask is to get our salaries to a level that is competitive with other county agencies. When I took office in two thousand and nineteen, we had many staff making less than the new county rate of fifteen per hour. A particular concern is our clerks of the courts who are frequently recruited away by other agencies. Due to their extensive training and knowledge. After getting everyone up to fifteen per hour, I approved additional raises for these positions to the extent possible within our budget constraints. We now have our assistant court clerks at a minimum of eighteen per hour. Lead clerks of the court at a minimum of twenty an hour and master lead clerks at twenty five. However, we're still losing seasoned clerks that we have trained and professionally nurtured because they get job offers with higher starting salaries from other agencies. The most recent example is an excellent master lead clerk with sixteen years of experience in our office. Who was making twenty five an hour and was offered a position as a court coordinator at twenty nine per hour. Additionally, other agencies also recruit our court clerks away at entry level salaries ranging from twenty to twenty five an hour. These positions generally come with no expectation of overtime, unlike what our criminal court clerks experience on a regular basis. And also with no personal liability and resulting in much less stress. When we raise the pay rates of the court clerks, the salaries of their supervisors and managers must also be adjusted accordingly. Just to get our clerks to the levels we have required the use of a small part of our rollover funds. With this court's approval, we would like to utilize more of these funds to make our pay rates competitive and to allocate more of the new budget to salaries. Our second request has to do with the funding of the probable cause court's twenty four hour operations. At last year's budget hearing, I asked for and received a hundred thousand per year in funding to establish the model program in that court. Today, I ask this amount be increased to two hundred and fifty thousand. As dockets have increased and one docket continues while the second begins. We've had to incorporate additional clerks to each of the three shifts to cover the overlap of the dockets. If a second P C court is established, as is currently being discussed, we will need additional staff to cover that as well. Our third request is for multiple renovation projects in the Criminal Justice Center and the Civil Courthouse. We request an allocation of two hundred thousand for office renovation projects. But at this time, we're not certain qualify as part of the capital improvement program. Specifically, in the criminal criminal justice center, we need to renovate and furnish a section on the third floor to accommodate members of our criminal court's management train team and training staff. In the civil courthouse, we would use the funding to renovate the customer service counter of the accounting section and to renovate their break room. And install a drop box for depositing payments. In the civil intake section, we need to modify space to you be utilized as a training area. In closing, I would like to tell you about the goals the district clerk's office has set for two thousand and twenty one. The first one is increasing jury participation in Harris County. As you are aware, our jury participation rate has been historically low with percentages hovering in the low twenties for the past six years. Additionally, our juries do not nearly reflect the diversity of our population. In late two thousand and twenty, my office commissioned a professional pollster to conduct a countywide survey about jury service attitudes. And to learn what ma- motivates Harris County residents to serve as jurors and what barriers prevent them from showing up. The survey was conducted by phone and online and gathered close to two thousand responses. Additionally, two focus groups were conducted to dive a little deeper in the responses received. We've just received the final report on the survey this week. As we review the pollsters findings. And cost out each proposed measure, we will determine what changes will give us the greatest return for the dollar spent. Once determined, I'll come back to you with those that will have the greatest impact on increasing both general participation. And particularly increasing diversity, and I will ask for funding to implement those measures. The two measures that stand out are increased juror pay for day one and paid parking for jurors. As it is, an hourly paid worker cannot afford to answer their summons as they will lose a day's wages. If we want them to appear, we have to compensate them. I strongly believe e-juror is a critical component in this goal. With e-juror, we only summon for the scheduled trials and can cancel as late as the night prior if a case settles. Before the pandemic, we called a standard number of jurors for each day of the week without knowing if a trial was scheduled for that day. In two thousand and nineteen, which is the last year for normal jury service data that we have. A total of five hundred and fifty eight thousand, one hundred and eighty summons were mailed out. A hundred and twenty four thousand, one hundred and ten are twenty two point two percent of those summons appeared for service. Of those, forty five thousand, seven hundred and ninety nine are thirty seven percent. Appeared and were not needed and were dismissed directly from the jury assembly without ever being sent to a courtroom. They still have to be paid six dollars for showing up. That was a cost to the county of two hundred and seventy four thousand, seven hundred and ninety four dollars. Even with e-juror, we will not be able to eliminate this entirely, but we can greatly reduce it. And that is why implementation of e-juror is so important if we are to increase the jury pay for day one. The system would be implemented in three phases, and our goal is to increase the jury response rate to fifty percent. And to decrease the jury dismissal rate to twenty five percent within the first year of full implementation. With time and outreach, we feel we can further improve those rates. Since the beginning of the pandemic, my department has implemented phase one of e-juror after receiving approval of the district judges for only the duration of the pandemic. Phase one requires those summoned to pre-register on our website or by calling our jury staff. So far, e-juror is proving effective, given that from July sixth, when jury calls resumed until December first. Roughly only ten percent of the assigned pre-registered jurors fail to appear. In phase two, panels would have to be ordered by four P M. The day prior to trial instead of eight A M. The day of. This will allow us to cancel jurors who have registered online if it appears we will have more jurors than needed. Phase three will complete implementation of the program when panels would need to be requested four to six weeks in advance, and it would allow us. Uh, to summon and it would allow those summoned to eliminate up to five days out of thirty that they are unavailable to serve. This was another finding in our survey, giving some control over the date they serve would greatly increase participation. They still cannot pick their day, but they would be allowed to indicate what days would not work for them. We in the district clerk's office are ready to go to fully implement e-juror. And we are working with the district judges to obtain the final approval to proceed. This year, my department will also launch an outreach campaign to promote jury service. It will include billboards, public service announcements, and social media. The campaign will also focus on making the public aware of any newly adopted measures such as a pay increase or paid parking. These changes will only produce the desired outcomes if the general public is aware of them. Two thousand and twenty one will be the year to revamp the district clerk's website. Our goal is to make the website easier to navigate and also of great importance, better suited for mobile devices. Since many utilizing our website do so on cell phones and tablets. We will also be developing a felony dashboard and enhancing our document management system to aid judges and court staff with docket management. And implementing a portal for court reporters to submit paper exhibits electronically. Another important goal for this year is moving our criminal court sections back to the Criminal Justice Center. Once the post Harvey reconstruction process is finalized for our area. This includes our criminal court's management team, criminal customer service, criminal post trial. As well as compliance personnel who work in data control, the call center staff, criminal court trainers, and criminal imaging specialists. All these sections have been displaced since Hurricane Harvey, and we hope to have them back in their permanent locations by mid two thousand and twenty one. And even though jury operations will still be held at Energy Complex through the duration of the pandemic. We anticipate the jury assembly plaza to be ready for reoccupation by the end of March. We will work diligently to ensure the return of jury operations to that facility as soon as it's deemed safe by this court. We will strive to make that process as smooth and efficient as possible for the jurors, the legal community, and all the stakeholders involved in the jury process. Lastly, I would like to express my support for the establishment of additional criminal district courts. This is greatly needed to help alleviate the ever growing backlog in our courts. The district clerk's office will resp- will support all efforts to establish new courts. Of course, as new courts are created, they will require additional funding for personnel and equipment. I thank you very much for your time today, and I am ready to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much, District Clerk.
Judge.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner. Commissioner King.
Um. Ms. Ben, I want to thank you for that work that you've been doing with regard to the jury summons process. Uh, you and I both were working that system when it was uh truly. Difficult for our jurors to come in and the ratios are there. And I know that over time, there's been minor. Uh, tweaks and and things. And I think that this new system may be that thing that's over the top. And so I wanted to express my appreciation to you for those extra efforts. It is uh a juror is a horrible thing to waste. And it was a terrible thing for your judges to try to have a trial and not to be able to have one when they actually had more jurors show up than what we're. That we're being turned away. And so I think that that's a great innovation uh and approach that you're doing. Thank you for that work.
Thank you, and we're very excited about the prospects of what the program could bring to it.
My colleagues have other questions?
Thank you for the presentation.
Ms. Burgess, thank you for the work you and your team are doing and and especially on the jury side. Uh, I know it's it's a lot, so.
Thank you for your support.
Yeah, I think it's it's so important and and working on that has has incredible impacts all throughout the system. So. You you have my support on the on these issues around jurors, around modernizing the system. And uh, I I also encourage you to to work with the budget office to the extent that they can be helpful. On on identifying the uh the metrics. So we can keep track of what I hope will be success. Um, so I I I'm sure it it will be. So it it would just be so valuable. To be able to to measure those outcomes and not just um the numbers of people we touch, but. To what extent, you know, percentage folks reached out to actually show up or uh uh exit surveys or whatever it is that can be done. So. Um, but anyway, thank you and your team for your work and thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
Folks, so it's it's two oh seven. Let's take uh thirty minutes for. Something of a lunch uh until two forty and then we'll continue with the county auditor. Great. So it's two forty four and the budget hearings are back in session. We're hearing now from the county auditor.
I'm unmuting Mike Post. Go ahead, sir.
Hello, this is Mike Post. I'm the county auditor, and my budget is unique. The county auditor's budget process is defined in the statutes. And just to give a little history, the county auditor's office was created in Texas by the legislature back in 1905. And I've read what I could to try to understand what their motivation was. It seems to me like basically they wanted an independent office that could conduct audits. And they wanted an independent office that would keep the books, and they wanted an independent office that would approve dispersments. And we've got other duties that the statutes have given us over the years, but I think those were like the top three things they had on their minds. Of course, the approving dispersments is a joint responsibility with Commissioners Court. So that's why on the agenda, every court, you'll see an agenda item where the county auditor is saying, here are the claims or the bills that the county auditor has reviewed and believes should be paid. Now we ask Commissioners Court to also approve that list. And then the Treasurer's Office actually is charged with dispersing the money. Just a little aside there in case that wasn't clear to everybody. Now, in order to give the county auditor's office that independence, the statute provided that the county auditor would be appointed by the district judges. So the county auditor is appointed to two-year terms by the district judges. And my term, my current term ended December 31st, but they have appointed me for an additional two years, which starts this month. The budget for the county auditor, also by statute, is approved, it's set by the district judges, which makes me different than any other department, I think, in the county. Now, Lucinda, if you can go to the next slide. So this is a flow chart kind of showing the process on how county auditors' budgets are approved. I put together my budget proposal, and I always contact the county budget officer. I always contacted Bill Jackson and now Dave Barry. Even though my budget is set independent of Commissioners Court, I like to be in the ballpark with the rest of the county. I have gone to seminars where I have heard other county auditors say how, you know, angry other departments in those counties got at the county auditor's office because, you know, the county auditors gave all their people a 4% increase, but, you know, the budget officer and the commissioners only gave the other employees in the county a 2%. And I always felt like we're part of the county and we're part of the team, and I don't want to be, you know, terribly different than what is going into effect for the other parts of the county. So, but I get my presentation together and I present it to the district judges. Now, we do that in December. So I made my presentation on December 9th to the district judges. And, you know, and they asked me questions and did the whole thing that they're supposed to do because they approved my budget. Now, the statutes also say that the county auditor's budget must be must be put out for a public hearing, and the district judges conduct the hearing. And so, as happens by statute every year. So the hearing on my budget, the public hearing, is scheduled for January 12th, which is next Tuesday. After the public hearing on my budget, then the district judges, they can make any final adjustments to my budget, then they'll vote on my budget. And that's really sort of the end of the process. And I will take the budget that they approve and give that to Mr. Barry to incorporate into the general fund budget, because I am part of the general fund. Statutes also say that if the county auditor has a budget approved by the district judges and that's more than 5%, then Commissioners Court need to approve the amount over 5%. Now, I've never submitted a budget over 5%, but my predecessor did one year, and it was a 7% increase. And so in that particular year, if the commissioners had chosen, they could have cut the budget back to something less than 7%, but they couldn't cut it below 5%. And so that's all, you know, per the statute. So, Lucinda, let's go to the next slide, and I'll just give you a high-level overview of what I submitted to the district judges. If you read that top paragraph, I mean, you can see that the budget I'm asking for is $25,832,959. And if you read further, you will see that that's 2.2% bigger than the budget that was approved for me in this fiscal year. And the way I can kind of break that down in my head, that 2.2% is that a 1.2% cost of living, a 0.5% increase to cover the additional health insurance premiums, and a half a percent increase to add one more position to my internal audit team. We are getting so many requests, and we love to help. I mean, over the last year, I think the county commissioners have asked us to do nine separate engagements, and we've spent well over the equivalent of a full-time person doing that. That has eaten into my ability to do some of the other audits that I had planned to do. And quite a number of the audits, by the way that I do, I have to do by statute. Statutes actually list quite a number of audits that I have to do annually. And then I do other audits really sort of based on the risks that the county faces. So then in that yellow chart, you can see, you know, the increase, and it's mostly salaries because I don't have much non-salary in the auditor's office. And then at the bottom of this page, it's just something I like to kind of track. It's a chart that shows what percentage of the total general fund budget is the auditor's budget. And you can see that back in, looks like, 2014, we were 1.17% of the general fund budget. But we're down last year to 0.77, we're less than a percent, which just tells me that the auditor's office, our budget seems to go up every year, but we're going up at a lesser rate than the rest of the general fund. The next page has a graph across the top that shows the number of positions in our budget for the auditor's office. Lucinda, if you could go one more page, I'm sorry. Across the top of that page, you will see that in this year's budget, I had 211 positions. And in the budget that hopefully will get approved next Tuesday, I've got 212. That's that one additional internal audit position. Also on that page, I just put in some demographic information. I think the auditor's office has a lot of diversity. I think that makes us a very strong department. I think that, you know, we've just got a great mix of people here, and I wanted to show those demographic numbers. And then, Lucinda, we'll go one more page, and that's an organizational chart. And one way I think of the county auditor position in the county is it's a combination of being the controller and being the internal auditor. Now, that strange combination you wouldn't find in the corporate world. I once was the internal audit director for a public utility company, and there was no way that, you know, I was going to be the controller. They were just so independent of each other. But that's how the legislature put it together. So my department really is comprised of two very distinct groups. On the left is my accounting. That's the responsibilities in the accounting side, and that's headed up by Leslie Wilkes Garcia, who is my first assistant. So if I'm not available, she actually is the one in charge. She's the number two person in the auditor's office. And if you look at the boxes, you can kind of see, what does the auditor do? Well, accounts payable. I mean, that's a big area. I've got 43 positions there to pay all the bills here in Harris County, and we get like 1,300 bills in every day. So there's a lot of work there. I have the grants and accounts receivable, and we do the financial reporting for almost every grant in any department in the county. So we're the ones that are sending the financial reports into the granting agencies. We're asking and tracking the reimbursements. Financial accounting, the next box, this is the group that keeps the books. This is the group that prepares the CAFR. Now, Deloitte, our external auditor, will come in every year, and they will audit the CAFR that has been prepared by the county auditor's office, and they'll render an opinion on that. Then we go back up to the upper top, the payroll. We do the payroll for the entire county. We're talking over 18,000 employees every two weeks. Then there's revenue accounting and financial controls. One of the things this department does is, by statute, we set the amount of available resources, which is the amount that the county commissioners and the budget office have as a basis for how much budget can be allocated in total. And this is something that we do hand in hand with Dave Barry, the tax office, because a lot of our revenue is comprised of ad valorem taxes. So even though we've been given that statutory responsibility to set those numbers at the high level, we don't allocate general fund budget between departments, but to set the total general fund budget that's been given to the county auditor's office, we do that in conjunction and closely with these other departments. So we work to try to get a consensus number there. Also, the financial controls part of that department, they do vendor verification. We almost lost $880,000 a number of years ago through a fraud, and I created a vendor verification group, and we verify that vendors are legitimate. We verify if somebody says I changed my bank account, that we independently verify and make sure that nobody's going to be tricking us out of money. That's five people, and that's all they do to try to protect the county. And bank reconciliations is also done in this area. Systems and procedures, this group writes procedures, accounting procedures. And, you know, the statutes say that the county auditor can set the accounting procedures for the county. So we've got procedures like if you're out in a JP's office about how you have to receive your cash and account for your cash, all these procedures we maintain in the auditor's office. And then the final box down there, the ERP support with PeopleSoft, which is a little different than IFAS, there's much more that's been pushed out to the departments versus how it was more centralized in universal services in IFAS. So I have a team of eight people, and some of these are very qualified people that can help me write reports, develop queries, help departments, not only our department, but departments having an issue with, say, how their vendors are being set up. This department will help them. So I do that PeopleSoft ERP support group, which is fairly new. Then if you go over the right-hand side, you've got the internal audit division. And we do, as I said earlier, a lot of statutory audits. We do risk-based audits. One part of this group is the internal audit department at Harris Health. That is under the county auditor. And so we have dedicated people out there at Harris Health. We interact with their board. We do the audits out there. And Harris Health will reimburse me for that part of my expenditures that relate to that. Now, that is the presentation that I have, but I won't answer any questions.
Thank you so much for your presentation and you and your team for your work. Do commissioners have questions? Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Post. We appreciate your work, and you're walking us through all of this, even though it's the district judges who really oversee the budget. So it's kind of you and me. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
We'll hear from the. Oh, go ahead, Commissioner Kegel.
I just want to thank Mr. Post for his servant's attitude whenever we have a question and we ask, I'm supposed to do it. He just don't.
Commissioner Kegel, your signal is not cooperating.
I can do it, and he gets that information.
Commissioner, I think you were saying something about serving.
Yes.
Right, Judge. A change.
Okay, great. We'll wait on that then, and if not, I'm happy to.
Okay, thank you.
The people in purchasing.
I'm unmuting Dwight. Go ahead, please.
Good afternoon, Judge. Good afternoon, commissioners. I'll make mine fairly brief, just to get you through the day. I know there's a lot going on. So, Lucinda, if you'd go to the second slide, please, ma'am. So we are a little unique, much like the auditor, but in the fact that we are an organization that provides services to not only to Harris County, but also to Harris Health System and Community Health Choice, which is a part of Harris County and Harris Health System. We are made up of roughly about 90 employees who service all three agencies. We have the organization set up by Harris County Proper, which is our procurement team that operates all procurements of the Preston location. which is our procurement team that operates all procurements of the Preston location downtown for Harris County. We also have a group, the medical division, which is over off Prairie Street as of right now, who operates all of our procurement for the Harris Health System and their hospitals and all their procurement goods. And we also have a location off of six oh one Lockwood, which is our purchasing services location. They're responsible for all of our fixed assets and surplus distribution of all of our goods that are at a, you know, end of their life, we need to disperse them. Next slide, please. So basically, listening to the presentations today, I realized that, you know, our mission is definitely to acquire all appropriate goods and services for the county and these other agencies. But I think it's more important that we realize that our offices is the central location to get these things out to the departments to ensure that they get their goods and their services timely, make sure their work is done timely. So it's been my goal in the last four and a half years, five years in this position, is to be recognized as one of the best-in-class procurement services organizations within not only Harris County, but the community and surrounding areas. We look at different ways of improving our services and making things much more transparent when it comes to operating our services. And we're going to be doing that this year. I think we've already reached out to several of the departments and talked to them about a new software system we're putting in place to allow us to meet some of our goals and strategic objectives, which I have listed here on the next slide, if you move forward to that. Our goals are really focused on three areas. Leveraging our technology, we recently taking on a new challenge to implement a software system called Bonfire, which will be utilized to do all of our procurement processes electronically through this. And there will not be any paper and any transmissions of paper. We're going to do all of it within an electronic system to leverage this technology to not only increase our procurement cycle times, but also be able to hold folks accountable on where each process or each, you know, operation that we're doing, where it's at and how we can cut those timelines down to improve our sourcing process throughout the office. We're also going to leverage some technology. We're currently in the, in the process of implementing all of our, our, I guess you'd say, paper files now. We're converting all of those into indexing of digital files. So we'll have an ability for not only departments, but also individuals that are out in the public that want to have a copy of a document. Everything will be electronic in our office. We're moving away from storing of all these files just due to the amount of work that comes through this office. Our other areas of goals that we're shooting for is the MWBE outreach and MWBE ability for those vendors and companies out there to be notified of solicitations and now the ability to actually bid on those services, no matter if it's a large project or a small project. And the technology we're planning on using is also the one we're rolling out now to implement this platform that will notify multitude of those vendors out there that, hey, we have a, if it's a two thousand dollar procurement or a larger one, the ability to bid on it where now it's mostly a phone call or email process. So we're moving to all electronic platforms as much as possible. We're also going to implement training sessions for departments. We'll have two to three training sessions a year or more if needed. And we're also going to do training for vendors. We're setting up those virtually until the current crisis is over. And those will provide vendors with updates on how to do business with the county and also how to work through maybe a procurement or other areas. And we'll be working closely with the Economic Opportunity Office to come up with some of those outreach and training sessions together, once that department's up and running. And then, of course, we've also going to create an annual buying plan newsletter, which is, I can't, I can't lie, I stole this from Cook County. They currently do that where they present a newsletter online to allow vendors to know kind of what permits coming down the road and then when they can prepare, be looking for those procurements. And this gives some information on our office, which will be posted on our website. And then lastly, of course, we're going to work with our purchasing services division to implement an internet site to allow departments to be able to view surplus items, repurposed items, and try to achieve some goals to get equipment that may not be usable for one office, but is maybe an asset for another. So we're going to try to improve some of that transparency when it comes to getting these items repurposed rather than just selling them for the penny on the dollar. Next slide, please. So here's a list of the matrix that we're going to be capturing this year. As you'll see, there's fifteen listed here. Of those fifteen, thirteen of our new metrics that we're going to be able to capture with a lot of detail coming into those to provide to the court members. And these metrics will be pulled, twelve of these metrics we pulled from the new financials, our new procurement system that we're implementing currently. But it'll give you a true understanding of what we do, how we're doing it, and if we're, we're doing it in a timely manner or we're relapsing in some of our areas. So I'm excited about the metrics. This will be something that the management here in this office can utilize to make sure that we're holding the folks accountable, not only in our office, but within the departments to know where things are. And it'll be transparent for the departments to be able to see a lot of what's going on in our office, because this system will allow them the ability to sign in as a, a read-only user and see their projects, see where they're at. And actually, you know, if there's a holdup, we'll be able to identify those early on. Next slide, please. So this year, I'm happy to say within our budget, we're requesting the same allocation that we received last year. At this rate of this current year, unfortunately, we hadn't spent that much. We were, we had lost several senior staff due to either moving on to a leadership role in a surrounding county or retirement. Therefore, we haven't met the, the full budget. But we did utilize some of those funds to procure the software system and to actually also digitize all of our files. So we are asking for the same amount, nice, in any additional funds. And we've also funded the software platform for three years so the county won't have to worry about paying for that service for three years. Our salary and benefits comprised of about ninety-six, ninety-six percent of our purchasing budget. And of that, roughly about forty percent of that is allocation that will come back to the county from Harris Health System and Community Health Choice, who reimburses us for our salaries for the services we provide to them. And lastly, I wanted to point out before we, I finish, our medical team, which is off of Prairie Street, is currently in the process of moving over to the new Holly Hall Administration Building, which is off six ten and Fourness, I believe. And they will be integrating within Harris Health System staff to not only make it more collaborative, but also to allow them to work, you know, closely with other agencies as well, but also free up some of the, the space here for the county. So that'll be an asset that can be utilized from someone else up on thirteen ten Prairie. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions. And I look forward to continue to move us in the right direction on transparency with the, the vendor outreach and also with the department's success. Thank you.
Commissioner Ellis and then Commissioner Garcia.
Did you say Rodney Judge? I have not.
Yes, Commissioner, let's go ahead.
Yeah, so, uh, thank you very much, Mr. Toplaw. I, I'm just wondering, who will keep the data from B two G now? Or if I have it wrong, it may be DG two, I can, you know, just don't call it the BG's. You know what I'm talking about, one that collects the data. Yeah.
Yes, sir. It'll actually be, it'll move over to the new department once they're, they're created and up and running. We're currently working on that data now. We'll be jointly working with them on that data to ensure that it's, it's kept in the system and it'll be provided to all the court members. So right now, we're working on it in my office.
And then I guess, is it, whenever the time is appropriate, I'm, we want to make sure we post that online, whether it's you or that office, just so people know what progress we are.
Yes, sir. We, we will have it, and right now, we're working directly with it. But we will make sure that all the individuals know. And we'll keep it, probably keep it on both websites. And you can click to a link and it'll take you straight to the software system.
Like a dashboard of something, like some of the stuff that the judge's office does on, on, on what's going on with COVID, as an example. So it's real easy for people to know.
Yes. Yes, sir. I want to be as transparent on that as possible with that department. So we'll, we'll work to make sure that there's no laps in services using that software. We're going to keep it up and running until the offices transitioned over. And that way, when she takes over that role, there'll be a lot of data there for her to start reviewing.
And between you and the EEO office, that's what we'll call it, Equity and Economic Opportunity, I think. I'll just call it EEO to help me remember it, if the rest, I was new acronym now. While we're waiting to get a program in place, there are a lot of people calling me because I know expectations are being raised. But are you sensing from our purchasing, you're getting more interest from these MWBEs and are more than being successful, just generally? I'm not asking for a report on it.
Yes, sir, there are.
Yeah.
Yes, so there's been a lot of interest in that. And to, just to give the court members an update, I've been working closely with the consultant to get the module up under B two G to be able to dump all the information in there. My staff is currently working with Colette to get that thing up and running so we can start utilize that in our procurement process now. We have done a few and we're working tomorrow on one for the flood control to manually come up with a percentage to put into the procurement. So we are working that direction now, even though we don't have a department up. We're trying to implement some of those requests into the procurements now to allow us to put percentages in there for MWB participation.
And the last suggestion is that since the poet has done a disparity study and that numbers were a little worse than ours, they may be working on it, come up with their plan. The one in Metro will come out late January, early February. Harris Health is looking at doing one. I think there ought to be some opportunity for synergism here on things like, you know, a joint pool or something on bonding capacity. And maybe this will come out of EEO. You can just pass it on to, to them. Okay, but thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you, Judge. Dwight, thank you for your presentation as well. And Commissioner Ellis caught the, the one question about, about B two G and making sure that it is going to be in the right hands once the new office is established. And so in terms of, in terms of your, your operations, how do you envision what the synergy, if you like a better words, between the two offices? What do you, what do you envision that synergy being like?
Well, first of all, we're going to have to definitely have someone over there that can work directly with our office for each procurement. The way I understand it, the way I've talked to the folks that are looking at that office is we need to be able to work very closely on each scope of work, each project, ensure that, you know, that we're also reaching the right individuals out there, but we're also including the right information in each procurement to make sure that the MWBS do get to participate. They are meeting, you know, certain goals. And if we're not doing that, what do we need to change or revise to make that happen? But I think we're going to have to work very closely together, Commissioner. And that's just my two cents. And I think they're going to have to have some folks in office that understand procurement so we can work closely together when they review the scopes of work to make sure that when we're putting something out, that it's fair and reasonable across the board and that we're not eliminating some of those smaller companies.
Good, good. I, I appreciate some thought given to that. Because I just want to make sure, look, you've done a, a great job during the pandemic and just generally. And I want to make sure that we don't create any start and stop situations. But I really want to make sure that you, that the two of you are, are linked up early on so that way we can make sure to move along smoothly. And, and, and with that, are there any concerns with, with ensuring that, in particular, those programs that are already established and should already be, have been done, like DBE and HUB? Is there any concerns with how those programs will be, will dovetail into the new office and with your existing operations?
No, sir. I mean, we're willing to work open-minded with them. I know there's going to be some creation of the procedures, and we're going to work closely with that office to make sure that whatever procedures we come up with that, that are feasible for both sides, I'm willing to work. And that's why I want to try to keep the B two G systems up and running. So when the new office is completely up and running and we hand that off, that we're giving them something that's useful. I know that your office has been very helpful, helping us with the B two G on some of the, the different aspects of it, with the resources you provided to us with the recent individuals. So I appreciate that. Like I said, I'm open to work closely with them, but I want to make sure that we're not just dumping something on this department without having some useful information ended up and running. Because if not, we'd be waiting another six months and, and B two G would not be doing us any good. So my staff is going to continue to work that direction. And we'll make sure that any, you know, any transition over, where, whatever we need to do to make that happen, we'll work closely with that office. I'm not looking just to dump it on them and walk away. We're going to be there throughout the time.
And I, I appreciate that. And then I, I think Commissioner Ellis may have touched on this, but I want to make sure that there is some performance measure. And, and I'm not sure if that will, since you, you'll ultimately cut the check, I'm not sure if that's going to be on you, the auditor, or the new office. But I want to make sure that we think through how to demonstrate the success and output across the county once the office is established. Any thoughts on that?
Is there a specific area you're looking at, Commissioner, as far as, is that the outreach?
Well, I mean, just generally speaking, at, at some point, we'll have an MWBE. But we currently have a HUB and a DBE. And so the question is, who, where does the ultimate responsibility fall for being able to account for the progress and transparency or how those programs are operating? And, and, and how many of them are, are there? Who's it going to? Is it?
Right.
Is it went own, minority own? You know, what?
I'll be, I'm sorry, didn't cut you off. But I, in my metrics this year, and maybe something in there, I asked to, we're going to look at the average number of solicitations per year. But we're also going to look at the number of notifications that were sent to an MWB, WBE or, or a HUB. We're also going to look at the number of solicitations that were responded to and awarded to the hubs. The average number of purchase orders per, you know, that go to these individuals. We're going to track that within my office. Not to say that the new office won't, but that's part of our metrics that I provided to the court. And we're also going to look at the number of these solicit, these notifications for small purchases. Currently in the county, we, under five thou, under five thousand or fifty thousand, we just do phone call quotes. And my goal in the new system that we're implementing now is to notify all MWBE or WB's and vendors that, hey, there's a, there's a five thousand dollar purchase. Give me a quote electronically back. So there's a lot more transparency to see how many of them are being notified, how many of them are going to provide us with that and awarded that job. And we can do all that within this current system that we're moving to, that I think I presented to all court members, staff to let their review. But those statistics that I provided will be doing that internally. And I'm sure there'll be some that the E, the OOE or EOC office will be doing. But we're going to track that from my standpoint to show you that, you know, we want to make sure that those guys are being transparent and being notified of, of all those procurements.
Wonderful. All right, well, listen, man, thank you so much. I appreciate your work through the pandemic.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Commissioner Ramsey.
Well, hi, this is Tom Ramsey. Thank you for your overview there. I appreciate you having a no increased budget. That's always encouraging to us as we try to make the best use of our dollars. I can, I can tell you that there are many MWBEs, DBEs, HUB firms out there that would like to do work with the county. There's a lot of prime firms out there that have a history of, of teaming with those folks. So look forward to working with you. I'm doing a very specific look within precinct three and the things that we do and purchase and, and cause to happen and be sure that we've got on the mark. There are people out there that can do this work. So I look through, you know, what the city of Houston's done and other people in terms of DBE and MWBE. We've got, I think, the ability to meet those goals effectively. The other thing that I'd like to bring up is folks and businesses in Harris County need work and being sure that we reach out to. And being sure that uh, we reach out to communicate with all those businesses in Harris County uh, that uh, offer the services. Uh, we may be for many good reasons being, doing work with people in Dallas and San Antonio and Austin. But if we can get those same services for the same price, for the great quality, uh, we all be getting them from Harris County. So our outreach program, I would hope would be uh, would be that to get Harris County businesses uh, a good share of that work.
Yes, sir. Uh, we'll definitely work with your office and all offices. I look forward to work with you as well. Um, I think that the goal is for our office is to work with the new office is to also do some vendor fairs where they can come out and just visit. And we can get them signed up on our system to be able to see where that business is and, and get those guys in there quoting us. Um, I agree a hundred percent. I do think we need to work on some, some language in the statute so we can get it changed in legislation to allow us to give some preference to local. I know that that was an item that Commissioner Ellis had put on court uh, on Tuesday. And so we'll work with the Legislative Relations Group and then, uh, but we'll also be glad to work with you guys to do any outreach. We do those outreaches now with the chambers. Uh, we go visit with them and do meetings with them. So I'll be glad to do that as well.
Yeah, cuz I guess the other part of that is uh, when someone, a business in Harris County, a contractor or anybody else takes the time to submit a bid and a quote to us. Uh, the follow-up we do with that business, uh, in terms of, I'm sorry, you came in second. Here is uh, you were too high in this area to not, not wanna get your pencil out on the next one. Uh, any kind of, that kind of vendor uh, support. I know you've got limited number of staff. But anything we can do to get some Harris County businesses back to work and, and if you see one that's constantly, man, they're just almost there. If you could work with them to see what they need to do uh, to get, get it so they could uh, begin to get some business with Harris County, I think would help us all.
Yes, sir. Will do.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And, and I, I can't thank you enough for your work throughout the pandemic. And I mean, you guys have just been tireless. And really, since we got here, uh, you know, supporting, supporting uh, everything with, with, with integrity and, and saying no when it's no and yes when it's yes. And so I really appreciate you and your team. Um, and, and the metrics that you guys are proposing are, are, are great. You know, focused on efficiency and focus on equity. So I, I can't thank you enough.
Thank you, Judge. I really appreciate it. I thank the court's support as well.
Let's hear from the county attorney's office next.
All right. Well, thank you all very much for, for having us here today. I'm Christian Menefee, the newly elected Harris County Attorney. And I have the pleasure of being one of the few people to be here on video today, uh, which I don't know if that helps my chances of heard some, but I'm very happy to be here. Uh, thank you, Judge Hidalgo, uh, the commissioners, Dave Barry, and our budget management representative, August Williams. And wanna say a special thank you to Robert Sword, who's the former first assistant for the office and has really helped us out with a smooth transition. And my current first assistant, Jay Iyer. Uh, I'm new. I believe I'm the only uh, countywide elected official who took office on January one. So I had some influence in this request that we're gonna discuss here today, but we weren't able to include everything that we need. And so you may see us again on, on some supplemental items. Uh, the Harris County Attorney's Office has had a measurable impact on Harris County and its residents. But one thing that's for sure is the county attorney team is very overburdened. And that's for two reasons. One, uh, we just flat out need more positions. And two, there were several vacancies that were left open by design by the previous administration to provide uh, the winner of the general election with flexibility during the transition period. So what we've seen is about twenty some odd positions have remained vacant since March, really. And it's fluctuated over time, but what that's done is overburden the other attorneys on the various teams. There are some opportunities to add positions, uh, to do work that is important to this court, namely increased environmental compliance and enforcement work and consumer protection work. And there are some deficiencies in operational communications function. So we're gonna be asking to reclassify a position to create an operational lead of sorts so that we can really hone in on performance metrics and ensure that this office is being run as efficiently as possible. Next slide, please, Lucinda. So I've discussed generally some of the things that we're gonna be focused on. Uh, but we're proposing a budget that expands the office's current structures and processes and, and really allows us to provide better client service. One of the things that we've seen to be true is we've spoken with folks in various departments across the county is that there's room for us to improve on the client service.
To just the county attorney, Lucinda, we're hearing a, a, like some sort of notification. I don't know if there's a computer that you've got, that you need to mute. I just wanna make sure we can hear the county attorney appropriately. Go ahead, Mr. Menefee.
Okay, good deal. So, you know, one of the things that we've seen is we've communicated with the various departments and, and other clients that the office serves is that there's room for improvement in how we provide services to our clients. And, and again, that goes back to the capacity issue and how we're saying that in some instances, we're not able to provide services as quickly and be as responsive as we'd like because of capacity issues. So in this budget request, we're gonna address that. And also uh, we're requesting additional funding for litigation positions, administrative functions, as well as a new litigation division. And we'll discuss that a little bit later in the presentation. Next slide, please. The Harris County Attorney's Office serves many roles. It, it's a unique office in that we're one of the few offices at the county that services every single other department in the county. Um, we touched just about every one of the eight goals that this Commissioners Court adopted last uh, September for the county. And we are the only office that does all of that while also maintaining authority and responsibility to pursue claims that benefit the general public. So generally, we provide counsel to all the county government uh, departments and elected officials as they're trying to get various things done to ensure that it's in compliance with the law. We represent you all in lawsuits whenever you're sued. And to be sure, over the past year, there have been a lot of lawsuits. Uh, we also represent the Texas Department of Family and Protective Services in cases involving abused and neglected children. Uh, we do stuff around mental health. We have an environmental division and we, uh, are revenue generator. We collect certain delinquent receivables. But one of the number one things that I saw while campaigning for this position was whenever I would introduce myself and say that I'm running for the county attorney's uh, position, most people would ask, why am I running against the district attorney? Because people generally only know on the outside the work that the district attorney does and not the county attorney's office. So one of the things that we're focused on is increasing our transparency and our communication with the public so that we can know which matters will best benefit the public when we take them on. Next slide, please. The total staff of the office is two hundred fifty-eight and we have about a hundred twenty-five attorneys. As I mentioned earlier, just kind of as a rehash, we have twenty-six vacancies currently. And again, that's resulting in the overburdening of staff. Our budget for last year was twenty-nine million, uh, one fifty-five out of the general fund. And we had a rollover of one point seven four nine uh, million. As I'm sure you all know, we also have funding from, from other sources, um, including the toll road. I believe it's a one dollar um, assessment that is part of the toll road assessment that comes directly to the county attorney's office. But uh, due to uh, lower revenue because of COVID, we're expecting that those funds are gonna be less this year than they happened in previous years. Next slide, please. So in previous budgeting cycles, there's been a focus on outputs. But I think what you'll see from the information on these next couple of slides is that the county attorney's office measurably impacts outcomes for both the county and Harris County re, uh, residents. Our office is a revenue generator for the county. So we've collected thirty-six million dollars for the county last year, which is more than six million dollars than the amount that our office received in the general fund budget last year. We also have reviewed, revised, and negotiated over three thousand contracts, which have been valued at over five point six billion dollars. That goes directly to the Commissioners Court goal of governance and customer service. Because obviously, these things can't get done without uh, lawyers putting their eyes on them. And we have defended over three hundred lawsuits. This has been a very, very busy year for lawsuits at the county. Um, the number of cases here, twenty-two thousand seven hundred sixty-two includes our CPS work, our compliance and our mental health work. But you'll recall, uh, due to whether it be actors at the state or, or hyper partisan folks, the county saw a bunch of lawsuits from a pretty small set of individuals. These lawsuits were not open and shut cases. In many instances, you would fight at the trial court and at the appellate courts, maybe it's state Supreme Court, and then still have a fight at the federal level. So they require a bunch of briefing, a bunch of work. And these matters have been handled both internally by the county attorney's office and through the hiring of outside counsel. Next slide, please. Now, I know that uh, the environment is something that's very important to this Commissioners Court. Again, it was one of the eight goals that was adopted by this court last September. Our office does a ton of work surrounding uh, keeping our residents safe from environmental injustices and violations of environmental laws from the federal level to the state level to, to locally. We're intimately, uh, we were intimately involved in um, opposing permit requests for a various number of facilities, in, including uh, concrete batching plants. We do environmental compliance work, enforcement work, all the way up to uh, litigation of environmental matters. And that actually is one of the areas that we think has the most room for growth and is most aligned with the goals that have been stated by this Commissioners Court. One thing that I do wanna point out here is that with the county's response to the pandemic, the county attorney's office was involved very intimately in that process. Uh, we assisted in preparing the judge's emergency orders. And then again, as I mentioned earlier, we defended county decisions in court, uh, both at the state level and at the federal level. Next slide, please. So here are some areas for opportunity moving forward. As I mentioned, we have capacity issues. They span across the office. But one area in particular that we've seen capacity issues is the mental health docket, which uh, in the docket affecting disabled and elderly. Here, we have just one attorney who does the mental health docket. And in twenty twenty, that docket had over sixteen thousand cases that this one attorney, Dana Drexler, who does a phenomenal job, handled by herself. So that's an area that we're certainly looking to increase capacity. Uh, we also have capacity issues within our environmental division. As you all know, and I've seen um, Commissioner Ramsey mention on some of the earlier presentations, environmental issues span across the entire county. In the past decade, the county has grown beyond just focusing on issues around the ship channel and, and instead broadened our approach. I mean, whether it be the cancer cluster in Kashmir Gardens, plant explosions in just about every one of your precincts, uh, warehouse fires and spring branch, opposing concrete batch, batching plants and underserved communities. You know, the work that this office has done has really expanded in about the past decade or so. And it, it's a very heavy lift and it's work that is important to our office. It's important to Commissioners Court. And most importantly, it's important to the people of Harris County. So we would like to build internal capacity to be able to do more of that work. At the bottom of this slide, we've had capacity issues uh, in the litigation division. Again, this was in part due to the vacancies that were uh, kept by design by the previous administration. But this is a large reason of why we'd like to retain our rollover is because, you know, we need to fill these positions. These capacity issues are affecting morale. We're seeing attrition. We're seeing retirement. So in order to ensure that folks are, you know, at capacity and not above capacity, we'd like to retain our rollover dollars so that we can fill these positions. There have also been a, a, a good amount of, of local control disputes. And, and we've talked about that. The truth is, the state government is keeping a very close watch on the decisions that are made by this court. And to the extent that they challenge issues administratively or, or in court, it's our office that stands up in defense of the decisions that you all have made and we need capacity to do that. Um, lastly, I, I think we should be prepared for an increase in civil rights cases and wake of the murder of George Floyd and the world opening back up after um, the coronavirus uh, quarantine. I think that we will see an increased interaction with law enforcement and people are just viewing those issues differently, which means that we're likely to see uh, increased lawsuits on that front. So again, it's just another reason why we need capacity in, in order to do that work. Next slide, please. So we've had some internal organizational challenges here. Uh, you know, there's pretty limited operational support for HR, budgeting, IT, and talent identification. Um, you know, most importantly, on the communications front, this office actually interacts with the public and the media pretty significantly, uh, whether it be on environmental matters, CPS matters. Um, it, it's important for us, for the work that we do, especially in the environmental space, that in order for us to know the problems that our constituents are facing, we need to be able to talk to them. Uh, and not just talk to them after the explosion has happened, but instead talk to them uh, when they feel like there's a problem with their air, when they feel like uh, there's a leak somewhere locally. In order for us to really get in and hone in on those issues, we need to have an operating communications department that is able to really facilitate those communications. Um, typically, this work has been done in the past by outside consultants, but we would like to build that capacity internally in order to um, build out these practices and, and ensure that, you know, we're not only remaining transparent, but also that folks on the outside know what we do and they know it come to us when they're having problems. And again, I briefly mentioned earlier some client service issues that we've heard from our communications with, with folks that we service at the county. And we think that filling the vacancies so that we can build capacity for folks should assist with those issues. And on the litigation front, uh, you know, the more people we have, the lower the case volumes are. And so getting us back to normal case docket sizes will ensure that morale is, is high. And one of the things that we really wanna stress on our general counsel team is, you know, we wanna have the capacity to proactively advise clients instead of just responding to issues on a one-off basis. The goal here is to decrease litigation risk, whether it be from a private actor or from the state. And we ensure that we get that done by having lawyers who communicate with county departments on a regular basis to ensure that folks are complying with the law and are aware of potential legal pitfalls. And so we need the capacity to get that done. Next slide, please. So this slide describes the goals of, of this requested budget. And, you know, if we had to place this in order of important to most, to, to least important, I'd say number one is retain and fill the positions that have been left vacant. I've spoke at length about our various vacancies throughout the office. Number two is building litigation capacity, uh, both in, in affirmative litigation group and by creating a position called Deputy County Attorney, which I'll speak about a little bit more here uh, in short order. Three, building environmental capacity. And then four, um, allowing us to create a communications outfit so that we can communicate with the general public. Um, the, the other items here are to, are to effectively create performance-based pay and also to, to have cost of living increases, which I think are incredibly important for the staff that we currently have. But the fact remains that if we don't build capacity um, and add lawyers to the office, then, you know, I don't think there's any amount of money that we can pay folks to, to stay engaged and operate at a high level uh, when their caseloads are so high. Next slide, please. This is our uh, request for this year. So it's um, our, our same general fund amount from last year plus a rollover with a uh, five point eight million dollar increase in funding. Next slide, please. And I'll talk through kind of the individual funding items and then I'll be done. The first is to increase affirmative and defensive litigation capacity. So there are kind of two main points here. One, uh, we're requesting one senior or executive level management position, which we'll call the Deputy County Attorney. You know, Robert Sword did a phenomenal job in this office. And I'm pretty sure one of the things he'll tell you is that he has been doing the job of two people. It is actually fairly common for public law offices the size of this office to have two executive level managing attorneys. Uh, if you look at the day's office, there's, as I understand, two first assistants or a first assistant and a chief of staff. And for example, the Travis County Attorney, which is pretty much viewed as an analog to this office, has both a first assistant and an executive county attorney. So we think it's important to add this position so that the first assistant can focus on providing uh, service to all of the Harris County departments. There are so many of them and the elected officials. So the general counsel side of the organizational chart. And the deputy county attorney's role would be to manage all of the various litigation that the office deals with. The second part of this is uh, we're requesting four positions to create an affirmative litigation and special litigation projects um, section. So this all, this division would do a bunch of things. But one, you know, we anticipate that there's gonna be a growth and opportunity for pursuing environmental compliance enforcement and litigation matters. So this office would, this division would handle the litigation side of that. We're looking to build out a consumer protection practice. You know, one of the things that I saw time and time again throughout the pandemic was whether it be phone calls or emails of folks trying to defraud the people of Harris County uh, through various scams and fraudulent businesses. And so we're, we're looking to create a group that's able to go after uh, these businesses that run afoul of those social contracts. And then also the local control litigation, again, on these cases where we may have been sued by the state or, or hyper partisan actors. Typically, this office would hire outside counsel, but we're hoping to over time start to reduce our reliance on outside counsel and instead of having to come to you all time and time again and ask to hire special counsel, we hope to, after a few years, be able to handle these matters internally. On the environmental front, uh, we're requesting two positions to build out uh, two attorney positions and one paralegal position to build out the environmental practice in the ways that I've described. Next slide, please. Again, I discussed how um, our mental health team and our team that handles issues affecting the disabled and the elderly are at capacity. So we're requesting one position so that the lawyer on that group won't have to handle sixteen thousand cases uh, on our own per year. And then uh, this next section is about pay increases. So, you know, it's kind of broken up in various sections, but the short of it is for the Harris Health team, there, we're reimbursed by Harris Health's budget. So it's not an issue there. Uh, and the rest of these items are uh, to increase pay for our attorneys so that we can ensure that they're being compensated competitively. And the rest of these items are to increase pay for our attorneys so that we can ensure that they're being compensated competitively. Next slide, please. Okay. And these last two items are again establishing a communications team. I've talked at length about that on this presentation, but it would effectively be just two individuals, a director and an assistant, so that we can communicate with the public about the work that the office does and get a better understanding of the issues affecting folks in their communities so that we can pursue that through our affirmative litigation team. And then lastly, reclassifying positions so that we can have better operational efficiencies. That one is probably our lowest cost line here, but it's effectively just allowing us to turn a few lawyer positions into different positions so that we can address our operational needs. I have probably run over my limit and I apologize for that, but with that, I will turn it over for any questions. And thank you all very much for giving me your audience today.
Commissioner Ellis, go ahead and then Commissioner Garcia.
Mr. Menefee, thank you and congratulations. I think it was a a very thoughtful presentation considering you did just get sworn in on January 1st. And I think it's a testament to your predecessor, Mr. Sword and his team, to make it an orderly process for you to get your budget together. I do think in on the area, an area of civil rights of litigation, what a new justice department, I saw where Anita Gupta, who's very familiar with Texas, will be part of the DOJ leadership team, I think number three in that office. And the new head of civil rights, there will be a different attitude, even on our felony bail litigation. I think the federal government of DOJ will take a different position on that matter. So I do think you need some resources and I'm hoping that some of these issues can be resolved, can be settled instead of us fighting it to the, to the end, to try and get around some festering inequities that have been here for a very long time. And I do apologize if I wanted to bring more of the litigation work in-house. And I know you will need resources in order to attract and maintain the kind of talent to be able to do that. But I assume in some areas where you could do it, if there's some litigation that could be done on a contention fee basis, you still look at that because obviously we don't have to do the outlay upfront is only if we win. So you're not saying you do it all in-house, but in the areas where you can, you want to bring it in-house. Is that, is that your sense?
Yeah, that's right, Commissioner. I mean, first of all, from a timing perspective and internal capacity, you know, even if we were to get all these positions, there's no way that tomorrow or the next day, we're going to be able to do all this work internally. Instead, it's more of a long-term plan to start to develop the capacity and the expertise so that, you know, in years to come, we can do the most of it internally. But to be sure, there are areas that are expertise practices that we have no business handling internally. So in those instances, we would go and seek out the experts and hire them as outside counsel and then closely liaise with them while also kind of learning from them along the process so that we're training our folks here internally. So that the case after that, we may be able to play a more meaningful role than we would in the first one.
And I know you be sensitive to giving qualified MWB firms that to some extent we just didn't, the data was not being collected. But if they could do the work, they ought to be given an opportunity. So I I want to commend you in advance for that. I know we talked about it and you sense it to it. But thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you, Judge. Mr. Menefee, again, congratulations to you. It is, it is good to see you sitting in that chair, man. Thank you very much. And I tell you what, it was also exciting to see you at Commissioners Court. And so we didn't get to challenge you on this, this last meeting, but I'm sure that there's going to be many opportunities. And if you haven't already heard, you may want to pack some coffee for, for some of the meetings. But listen, along the same lines, I am excited to hear you talk about making sure that, you know, if you need expert counsel, you bring them on. Of course, because we, you know, the county is going to get involved in litigation. You always want to win. But by same token, I, you know, for as long as this county attorney's office or the county, as a matter of fact, has been around, you know, one area of expertise that we seem to have done well was environmental law and that was old Buck Owens. And, and so it was sad to see him go, but it's important to make sure that there is succession planning so that you can continue to have that capacity. So if we do need expert, expert lawyers in particular areas and situations, obviously let's bring them on, but let's make sure that you embed somebody so that we can have that, that expertise in-house. And I just, you know, it's, it's great to offer that opportunity to the private sector, but we ought to have that expertise internally and and making sure that we're, we're building capacity as, as we learn from and get into all, get involved in certain things. The other, the other thing too is that I remember being in a public meeting and saw that the county attorney's office was offering, you know, contracts with the public to be engaged with the county attorney's office as a matter of having greater access and getting your cases prioritized. You know, I think in particular, they were contracting with management districts and things of that nature. I wasn't sure to think of, what to think of that practice, but is that something that you think you're going to continue?
So I'm not completely sure, you know, if you're referring to our contracts with the management districts, those are currently in place and it is on my list of things to do to take a good, hard look at those and ensure that, you know, the goals and what's being effectuated is in the best interest of the people of Harris County. So that particularly if that's what you're referring to, that's on my list of things to do. So, you know, we'll take a good, hard look at that and then decide accordingly.
Okay, good deal. And then, and then, and then, you know, as you mentioned, having a good communications office to engage the public. And, you know, don't forget the, the, the diversity of, of the community and having that capacity to engage the community throughout Harris County to ensure that everybody knows you're their, you're their attorney. And, and because I know that we've talked about a few things about how to get the weight of your office to support particular issues. So it'll, it'll be good that people can be more informed as to, you know, the resource that they have in you and your office to support them and, and protect them for that matter. But in particularly the, in the environmental side, I will, just because it seems to always be on the east side of Harris County, I will have a particular interest in visiting with you and discussing that because, you know, at the last Commissioners Court, we talked about an air monitor for Manchester. Manchester is a predominantly Hispanic community, predominantly Spanish speaking. And, and, you know, getting your, your office to help us craft those agreements and, and move those items along have been incredibly helpful. So just making sure we have that, that environmental capacity is just so critical. But again, just congratulations and appreciate your presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you very much for your kind words. I'll tell you, at the court's meeting the other day, I had, you know, all my books over here on the side, just intense. You all tried anything crazy, but you know, we were very sad to see Rock Owens retire from the office.
I called him Buck, but Rock, you're right.
Yeah, but you know, we, we have Sarah Utley, who's leading that division now, and Sarah is a rock star. I mean, she, you know, she's highly competent, very capable. And I'm very much excited about the, that team under her leadership. And, you know, that's one of the reasons why we're requesting additional help on that team is to get Sarah the tools that she needs so that she can be helpful to each and every one of them.
Wonderful, wonderful. Thank you very much. Appreciate you.
Commissioner Ramsey.
Mr. Menefee, glad to have you as my attorney. That's what I consider it. Even when I was mayor of Spring Valley, I considered Harris County my attorney because as you described, and most people don't understand, whether it's rideaway issues, whether we get down in flood control issues, all of those environmental issues, you are our attorney. And I've got to tell you, I've got a lot of confidence in you, spending time with you, talking about many different things. I think you're going to bring a good, fresh approach to a lot of what we're doing on. You're building on a good foundation there, I think. So look forward to working with you on our side. I know that there are things happening on the west side. People are doing things in a Harris County rideaway that shouldn't be. And we will be working with your office to be sure we get those things straightened out. But again, welcome. Thank you for your attitude. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. I really appreciate it. You know, I grew up in precinct three and most of my family is still there. So you all have a special place in my heart. So I'm very much looking forward to working with your office.
Thank you, Mr. Menefee, to you and your team. And yeah, I appreciate your, your posture leaning forward on all of this. There's a couple of across the board increases that you're requesting in the cost of living adjustment, which I, I think, you know, we're looking at that together as per our discussion at the beginning of the hearings yesterday. But I appreciate how thoughtfully you all have laid out the requests, the reason for them. And, and we all got the detailed metrics and et cetera, which is, is very, very helpful. And yeah, it's, thank you and welcome and congratulations again.
Thank you, Judge.
IGA.
I'm unmuting Enter Reed. Go ahead, enter.
Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners. I'm Enter Reed, Director of Intergovernmental and Global Affairs. So basically the mission of Intergovernmental and Global Affairs Department, as you know, is to work to further the county's legislative, intergovernmental and global affairs priorities while exemplifying transparency, equity and inclusivity on behalf of Harris County. There were three major areas that we were working on this last year as, as we expanded sort of our, our issue base. And one of those issues was expanded engagement. The other one was increased communications and the other one was maximizing resources. Regarding expanded engagement, we did a lot of meetings with our legislative delegation. And, you know, in this, in this new COVID environment, a lot of Zoom meetings. And we really wanted to not only ask them for, for assistance on the county's legislative program, but also to provide them assistance with their, their priorities. And, and I think that was appreciated by them that it wasn't just a, a what can you do for, for us, but also working, working with them. Along that same line on expanded engagement, we worked with different community organizations such as the Homelessness Coalition on, on supporting housing issues. And, and we're looking to increase those types of engagements. We also worked more on state agency issues such as working with the General Land Office. Regarding increased communications, we sent a lot more information to court staff and internally in the county to empower court staff so that they can have the information that they need to, to let the court know what's going on. And the big thing was maximizing resources. The, as we expanded what we're trying to do, the only way we can do that with, with our small sized department of five people is to really utilize those entities within the county and utilizing resources within the county. So for example, we've been engaging with the hobby school, Commissioner Ellis, with, with your former colleague over there, Senator Watson. We've been engaging with National Association of Counties, Texas Association of Counties, Conference of Urban Counties and, and also the large counties within Texas and outside of Texas. The large county coalition outside of Texas was pretty vital in getting direct funding for, for CARES funding this during, during COVID. So that's been very fruitful and that's really the way that we can do more without, without raising our budget significantly. I want to talk very quickly about sort of our four areas that, that we work on, federal, state, global and local, and, and talk about some of the challenges and opportunities there. On the federal level, I think yesterday, yesterday's event illustrated better than anything, the opportunities and challenges facing us on the federal level. I think Commissioner Ellis's words earlier were, were well said. Thankfully, none of the delegation was injured and, and talking to staff, they seem to be doing fine, but certainly brought to bear the, the challenges that we're going to be facing. I think that, that previously, when the office was Legislative Relations, when the state session came up, basically it was only working on state issues. And the fact is this, this court has challenged us and we are up to the challenge on working as diligently on the federal issues as the state issues. We have to walk and chew gum. Thankfully, the court, we're grateful for the additional assistance with Greenberg Trial and we are well positioned to, to do both federal and state issues at the same time. I think that we're looking at all those federal issues, infrastructure issues, flood equity issues, and really trying to get Harris County recognized as, as the unique entity that it is with the unincorporated area. I think we've, we've seen what can happen when, when we get direct allocation and we can get that direct allocation directly to people. Had, had the CARES funding gone through, the governor for Harris County, we would have seen a third less funding and, and a whole lot less could have gotten done. So we want to make sure that, that we're in position to get direct allocation in public health and, and in all the areas that we can. So that's, that's going to be a major feature for the federal level. On the state level, this is going to be an interesting session. There's a lot of known unknowns. We obviously have a budget, budget deficit and, and just the general administration of managing a session under, under pandemic conditions. There's, there's a lot of unknowns as to how much we're going to be let into the Capitol and things like that. But we're going to be as engaged as possible and going to be leaning on our delegation to, to help us with that. But in preparation for that, we, we have set ourselves up to be opportunistic. We have bill analysis done. We have digital bill packets prepared with this testimony. We want to be able to attach our, our issues to whatever train is moving. And, and we've been working very hard to make sure that we're set up to do that. Think that what we've seen and what we will see during this session is, is there is an attack on the right of local government to, to have a voice in the process and we're going to be working uphill through that. And, and certainly we've never seen as much engagement between state and local government as we have this interim. And there's going to be some significant defense regarding local authority based on, based on that engagement. Right now, we're tracking about 600 bills and that will be, be growing quickly. Now on a global level, we have engaged much more with the Consular Court and, and Commissioner Cagle. We've gotten with Rights Global Affairs Program to set up a not, not having an ad hoc strategy, but having a specific strategy that in a few months I hope to present to the court on, on exactly the strategies we want to undertake regarding our global affairs program.
Go out.
Yes, sir. And, and certainly on the local level as well, we've engaged a lot more with, with the small cities, the cities outside of Houston. And, and certainly I was excited to hear Commissioner Ramsey discuss those opportunities that, that we have with the small cities and I completely agree. Got a good chance to work with Mayor Bechtel and, and looking, looking forward to increasing that outreach. And again, that's, that's a maximizing resource issue. When, when we can all march together with, with one voice, we can, we can get a lot done. Regarding the budget, we're mainly looking for the same budget as last year, but we are asking for one additional staffer, one junior IGA specialist. You know, with, with the small group that we have, one person leaving does significantly impact us. My great deputy, Amy Bertrand, left, left our department and that's a 20% cut in our workforce. So, so we are looking for one additional person to, to smooth that out a little bit and to also help with, with that increased engagement across all of those areas. And that is all I have and I, I look forward to questions. And that is all I have, and I look forward to questions.
Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you, Judge. Ender, thank you so much for your presentation and I appreciate the work in getting ready for the session. And just looking forward to working with you. So thank you for your one necessary event to take on a busy, busier year, pandemic and the session. All the best. Looking forward to working with you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Same here.
Judge, Ender, I just want to thank you as well. I'm fading, Judge. Y'all might lose me after a while. Let's stay up all night. I'm about to fall out. I have to keep turning my camera off because I'm afraid I might doze off.
We'll tell you.
Well, I'm glad I didn't put you to sleep, Commissioner.
Never.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. Yeah, I hope you guys are thinking about anything else that you all need, given what's going on in Washington. Got your work cut out for you, both in Washington and Austin. Any other questions, folks? Let's move on to budget management.
Just tell them to say it loud, because I'm dozing off. Say it loud, Mr. Bertrand.
Commissioner Ellis, I'll give you a bit of good news to wake up. We've, there've been some emails going around, and it looks like Harris County will be eligible for about $94 million of rental and utility assistance out of the latest COVID stimulus act. So
Bring my coffee on your staff.
That's right. Yeah, even better than coffee. So
What do you, like, go on, Dave?
Now I got your attention. I'm sorry about that. No, it's it's part of the latest COVID stimulus bill that went through, and they announced the formulas for allocating it. It looks like we'll be eligible for 94 million, working through the rules. But it'll be similar to the CARES funding. We got it in some sense, and it's coming from the Treasury, but it's our responsibility to administer it. And we use for rental assistance, utility assistance, and we'll have to get to work on designing this program.
That's good news.
Good news.
Do you know when we're receiving it?
I think the goal is to get it out in February, if not before. We will be in touch with your staff shortly because we'll need to put some papers in by January 12th. They're trying to move it very quickly.
And sorry, I know you just got this, but I'm just one quick, final quick question. Is this say rental, or do you know if we could use direct financial assistance, kind of like, I mean, we've tried running both types of programs, and it was clear that the direct financial assistance was more attractive and more effective.
From a very quick read, I think 90% of it does need to go to rental or utility assistance, utility bill assistance. And then 10% of it, it seems that we have some more flexibility, but it needs to be connected to housing homelessness in the picture.
Yeah, well, I hope that a committee that's been working so well, the chiefs can figure out how to how to lessons learned that fit within the parameters that the beds have laid out. But that's great. Thank you.
Yeah, that is. That is great news.
So, yes, thank you, Judge. Thank you, Members of Commissioners Court. I am just now completing five months on my tenured as Budget Officer, and I try not to take points of personal privilege, but I do just want to say thank you so much for the opportunity to serve, and it is just an incredible, incredible privilege. And thank you for your support as we work on some reforms on budget and elsewhere. That can be hard. That can be messy. But we will absolutely give it our all to sail in the direction Commissioners Court wants to steer the ship. And we see that as our mission, is to serve Commissioners Court and carrying out its vision for Harris County, to assist the court in safeguarding the county's fiscal health, achieving strategic objectives, promoting transparent, accountable government, and serving the residents of Harris County. We are right about 115 team members. And pretty much everyone knows that we look after the general fund budget, that we look after capital planning. And I think most people know we also look after the county's bond and commercial paper financing and the investments in banking. But there are actually a good number of other things we do. So we send in her team, manage the Commissioners Court agenda. We have a team, we're building out a team working on performance analysis. We have a small team that administers grants and compliance for grants that don't have a home elsewhere in the county. We have a mapping and GIS team that runs the countywide GIS platform. And human resources, one of the most important functions in the county, along with benefits and risk management sits in our department, and disaster recovery, not the operational aspect of it, but dealing with the finances of disaster recovery, working with FEMA, working on CARES program, working on programs like this rentals. So if you could go to the next page, please, and send it. This is our direction, and that we do a lot of things. I think the two biggest groups are performance and budget and human resources. And we've talked a good amount. We talked yesterday about where we want to head in the budget, but it's more rigorous decision making, more metrics at the service level, increased transparency and public engagement, planning over multi-year periods, and doing that all in a fiscally responsible manner. And on human resources, we are at the very beginning of this, but we definitely realize we need to take human resources and build it as a strategic function with a new focus on talent and equity. So not just compliance and administration, but helping solve problems. It's come up in a number of times this meeting. How do we deal with compensation issues in a comprehensive and countywide basis? And also, how do we really bend the curve on benefit, the cost curve on benefit? So it's about $500 million every year that the county invests between health insurance, which is self-insured, our pension plan, and other benefit. So it's right up there with flood control and with law enforcement is our biggest expenditure. And that needs to be a big focus for us going forward, managing those risks and also slowing down the cost curve growth on health insurance while still providing excellent benefit. And we're here to talk today about a few requests we have to carry on in this direction. And it's a small group of hires focused on new services. It's some software to automate things that are just taking us in, technology to automate things that are taking us an awfully long time to do today, that are just totally manual. And also, a public-facing transparency website to display both expenditures and many of the performance metrics that we've been discussing through this budget hearing, to get them in in the sunlight in an accessible way. The next page. This is the summary of our of our budget requests, and we've laid out how much it costs, what we offer in return to Commissioners Court. Briefly, but number one, we want to we now have a couple of people who have the word "performance" in their job title, but we want to build out a team, a performance analysis function. And it would just be a shame if we don't follow up in a comprehensive way from all the work we've done in this budget process on data and performance. So with these hires, we would implement a regular performance report, not on every one of the 1,900 performance metrics through the budget cycle, but the most important for each service and each department. We'd spend more time with departments, not just providing them, you know, reading a document and providing them some feedback, but meeting with them regularly to help them with data collection, data analysis. And also really important is spending the time to separate out the signal from the noise, because data can move around, and metrics can move around for all sorts of reasons. You really need really dedicated folks to we're also looking for one new position to create a financial planning and analysis function, and this is all about multi-year financial planning. We've started to do that, something we've done too little of historically, where we don't just look at one year of revenue or expenses, but we look at a five-year period. And that's always the best practice. It's even more essential now as we are navigating through pandemics and recession. I mentioned that we want to invest in a budget transparency website and budget software. There are a number of great platforms out there that I would say most governments of our size use, like OpenGov, like Socrata. And I think this, on the one hand, is is a great way to explain to the public what we do. I think it's also creates accountability for us. Folks have quoted Louis Brandeis several times in these proceedings, that sunlight is the best disinfectant, electric power is the best, electrical light is the best policeman. And I think these really top-notch, open financial data and performance data websites do exactly that. And also, it has the potential to eliminate justice. We'd like to expand our ability to do budget engagements and events. I think we ought to be looking at engagement for our budget more like we have looked at doing engagement on major infrastructure projects, where we're not holding one hearing, and your chance to participate is to show up and make a comment. We're holding multiple meetings. We're getting out into the community. We are enabling people to participate through technology. And then we would like to sponsor a third-party compensation study, and this would be to look at compensation across the county, not for one position, but at a high level. Are people being paid fairly here relative to elsewhere? Are people being paid fairly here relative to one another? And that is, given the number of employees we have, a comprehensive analysis and one we need to do very thoughtfully. But I think it's just vital, because I worry when we address these issues one-off, we may think we're making things better, but we might be increasing inequities and not even knowing it. And then we're also looking to make some investments in human resources software and our background check software. This takes too long right now, and it can certainly be better. And my staff has also recommended that we bring back an employee service award program. And this is a program that actually existed but was cut during the last downturn. And what we're talking about here is something where if folks have put in their 10, 15, 20 years of service, they get a small a small gift from the county, a sign plaque from Commissioners Court in honor of their service. So we may not be in a spot to give people large raises, but this was something that the HR team suggested as a way to show our appreciation. So I've gone through this quickly and respect the time, but again, thank you so much and happy to take any questions.
Good, Commissioner Ellis.
Yeah, Mr. Berry, you're doing a great job. Particularly, I want to commend you on the focus on those equity issues. And in a slouchy end, you have helped us make some difficult decisions, you know, the one that we voted on the executive session about where to put office space was a perfect example of helping us think outside the box. I think that private sector experience that you brought to the table probably helped with that. So I just want to thank you. You woke me up. I am wondering, you know, why the money was tied, you know, we had so many problems with the rental assistance part, and I'm assuming Congress probably put some of those equity factors in as well. So I I hope we figure out how to get it out. But thank you. You're doing a great job. I appreciate you leaving the private sector where you could have made a heck of a lot more money, come in and do public service, and I hope you enjoy it.
Joy of the day. Thank you, sir.
Garcia.
Thank you, Judge. And I echo that as well. You've got a great financial brain there, man. And so the presentation that you provided yesterday was impressive. And so thank you for, and then the whole process, just getting your arms around it so quickly has been incredibly welcomed. But also guidance on the equity issues as Commissioner Ellis talked about. And I really appreciate it because this was very important to the judge about ensuring that we're doing public engagement as a matter of our budgeting process and giving the public an opportunity to weigh in on it as well. So thank you. Thank you for that. And and in terms of your perspective with, you know, you've been here just a little bit now. Your thoughts on how much more is in front of us to really get our arms around the budget as you're now seeing it and the processes and the historical practices versus, you know, best practices?
There's a lot more to do, Commissioner. There's a lot more to do. Some of it is in the process, and as I mentioned, I think software can help. I think having more time can help our budgets. Our budget process was two months too short this year. It really should be six months for a county this size. In terms of PeopleSoft and the accounting system, I think we have work to do there to make sure we can get the information we need out of it and really build the infrastructure so we can be, as I say, getting down to the service level rather than just the department. And then I also think we need to be doing a deeper dive into our baseline. I mean, we talked about this yesterday. Yes, we're looking at it. I think we can identify some areas where there are changes, but we're just scratching the surface. So I think, and I said this from some of my first interviews, I think it's a several-year effort to get us where we really want to be. And I'd also say, I don't think the work of performance-based budgeting is ever done, right? Because the problems are too hard, and the world changes underneath your feet. So I don't think we'll ever say we're done on this topic, but we've got a lot more work to do. And appreciate your words on the process this year. I will say I might be 10% of the inspiration, the other 90% is my team, and I'm probably 1% of the perspiration. So I'm really grateful to them and everybody else. I mean, almost without exception, department heads and their budget reps have put a lot of work into this and been open to it. So I'm very appreciative of that.
Good deal. And then just in closing, you mentioned that it was just too short of a period to do the budget process. And I'm not sure whether we're married to the fiscal year that we've got. Are we giving any thought to what should be the budgeting process that really enables us to understand what are true revenues coming in and and then really just how to be fair to department directors?
Absolutely. It sounds like you've been thinking about it as well, Commissioner Garcia. I think we absolutely need to change our fiscal year. And the reason we need to do that is because here we are setting the budget in January. We don't know what the tax rate is. We're making an assumption on it. We don't know what the tax base is. We're making an assumption on it. And I think a fiscal year of October 1st through September 30th, which is a lot of other Texas governments use, would make all the sense in the world. My predecessor, Bill Jackson, thought that was a good idea. Some of my team that have been there for 20 years think it's a good idea. So I would, I believe the auditor would be in support and others would, but I think you can expect to see as part of our budget proposal, a proposal that it's too late to do it this year, but after that, after this, you know, one more March to February year, let's get on that cycle. And I think it'll give us more certainty. And from my perspective, too, it'll be good for Commissioners Court to be able to think about the tax rate and think about expenditures at the same time, because they're not really separate decisions, right? At some point, the money that comes in must equal the money that comes out.
Very good. Very good. And there's, from what you can determine, there's no statute prohibitions from changing it. Is it a court decision?
I think it's a court decision. So we would bring the recommendation, and if you all agree, we would get it in motion so that we can make the transition, not this fiscal year.
I look forward to you putting it on the agenda.
Commissioner.
David, thank you for your work. Obviously, this is my first budget process. I'll just start with the 50 cities I've worked for in Texas. Most of them are October budget cycles, so that is much better. We should get there as quickly as we can for all the reasons you've said. The other thing is, David, I would value The other thing is, David, I would value your perspective on, you get to look at all these budgets, you're looking at all of the, you're weighing the values of a lot of what's being proposed. We may have some work ahead of us as many departments have made strong cases for what they need. We know there's only so much money. There's going to be a lot of opinions. So any help that your office can provide in helping us properly identify those priorities, I for one would, would appreciate, would appreciate that perspective.
Certainly happy to do that. And, and we obviously will get through these hearings and I look forward to more feedback from Commissioners Court members. And, and when we come back later in the month with a proposed budget or some options, we'll try to do, we'll try to do that, Commissioner, at least narrow the choices down a little bit. But you're absolutely right there, a hard decision. I look at the numbers.
The other thing I would add, coming out of a business that was technology-driven, where we had new software almost every three years. Now, that required training, that required all types of different deals with our staff. I guess when you look at your technology, when you look at making improvements that you're proposing, always, I guess, look at your, the number of folks that are there. We always ask a couple of questions. Are we going to do a better job when we get the new, new software, new hardware? And are we going to need as many people as we used to have? So there's a people component to that and a software component to that. So I know you're weighing those, you're coming from that perspective. I like technology, anything we can do to improve that. But we also know that that affects the numbers of people that work there as well.
Dave, thank you so much. You really hit the ground running. And I know it's, it's a lot of work to get, get to where we are and get to where we're going. I can't wait to see those transparency websites built and more robust community engagement. I echo Commissioner Garcia's words on the, on the fiscal year. And just one note, and I meant to mention this under the share, but you ought to, it, it was really a message for you, which is on CIP, there was a comment that the $184 million that had been allocated for repairs. Under that, it says that it is a possibility of building another detention facility. And I just want to make clear, as far as I'm concerned, and we discussed this yesterday, the clarity we need on CIP because it seems like we approve one thing and then something else shows up. I am not on board with building another detention facility. I went to great lengths to stop the other juvenile detention facility from being built. So when I approved that, my, my vote was on repairs. It wasn't on a new facility. So if that's the case, please, no, I'm not in support. That's not what I voted for. And I'd need to be involved in those conversations. I'm not sure about my colleagues, but certainly I was taken by surprise.
Well, Judge, I certainly echo that.
And can you hear me, Judge?
Yeah.
Yes. And definitely noted. And what came across were submissions from departments. So the work we're doing now is taking those and turning them into, into a plan. So by no means are the projects in front of you the projects we will do. They are the ideas for projects that we need, that our work is to make into a list of projects we are actually doing in a capital improvement.
Just make sure that funds are earmarked for repairs, that they're kept as repairs. If they're going to be used for something, we need to be brought back to court.
Understood.
Well, that, that, but, but the overall is a big thank you and, and congratulations on all your accomplishments over these short five months. And your team.
Thanks so much, Judge.
Next is the County Treasurer.
I'm unmuting Dylan Osborne. Go ahead, sir.
Hey, you guys. How are y'all today? I'm not sure why my video's not working. I have a camera. But I'll, I'll try to get through this pretty quickly. As I said, last year, I, I try to be your fastest, your fastest budget hearing every year. So I certainly appreciate you giving me the chance today. I'll go through this stuff pretty quick. You've already got my budget packet that we've turned in. We were actually pretty significantly under budget this year. We were allotted 1.27 million. We ended up spending less than 988,000, largely due to the decrease in postage. Without running the full jury service every week, our postage and, you know, our check processing for, for those jurors were significantly, significantly down. So I think that was a, a big chunk of that, that money. We do expect that to come back, but we, so we're hoping to basically get the, the same budget as, as this year. I have no major requests. I would like to see my, my staff get COLAs. I understand that, that budget may be working on that countywide. But you will hear that from me every year. It is my job to advocate for my staff. And so every year, you will hear me asking for COLAs for them. I do have some doubts that, that some of them are at market, but we're going to work with HR to get some of those market rate studies done. So I can tell you more concrete where they are as far as pay. If you, and stop me if you have any questions, obviously. Like I said, we'll, we'll try to get through this quickly. I've already turned in my, my goals and mission statements. Most of you know what, what we do. We process the payments, we process the checks going out, electronic wire transfers. We, we moved, I believe, around four or five billion last year. I'd have to double check that number. I am also the treasurer of the port, so that gets counted in there as well. We handle their, their transfers and, and, you know, my name is on their check as well. So we, this year, we have 10 FTEs, 11 with myself. That does leave us with two open positions, one that I inherited and one that was vacated this past year. We're still kind of looking at, with the ERP rollout, if we're going to have any massive staff changes. It doesn't look like we will, but that is something that, that, you know, as we, we reach full stabilization, I'll have a better response on. So like I said, we're a small budget, a small office, so I won't take up any more of your time. Does anybody have any questions for me?
This is Kegel. Say hello to your sister for me, Dylan.
I will do, Commissioner. Thank you very much.
Any other comments from members of court? Mr. Osborne, thank you so much for your word.
Thank you, Judge. And I would just add, since I haven't had a chance to meet with Commissioner Ramsey yet, you know, welcome to Commissioners Court. And I look forward to working with you, just as I do your colleagues.
Thank you. Appreciate it, sir.
Thank you to Mr. Dylan.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Final department for the day is the Tax Assessor Collector.
I'm unmuting Marcus Hamilton. Marcus, you're unmuted. I'll put up your slides. Mr. Hamilton.
Do you need to take a break, Lucinda? We're about to hit two hours anyway.
I think so. Let me try to reach him.
Okay, let's take a break until 4:45.
Yes, ma'am. I'm unmuting Marcus.
Hello, testing, testing?
There you are. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
We'll be ready when, when we come back.
At 4:45?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Now I got to tell my boss I was.
Yeah, well, let's go ahead and get started. It is 4:46. And we're continuing with the budget hearings and the Office of the Tax Assessor Collector.
I'm unmuting Marcus Hamilton.
Where are you standing?
Good evening, Judge Hidalgo. Commissioners, my name is Marcus Hamilton. I'm the Assistant Chief with the Tax Office. Also have presented with me today, Etoro Apafion, our senior analyst.
Good afternoon.
And we will be presenting on behalf of Ms. Ann Harris Bennett, our Tax Assessor Collector. And we want to thank the court for this opportunity to address you with the Tax Office budget request. And also like, take the opportunity to congratulate Commissioner Ramsey on his election and appointment to the court.
Thank you.
Before we get into our services, I'd just like to tell you who we are. And if you could go to the next slide, thank you. Who we are here at the Tax Office. Our mission and purpose remains the same under Mrs. Bennett's administration. The Tax Office strives to serve our community with integrity and respect. We are committed to providing quality service through innovation and teamwork. Our core values are community, teamwork, innovation, and integrity. We perform our duties knowing that we are assisting our neighbors and friends and improving our county one transaction, transition, transaction at a time. We believe that we are all better when we work together and we can accomplish more. We understand that change is inevitable and we want to be proactive and adapting to the needs of the community we serve. We respect the opportunity given to us by the residents of Harris County, and we strive for excellence in our work and our actions. Next slide, please. What we do, the services we perform here at the Tax Office. The Tax Office is comprised of three divisions, Property Tax, Automotive, and Administrative Division. The Property Tax Division assesses taxes to all properties, both commercial and residential. We collect property taxes from residents and entities and assist residents and business owners with any issues regarding properly applying their property tax payments to their accounts. The Automotive Division provides customers with compliance and resolution services for their commercial and residential vehicles. The services provided include, but are not limited to, vehicle registration and vehicle titles. Our Administrative Division handles all of the nuances that it takes to make the Tax Office run smoothly. Those services include, but not limited to, accounting, human resource, information technology, procurement, and logistics. Next slide. How we do it here at, at the Tax Office or what we strive to do each day. We strive to initiate high-quality customer service to internal and external stakeholders. We provide all residents with easy and equitable access to automotive documentation services. We also strive to assess and collect taxes in a timely, efficient, and respectful manner. We want to maximize economic opportunity for our current and future employees and to all those who desire to do business with the Harris County Tax Office. We strive to optimize all resources and minimize rates through efficiency, innovation, diversity, and effective management. Etoro will present on our performance metrics.
The next slide shows exactly how we measure success at the Tax Office. Since Mrs. Bennett took office, the Harris County Tax Office has made significant gains in all areas of service year over year, despite multiple floods and the current pandemic that we're currently fighting. Here are some of the performance metrics used to gauge our success. The number of transactions processed, the average customer wait times, statement errors and address errors per year, the number of outreach events conducted each year, the transactional efficiency at each branch, customer feedback survey cards, residential property tax cases and litigation, average case resolution response times, average call wait times, and the abandoned calls each month. And our next slide shows exactly what we're requesting. Our first request comes from the Auto Branches. And we're requesting 14 new positions to staff the windows at our new mega branch in precinct four, which we've titled Cypress Hill. And at this branch, it'll allow us to replicate services currently at downtown Mega Branch in Precinct One. And it will also redirect commercial customers from smaller congested branches to this mega branch called Cypress Hill. Our next request is for 12 new positions to create a web dealer service for the Cypress Hill branch, which will service about 2,400 independent mom-and-pop dealers. And this will allow us to centralize the web dealer operations in this fast-growing region and create greater efficiency and facilitate our goal of providing easy and equitable access to automotive documentation service.
A next slide, we're also asking for positions, this is still within our Auto Division, but this unit is called Auto Special Services. And this is the unit that handles mail-in titles. With this division, with this part of the division, we're asking for 10 new positions for mail-in title documentation service. With these positions, they'll help us eliminate the backlog in processing mail-in title requests, reduce customer wait time to receive titles back in the mail, and also create greater efficiency and facilitate our goal of providing easy and equitable access to automotive documentation service. This will also help us reduce staff burnout, which we see a lot of, and employee turnover to relieve some of the pressure that's on our already overburdened staff. Next slide. In our Property Tax Division, we're asking for two positions in our Property Tax Customer Service and Special Inventory Tax Unit. These two positions, the goal is to reduce customer wait time to get their email inquiries addressed, also provide customer guidance on options to meet their tax obligations, and reduce the number of residential taxpayers in litigation. We also plan to create a pilot program to, and this program would establish a taxpayer advocacy group. This group would be responsible for initiating contact with taxpayers whose accounts are in jeopardy of default. They would schedule taxpayers for pre-litigation services with a tax specialist. And these are not legal services, but consultations on the status of their accounts. We also want to create a multi-language outreach program to engage our diverse community, basically reach people where they are. The total request is 38 positions to address capacity. And at this time, if you, we thank you for receiving our requests. And if you have any questions, we'll address them at this time.
Thank you so much. Let me give my colleagues an opportunity to ask questions. I just had a couple of quick, quick questions for you guys. The first one is on the mega branch request. How did you determine that the mega branch is the right way to, to serve folks? One of the discussions we've had a lot at court and is sort of one of the big ship we need to steer at some point, and it's not going to happen overnight, is this question of how do we provide services farther into the community as opposed to at centralized locations? Did you guys consider the mega branch versus more but smaller locations?
Well, in our consideration, we have to take into account the facilities that's offered to us. And, um, we, we've been offered a, a space at the new location. This is the location that's replacing Cypress Wood that was flooded during Hurricane Harvey. And so, uh, this is a complex and, and I, I believe there'll be other tenants in the building. So the space we've been given, eh, we replicated what we have downtown. Downtown, we have 20 window locations. So in Cypress Wood, we'll have about 20 low, 20 windows for, uh, window tellers or walk-up customers. But we also have, uh, space for, um, workstations, not necessarily windows, but workstations where we can, uh, address, uh, some of our automated customers. That's what we're calling web dealer, where, uh, transactions come in electronically and we're able to work them there. So, uh, our thought process is to replicate the services here downtown, which is more of a full-service branch. Uh, we can handle anything, commercial and residential, uh, needs.
So this is the one for, since you guys are, there's going to be the larger courtroom downstairs. This is basically where you guys are moving to the operations that you had downtown.
No, no, we, we'll still have the downtown location. This location is, we, we originally had 16 branches. One branch is temporarily closed or being relocated. Uh, we have five, 15 in operation right now and we're replacing the Cypress Wood location. It was a, that was destroyed in Harley.
Got it, right. Got it, got it. Okay, well, if there's something else that, you know, you guys need, that you have a different vision, but you just need a different building, you know, please get with Dave on, on that question. I, that's really just, you know, I know it's going to take a while for us to be able to, to shift from a centralized efficient to small branches designed, but if, if, if that's something that you guys think would work, I certainly don't, you know, don't want you all to feel limited. Um, then the other question was on the 10 positions for the, uh, automotive division. Did you, how did you guys come up with that number 10?
Uh, this number is, is based on, uh, our automotive special divisions is located here on the second floor. Uh, this division, it doesn't handle walk-up customers, but mail-in titles. Uh, 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 most of what they do is electronic or by mail. And, um, it, it's basically reach capacity. We're, we're constantly have a backlog based on the number of requests that come in or mail-in titles that come in. We just aren't able to keep up with the demand.
Okay, yes, on that one is kind of the, the similar thing I was trying to convey to, um, the administrator at Longoria, which is, it's, it's, it's important for us to meet demand. I just want to make sure that it's enough. So to the extent that you guys are able to share with the budget office, what assumptions you're making to land at 10 and, and not more and not less, it would certainly help me. Um, and then, and then that way we can use that, those types of assumptions going forward. But, but anyway, I appreciate the work you guys are all doing through so many challenges as you both covered. And please send my best to Ms. Bennett. Um, we're all very grateful.
Yes, thank you, Judge. Yes, so, uh, uh, and, and just elaborate, uh, is, is based on transactions, the number of transactions we receive. Uh, that's what we're doing right now, transaction efficiency. And, uh, we just, there's not enough clerks to, uh, it takes a, a certain amount of time to, uh, work a transaction and we just don't have enough clerks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do folks have any other questions? Okay, that's it for today's budget hearings. Monday, remember we have the, the, the port, uh, Board of Pilots appointments. So we'll, we'll start budget hearings and we'll break around one o'clock, I believe, to, to do the joint session with the city and then we'll continue with the hearings. Did I miss?
And Judge?
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
We did get confirmation from our county attorney that we're able to do that by Zoom. It's previously was required that we had to be in person.
My understanding is yes, but, but Jay or anyone who needs to, to hop in, my staff has said, yes, we do have confirmation.
I know for a fact, Judge, that yes, it has been confirmed.
All right, thank you.
Judge, this is Scott Lamont from the county attorneys. I can confirm that as well.
All right. Thank you very much for taking care of that for us.
Thank you.
It's been two years and the city's in charge of running it this time. So, um, anyway, the, the mayor will be, will be presiding. Barring anything else, County Attorney Lucinda, do you guys need any? Am I missing anything?
Not for me, Judge.
Okay, was spending three days with, with everybody. Um, and, and we'll catch it, uh, catch you all on Monday.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. It's 5:02 in the meeting. It's now adjourned.